Call the meeting to order. It's nine o'clock AM. Welcome, everybody. Item of business is to approve the agenda for today.
I've so moved to approve the agenda.
Second by Mary, second by Cindy.
Any comments or discussion about the agenda? Very not in those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All same sign. He's there. The agenda is approved. Move on to public comment. Board has significant interest in maintaining the core meetings. And it's expected that members of the public and the board will address each other with dignity. Early process of a board meeting will not be interfered with or disrupted by a public comment. Only individuals recognized by the board present will be allowed to speak. Consists by others are out of order. If disruptive, the individual causing disruption may be asked to leave the board meeting. Use of disruptive or the mandatory comments will not be permitted. State's board agenda is full and will place a maximum of 30 minutes for public comment. I'll give each speaker five minutes or three minutes if there are a large number of speakers. At the end of your allotted time, I'll ask that you conclude and the board will move on to the next speaker. The department will not respond to public comment aside from requesting clarification. Department may place a topic raised in public comment on a future agenda. Topic from public comment that is not related to an item on today's agenda will not be addressed at today's meeting. Who do we have for public comment today?
If you wish to address the board, please use the raised hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand.
Hello? Uh, I'm not sure. Uh, thank you. I see my name now. Um, could I just do a sound check to make sure you can hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you so much and thank all of you for your, for your work. Uh, I live in rural Winnebago County. I taught uh, science pre K through 12 for 23 years and I also taught pre-service um, science methods courses. And I want to address you about something that won't be on your agenda until next month. And that is the um, revision to the um, science standards. So there was a process put into place uh, for evaluating our previous 2015 um, adopted standards. And um, that uh, established revision process wasn't actually followed. Um, there were recommendations from professional educators. And then the document that came out for the, for public review had clearly been tampered with. There were significant, significant changes from what the professional educators had recommended. And so my request is uh, that you look closely at this document and ask yourselves which version you're voting on? Is it the pre-tampering revision? Or is it a version that came after a February team met to listen to the considerable public input? Um, and was the version that they recommended the one that you're actually getting or was it tampered with again? Once it's, it's um, the standards are understandably complex and um, it took a while to figure out just how much tampering had occurred. But it's really clear that um, several areas were significantly dumbed down. Specifically, um, the treatment of geology, uh, of evolution and of climate change. And this is contrary to the experience and the expertise of qualified people. Um, the ones who were actually asked to work on it. Um, and the public deserves to know who made um, the changes. Because words really matter. Um, one might say, oh, it's just, you know, they're, they're small changes. But um, to borrow from Mark Twain, the difference between lightning and a lightning bug is really significant. And that was the level of change that we saw um, in these revisions made by unknown parties. So I'm hoping that the, the team that reviewed public commentary chose to retain scientifically accurate and pedagogically appropriate language. Um, because there isn't any relevant scholarly expertise or classroom experience that would indicate that we should change these standards dramatically. Um, especially given that um, national assessments are based on um, the, the, the kind of documents that were used to create the 2015 version of the science standards. Um, it would be tragic if we changed our standards to become inaccurate and precise misleading. Um, and right now, uh, public trust is low. And I think that this board can help to restore some of that public trust by doing their homework to uh, find out whether or not the version they're being asked to vote on is one that uh, was produced by professional educators um, with experience in science education or some unknown party with their own agenda. Um, I think that this can be fixed and, and I think that that is your work. And I appreciate the, the work that you're doing. I, I think that Iowans, Iowa families deserve better than um, what the process unfolded as over the last couple of months. And uh, I just want to make sure that, that you are alert to um, your responsibilities. Uh, which I'm, I'm sure that you are, but uh, if you're not a professional science educator, you might not be aware of this. So thank you very much um, for the work that you do on behalf of Iowans and Iowa families. I'm done.
Thank you for your comments. We have other public comments this morning.
There appear to be no other comments at this time.
All right, hopefully I'll move on to the director's report.
Thank you, President Robbins, Vice President Axiotis, and members of the board. And as always, thanks to each of you for your service on the board. Um, we'll start with a brief update around legislative session. And we have a number of division and team member specific dates. But to kick off, the, the first legislative funnel was on Friday, March 7th. Um, this is a procedural deadline that narrows uh, the scope of legislation under consideration in both chambers. And bills must pass out of a committee in the originating chamber in order to remain eligible for consideration. Um, all of the governor's education related bills have made it through the first funnel. Um, to date, a number have been moved off of the floor. Um, the first of which has been House File uh, 784, the Math Counts Act. Um, and specifically, we talked about this uh, following the NAEP release uh, last month. But specifically, it supports early identification and progress monitoring for students who are not on track to be proficient in math. It supports strong intervention structures and personalized math plans for students in need of supports evidence-based professional development for teachers and schools most in need of support and strong teacher preparation and evidence-based math instruction. And then finally supports family-centered resources to support children's mathematics development wherever they may be and a comprehensive um, state mathematics plan to support evidence-based math instruction across obviously the entire state of Iowa in districts and in schools as well strategies. Um, also a legislation restricting student access and use of uh, personal electronic devices during instructional time has been moved off the House floor. And then the Education Improvements Bill, which has multiple provisions, has also um, progressed out of the House, which includes um, officially reinstating through legislation the Teach Iowa system for posting all education-related jobs that the Department of Education had administratively restored this past year. And then um, some technical components around ensuring that retired teachers can return to adverse covered employment. Um, and then also uh, adjusting the teacher intern pathway so that we are um, realizing our goal of fully recognizing work-based learning and student teaching requirements, a technical correction to, to legislation in the prior session. Also this week, um, the House and Senate held appropriations subcommittees on the Governor's Rural Healthcare Pipeline Bill that proposes um, the alignment of several healthcare scholarship um, and grant programs into a single healthcare professional incentive program. And then supercharges that uh, work by more than doubling, proposing to more than double uh, the appropriation and support of this program through, through a separate legislative process. Um, and then the continuum of care proposal um, continues to progress. It's of course intended to strengthen Iowa's continuum of care by supporting local partnerships uh, between providers and early care and education uh, that provide full daycare options for families. Um, specific to the Department of Education, it also would support a high-quality, high-quality early childhood programming across the state that is focused on child outcomes uh, in both new and existing preschool programs. And uh, would specifically help um, uh, improve and, and expand upon our child and program standards in both learning and development and embed specially designed instruction and preschool opportunities. And then similarly, all six of the Department of Education's pre-filed bills have made it through committee and one or both chambers and the floor have seen floor action over the past two weeks. Uh, the legislation related to career education was advanced by the House as a reminder that proposes to establish an industry-recognized credential diploma seal program to promote and incentivize CTE participation, the attainment of an industry-recognized credential. And then it also proposes to embed career instruction in grades five through seven to better support and prepare students for their ICAPS, their individual career and academic plans uh, in grades eight through 12. Um, a bill related to various department functions has also progressed. Um, specifically that would allow the department to use any unspent funds in the National Board Certification Program to support supplemental pay for individuals who attain the dyslexia endorsement. Um, it would also ensure that the superintendent, superintendent captain of ISD, Iowa School for the Deaf and IES, BBIO Educational Services for the Blind and Visually Empowered um, has appropriate authority over school operations. And then it helps streamline our community college um, reports. All uh, existing reporting requirements are of course incorporated, but it allows us to report those uh, instead of having overlapping requirements across various reports in a single comprehensive um, and easily used report. And then legislation related to the, the definition of grooming was advanced by the Senate. Specifically, it, it seeks to modify that definition under um, the BOE, the Board of Educational Examiners Code of Ethics to identify early uh, any inappropriate behavior intended to exploit students. And then finally, uh, the Purple Star School Initiative legislation was advanced by the Senate last month, late last month to establish a Purple Star School Program to designate and recognize schools that provide special services to support military-connected students and their families. Um, and of course, we're very excited about the progress made over this first stretch of session uh, and very appreciative of the legislature uh, for their consideration of our proposals. And, and we'll look forward to providing uh, another update at our April meeting. And if I may, I'm happy to pause there and see if there are any questions related to this component before we move on to the rest of our report.
We have not approved budget yet.
Correct.
No.
That's Eric's fault.
Yeah, no, no.
Right. Um, and then briefly, um, since our last board meeting, uh, President Robbins and I had the privilege of celebrating 16 of Iowa's top educators at DMAC at the Iowa Culinary Institute um, that features uh, awardees from the 2025 Teacher of the Year, the Regional Teachers of the Year, as well as our, our state teacher Ben Gier Melanie Bloom, who you, who you met last month. Um, it also celebrates the 2024 Iowa History Teacher of the Year, uh, Catherine Mine of Ballard, as well as presidential awardees for excellence in math and science teaching. Um, that include over multiple years, that included um, Stephanie Steinis of Decorah, Lori Randall of Osage, Angela Schneiden of Ankeny, Allison McFerran of Southeast Polk, Matthew Hansen of MMCRU in Marcus, and Maureen McGreeery of Davenport. So that was a wonderful event celebrating their dedication and, and that's an education. Um, as you know, the department has also asked K-12 students to help us reimagine Iowa's education license plate. At our last meeting, we had just received those student design um, submissions from their art teachers for statewide consideration. And now um, we've had an expert panel representing art teachers across the state uh, complete their review. And they've selected 16 semifinalists from over 100 qualified submissions. Um, each entry was reviewed based on their creativity, originality, artistic skill, and their representation of celebrating Iowa education. And we're uh, excited to share the online voting form, which will be open very soon. Uh, and you will have, and all members of the public will have the opportunity to select your favorite design from four students in each of the following grade bands, grades three through five, six through eight, nine through 10, and 11 through 12. And then uh, you'll also have the opportunity to select your three overall favorite designs. Um, and then the department uh, earlier this month released a public version of our EVOS profiles. EVOS, as a reminder, stands for Education Value Added Assessment System. Um, the public site includes um, scatter plot reports that allow for the analysis of growth and achievement by district and by school. Um, and then uh, it's available again uh, to the public. Uh, so please uh, explore and encourage others to, others to explore this tool on the Iowa EVOS webpage. We're also too excited to announce that we um, are launching another round of letters registration. Um, this is our sixth round. It is currently open. Um, eligible applicants are public school PK through five teachers, middle school special education teachers, literacy intervention teachers, higher education instructors and administrators. And that uh, registration will be open until August 22nd. And that sixth cohort will begin their training at the beginning of the 25, 26 school year. And building on that update, the Dyslexia Board also recently approved the department's Dyslexia Handbook, which was created in response to an Iowa Dyslexia Task Force recommendation. And our science reading and dyslexia consultant, Wanda Stury, uh, will be providing statewide professional learning opportunities virtually in person and asynchronously. Uh, and then the handbook is, is available on the department's dyslexia webpage. Um, related to our standards processes, a second review team of educators has examined the stakeholder feedback on the science, the first proposed revised draft science standards. And the department is now reviewing the team's recommendations based on the public forums and the public survey. And then the department will present a second proposed revised draft of the standards to the board for consideration uh, over a first read potentially in April and then a second read potentially in May. Um, we are also preparing to initiate the review process for our social studies standards. And the applications for that review committee, the first review committee uh, closed earlier this month. Um, and of course, we'll uh, ensure that it represents educators, administrators, content specialists, higher education, families, industry, and community partners. And as always, uh, that review process will follow our same five-phase process uh, which begins with the department's preparation, the first team focused on review, then public comment through public forums and public survey, the second team focused on revisions. And then finally, uh, the state board consideration over two meetings. Um, as a reminder, per House File 2545 enacted last session, the first read of the revised social studies standards must occur on or before the state board's December meetings. Um, shifting to the Division of Special Education, uh, just excited to provide a brief update on Iowa's first-in-the-nation Achieve Family Portal, which officially launched last month. And eligible parents and guardians of all children with IFSPs or IEPs um, received email invitations beginning on February 24th to access the Achieve Family Portal. Um, the portal provides parents and guardians with 24/7 access to their child's early intervention or special education information. Uh, the Division of Special Education also continues to provide special education support for administrators and educators through our Special Education Policy and Practice webinar series. Last month, we hosted a webinar on FBAs and VIPS, Functional Behavior Assessments and Behavior Intervention Plan specifically. The next session is April 9th. It'll be focused on monitoring and implementing the least restrictive environment or LRE and will include relevant case law examples. The following session will be May 14th and it will focus on free access to free and appropriate public education. All of our webinars, all of those corresponding materials are available on our website. And then we also have a, a number of new resources, including uh, new or recently updated resources, including general supervision, quick reference for administrators, and additional FAQs regarding district use of special education support services funding beginning July 1st of 2025 um, on the department's House File 2612 implementation webpage. And then the last uh, exciting update in this space uh, at the Division of Special Education uh, is a save the date for our Teaching for Impact Conference, which will be held at the Iowa Event Center in Des Moines. Um, it provides multiple professional learning opportunities, tracks to support all educators and best-serving learners with disabilities birth to age 21. Um, all uh, um, education stakeholders, so administrators, leadership teams in, in school buildings, early access providers, um, uh, educators and providers from early childhood through high school, our AEA partners, higher education faculty, pre-service teachers, and more will all benefit from attending this free conference supported by the Department of Education. Um, we're especially excited to announce that new this year, we will have a specific track called Leading for Impact, which is targeted at administrators who um, lead district and building uh, support and oversight of special education services and supports. And our registration will open here in a couple of weeks.
Dr. Snow, when is the conference?
It is. I didn't write down the dates. It's the June 6th.
June 5th.
Five and six. Thank you. That's a great question. Thank you. That's important.
We're all waiting for it.
June 5 and 6. Thank you. Um, the uh, Iowa School for the Deaf was uh, very excited to share that their cheer squad participated in the National Deaf Cheerleading Competition in Rochester, New York. Earlier this month, the Bobcats took home third place in their division. Um, and we are very proud that uh, we will get to host the National Deaf uh, cheer competition next year uh, in council booths uh, at ISD. So. Um, shifting to the Division of Higher Education, we will be opening the 2025 Credentials to Careers Grant uh, on April 1st. It will close on May 30th. This is another iteration of our Credentials to Careers Grant opportunity that supports school districts in aligning their CTE programs to support the student attainment of an industry-recognized credential. Um, this grant round will provide priority to school districts who have not yet received a Credentials to Careers Grant. Uh, we are also um, uh, providing the department's Perkins Five State Plan uh, uh, for public comment. Um, the new four-year state plan, uh, as currently drafted, uh, will have a 30-day public comment period opening tomorrow, Friday, March 21st. That extends through April 21st. And then we'll have two public hearings at the department uh, here in our Grimes Office Building um, on March 25th from 1:00 to 3:00 and April 1st from 9:00 to 11:00. There are also virtual participation options. And that is, of course, the, the plan that uh, was discussed with you at your last state board meeting and presented by that team. We've also launched a um, work-based learning uh, school survey uh, to invite all administrators and relevant educators to uh, complete a survey that indicates the types of work-based learning that are offered at your school or school district and the types of opportunities you would like to expand or offer in the future and how the department in partnership with Iowa Workforce Development can support uh, uh, those respective goals. Then we continue to host our work-based learning webinar series with IWD. Uh, the March 4th webinar was focused on pre-employment transition services for students with disabilities. And our final webinar of the school year is going to be on April 8th. And it focuses on linking Perkins and CTSOs or career and technical student organizations and um, other school-based programs to support sustained work-based learning. And recordings of all of those prior sessions are of course available on both the department and IWD's website. And then uh, finally, in this space, the department with Governor Reynolds was excited to announce four awards to Iowa community colleges totaling nearly $4 million through the state's Career Academy Incentive Fund or CAFS. Uh, as a reminder, the grants increase access to career academy programs and in-demand fields through new or expanded regional centers. So please join us and, and again congratulating Northwest Iowa Community College, Southwestern Community College, Western Iowa Tech Community College, and Iowa Central Community College. Um, and then just very briefly to close this out, we've of course been supporting the legislature's consideration of all uh, uh, department and governor's education bills and providing testimony and technical assistance on those proposals. We did have a full Senate education uh, the opportunity to present at the full Senate education meeting on the Math Counts Act, which included an overview of our ISAS results over time, our AID results over time, our current efforts uh, and administrative efforts to support evidence-based math instruction, including the board's adoption of um, revised math standards last year. And then the multiple components of the proposed legislation we talked through earlier in the conversation. We also celebrated a Read Across America Week two weeks ago um, and joined uh, 2023 Teacher of the Year, Crystal Colbert, in her Mitchellville Elementary Classroom in Southeast Polk uh, to, to um, celebrate the, the Read Across America Day and Week. Um, we recently had the opportunity to join uh, Iowa State University's Community College Leadership Programs, uh, which a number of our team members are currently benefiting from or have benefited from throughout their career. And then we recently had the Midwest Higher Education Compact Commissioners Meeting. Uh, related to other department uh, supported boards, Iowa College Aid Board of Commissioners met March 7th. The School Budget Review Committee met March 11th. Cassandra will provide an update on that committee meeting later uh, in our agenda. The Board of Educational Examiners met on the 14th of this month. And the Special Education Advisory Panel will meet next month on April 11th. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions or things we can help clarify?
Questions? Thank you. Sandra, let's go on to the community challenges.
Well, we had a fantastic meeting. Um, I think it was on March 12th. And it is our second meeting of our newly aligned advisory committee. And we met virtually via Zoom. Um, recognizing it was our second meeting, we spent a little bit more time just polishing up our committee charge and working together, kind of coming together as a committee. And then really dug into a topic that came out of our first discussion, which was K through 12 interconnectedness. And as I shared just a little bit about this as a high level, um, it came to the top as a discussion point, recognizing that so many students from the high schools are part of the community college enrollment. Um, and so having better alignment between the community colleges and the school systems is a really important topic for the community colleges. So we wanted to dig into that. So we wanted to dig into that, understand it, and then, again, aligned with our charter, understand how the Department of Education can better support the community colleges and then vice versa. How do we better connect? So as we walked through that conversation, taking into account everybody's perspective, there were so many great opportunities that came from the discussion. Now we're analyzing what we do with that information. So so many great points, lots of opportunity. Again, now we're processing how we move forward with what we learn. We recognize that the advisory committee is here to support the board, here to support the community colleges, here to support the system. So we need to learn our role a little bit more as we go through with these topics. But we also want to honor the work that's important to both the system and the colleges. So so I'm not quite sure where we'll land with that. But it was fantastic discussion and, again, really revealed where there's opportunity for both the community colleges and the department to grow, if that's fair. I'm looking at Amy and Director Snow. Anything you'd like to add? Or Cindy, too, for my side. So the other topics that we that we talked through, Amy did a great review and Vlad shared the annual condition of the Iowa Community Colleges Report and how that information has evolved and the technology now and the data that's available online. Amy helped me with the website.
IowaStudentOutcomes.com.
I would encourage everyone to go check out the website because it is fantastic. The report has changed this year. Instead of being the comprehensive, all on paper, which has phenomenal information but might be difficult to digest at times, now it is easily sortable, easily and I'm looking for the right word. Not only can you sort it online, but it's a lot easier to visualize online. So if you go out to the website, you can dig in really to the results, the great results that Iowa's community colleges are delivering. And not only current year reports, but also a lot of the historical data is available online as well. So and then, of course, we had our legislative update online, but we, as we discussed. But we also spent just a few minutes talking about changes at the federal level and how the trickle-down is kind of impacting community colleges as well. So just trying to be proactive, thinking about how those changes have the potential to impact the community colleges and things that we can be doing in the near future prevent any disruptions or thinking about things that may change that we can be working on now sooner rather than later. The other thing we're doing as part of our agenda, and Brian, I'll have to email this to you. We are highlighting promising practices as part of our agenda. So as part of our most recent meeting, we shared the data profile that Cedar Rapids has been putting together for their school district. So I have a paper copy here to share with the board. And I know I have extras here for those in the room, so I'll pass these out. But we really want to share within our group some of the promising practices that our community colleges are working on. And this is one, sorry, that Kirkwood Community College has been working on with their data from their high school program. So take a look at this, and if you have more questions, we can get you to ask answers. And our next meeting is May 7th, and we will be meeting here in person.
All right. Off to a good start.
Yes. It is. It's, like I said, it's great work. I'm, I think what I'm most proud of, oh, most proud of with this committee is they're really driving the agenda and bringing forward, I think, things that are most important. So the work is relevant to the group and I think relevant to the board. The other thing that I would like to acknowledge, if you have not heard, President Rob Dunson, President at DMAC Community, DMAC Area Community College, has announced his retirement at the end of the year. So I would just like to thank him for his amazing years of service and the contributions he's made to the community college system. And those are going to be big shoes to phone, certainly. I know that their search is underway, but just absolutely want to acknowledge him and thank him for all of the work that he's done over the years.
A fixture for, was it 20 years or more?
And now we'll have time for world domination, which is his ultimate goal.
That's my mission.
Know that, right? And it's wrapping. So, yes.
Yes, and Cindy. All right, we're on to item three, the consent agenda. We have the minutes from February 6th. We have open enrollment, appeal decision, and rules chapter 17.
A move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Moved by Cindy, second by Brooke. We will consent the agenda as presented. Any discussions?
I have a question, John. My agenda under number three doesn't list appeal number 5209. Maybe I should have brought this up when we approved the agenda, but can we, since it was in the packet, can we just amend number three to specifically say it's A, B, and C, not just A and B?
So your packet didn't have the three, Brian?
It just, it has number three. It just has the minutes of our February 6th meeting and the Chapter 17 Amendment adoption. It doesn't mention appeal case 5209. So I don't know what others said. If you have it, then it's maybe moot. But I just want to specifically point out that my understanding is that was meant to be part of the consent agenda. And I support that. I just wonder, should, am I the only one that? Do you all have three things under item three, is what I'm asking?
I have three.
I think we all have, I think we all have three, except for you, maybe.
Okay.
Which is odd. Yeah.
You're referring to today's agenda, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Not to the minutes. Okay.
So the consent agenda that I received had the three items, February 6th meeting minutes, open enrollment, appeal decision, and rules chapter 17. Brooke, is that what you had?
Yep, that's what I had. That's what I asked.
Cass, is that what you had, Cindy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Okay. I think it could just be you, Brian. I'm not sure what happened.
I have the case. I've read it. I'm prepared to approve it. I just, I didn't want somebody to, you know, since it was an appeal decision to complain later, so.
Mr. President, the public agenda has altered the public agenda. As posted was what was ordered, so no amendment is necessary.
Okay. Any other, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. All right, rules. Thomas?
Thomas, I love your cup.
It's.
I kind of want to steal it.
Bet you can't. So again, refresher about the decision rules. Adopted and filed rules where there's no public comment, no changes, those are the ones that go on the consent agenda. The three rules that are action and discussion items, there was public comment. Some substantial change in a couple of these rule changes, substantial public comment in a couple of these chapters that were no, that no change was made. The first two chapters are sort of deal with the same subject matter. And it goes to Board Member Halls's point about K-12 interconnectedness. The community college was rule chapter and the Career and Tech Ed Rule Chapter amendments deal with the same subject matter in that the Chapter 46 amendments deal with the post-secondary portion of CTE. So there's some overlapping themes between the first two items, 4A and 4B, but I'll start with 4A, Chapter 21. This substantial amount of public comment, both at the notice and at the regulatory analysis stage from community college partners. The first, item eight, there was a suggested revision to the language that you noticed at your November meeting. This language, the department, the subject matter experts, accepted in part, accepted the commoners' proposed language with the proviso that the that the planning in subparagraph, the outcomes-based planning, that it would it would link to institutional effectiveness. So I'm not just planning to plan, I'm planning to be institutionally effective. The second batch of changes was a rewrite and a reorganization of item 10, which is the item on student services. So there was a supl, there was a paragraph that really wasn't actionable, which was moved, like it wasn't an out, it wasn't an outcome, it was a process. And that paragraph was stricken and moved into the preamble so that this process applies to all of the outcomes. Specifically regarding the outcomes, paragraph A on the onboarding process, the word that was in the proposed rules was assessment. And the suggestion was that signified like a paper and pencil test rather than, the proposed language was evaluation and support of college readiness. So the change was from assessment of college readiness to evaluation and support of college readiness. The second substantive change was in paragraph B on student services. There was some suggestion to revise to make it a little bit more readable and add the last two words in the paragraph, "and completion." So it's not enough to, but it's not, it's necessary but not sufficient to enroll what sufficient is to complete. And then the final substantive update in this paragraph, paragraph E, the term or the word co-curricular was stricken as sort of duplicative and superfluous. So those were the changes made based on some rather well-informed public comment from the community or community college partners, both the presidents and student services leadership. And so with that, the department's recommendation is to adopt these amendments to Chapter 21.
Any questions regarding chapter? And then I'll take a motion, please.
With the adoption of Chapter 21?
Moved by Brooke and second by Cass. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion's carried. All right, Chapter 46.
So this is Career and Tech Education focusing on the post-secondary space. And the public comment from community college presidents concerned subrule 466 for paragraph A. And this looks a little bit different in format from the rules that you adopt that you noticed in November because the code editor took the bullet-pointed list and gave it, made it into a numbered list. So if you're looking back on prior materials, on page three of your materials for this rulemaking, you approved bullet points, the code editor made an improvement so that specific listed items could be referenced by number rather than like the fourth bullet point. So there were a couple of comments to that list. Item one, paragraph, paragraph A, item one, there was a reference to mastery. And the proposal was to change that to proficiency or being proficient because there was some confusion about what is mastery? Is it a different standard or a higher standard or a lower standard? Proficiency, proficiency seems to be the lingo franca between the elementary and secondary space, post-secondary, and on into the workforce. So the proposal was made to change mastery to proficiency. The second proposal in item 10 sort of broadened the list, broadened what the program, the post-secondary CTE program aligns to. The proposed language sort of narrowed like particular job skills. This broadens to additional education and training opportunities. So it didn't focus specifically on being in a transfer major pathway or a particular credential or a particular type of employment or type. Rather, it broadens to additional education and training opportunities. And then the final suggestion that the subject matter experts concur in is new item 11. This wasn't a bullet point in what you approved in November. It creates a feedback loop or continuous improvement cycle for post-secondary CTE planning. So with that, the department's recommendation is the state board adopt these amendments to Chapter 46.
Questions regarding this chap?
Thomas, I have a question, and I apologize if I should have brought this up last year. But in number, in A5 and A9, it talks about the Carl Perkins Career and Technical Education Improvement Act in US Code, 20 US Code 2301, et cetera, is the, you know, is that meant to be set in stone or would it be included as that law may be amended?
There is, there is a specific rule in the Administrative Procedure Act that references to external law have dates certain. Elsewhere in this chapter that's not amended was a date certain for Perkins 5. So if Perkins, let's say there's Perkins 6, which hopefully there will be at a time when it's supposed to happen rather than 20 years after the fact. When Perkins gets amended, then the board will take up updating the cross-reference. So there is a cross-reference to a date certain in a rule that's elsewhere in this chapter that's not subject to amendment.
Thank you.
So there is a date certain, it's just not, it's just not in this rulemaking package.
Got it.
Other questions? Hearing nothing, I will accept the motion to approve Chapter 46.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mary and second by Brian to approve the rules, Chapter 46. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion's carried. All right. Chapter 79.
Practitioner preparation. Public comment on two items. The first was item one. The Notice of Intended Action contained a threshold for students who are required pre-service teachers, teaching students who are required to take the Foundations of Reading Assessment. The Notice of Intended Action set a threshold that the institutional pass rate needed to be 90% or above. If it was below 90%, then the department had the discretion to require the practitioner prep program to do corrective action plans, self-study, to raise the pass rate. The feedback was multi-pronged on this. But the core of the feedback was the national pass rate is between 62 and 67%. So it was 92 high, third bowl of porridge, too hot, too cold. And in reviewing the feedback, the practitioner prep team and department leadership asked whether or not the rule was necessary because the department has the inherent authority to inquire through the normal practitioner prep accreditation process and to look at multiple prep accreditation process and to look at multiple theta points. The low pass rate is one of concern. The department didn't need this proposed rule to take action, or to start interrogating the practitioner prep program about its practices, and asking how it's going to improve its data and its outcomes. So in the interest of executive order 10, no value added. The point was made. Pass rates on the foundations of reading assessment will be, will be examined as part of the practitioner prep approval cycle. The, the concept was removed, the pass rate was removed. The second item was item five, and that concerned the prohibition on using the three-queuing method as a component of teaching foundational reading. And there were some concerns that sounded in academic freedom, you can't tell me what to teach about teaching. And there were also some concerns sounding in, related to English learners. And the, the evidence base is abundantly clear. And I cited a synthesis of that evidence base in the, in the preamble to this rulemaking. There is no evidence that the three-queuing method helps students to sort of crack the code and learn how to speak and read and write and listen to English. It makes people not better readers, but better guessers. English learners, there, there is a place for teaching visual, like using visuals to teach English learners English vocabulary. But it doesn't, those visuals don't teach English learners to read English. So there's a place for visuals in English learner instruction. There's a place for what does this look like? Or there's a word on a red octagonal sign, maybe we confer that it says stop. There are places for visuals, and I speak kind of like I know what I'm talking about as the son of a world languages teacher. But three-queuing method is not the way it's, it is not a way to teach English learners to read English. In the same way, it's not a way to teach L1 English speakers to read English. So the department recommends no change based on the overwhelming evidence base that this is an ineffective practice. And with that, open for questions, and the department's recommendation is to adopt rules with the change in item one regarding the pass rate. Clarification on the pass rate, the pass, passing the assessment is not a gateway into teacher licensure. You have to take it in, if you are in certain practitioner path, practitioner pathways. If I'm going to be an elementary teacher, if I'm going to be a reading specialist, I take it, I don't need to pass it. The pass rate was at the institutional level. With that, have any questions? And I'm certain that subject matter experts in the room can tell me what I misstated about what is and what is not a good way to teach reading.
Questions regarding this rule? Silence. Hearing nothing, I will accept the motion.
I guess to that.
Moved by Brooke and seconded by sentee 79 at the post. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Mary, so the rules are adopted.
So for your storyboarding out for your April meeting, you will probably receive a adopted and filed rulemaking on early literacy, and you will be probably receiving technical corrections at the notice of intended action stage for current tech at chapter 46 and charter school accountability. So technical corrections for those two rulemakings, chapters 19 and 46, and a fairly in-depth discussion of chapter 62, which is our reading rules. That, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thomas? Looks like we are ready for Central Rivers. Good morning.
We're basically going to make an overview of the so, the best main comments before we jump in.
Yes.
Budget proposal.
Good morning, President Robb and Director, members of the board. Before we begin specifically with each AEA, I would like to give you an overview of this new budget process, as well as an overview of the budget, one, some, one-page summaries that were created on behalf of the board's request. Those statutorily budgets are due March 1st of each year prior to the budget year, for fiscal year 26, March 1st fell on a Saturday. So the budgets were due then on Friday, February 28. Statutorily, once each budget is accepted, the director has 10 days to either approve the budget or return the budget with comments. All budgets were submitted timely and were received either Thursday, February 27, or Friday, February 28. The initial fiscal budget review began on Saturday, March 1st, where four budgets were returned with initial comments relating to the statutorily required 30% administrative expenditure reduction, either regarding the accuracy of the calculation, or that the AEA was not initially budgeting to meet the statutory expenditure reduction by June 30th, 2026. Each of the four AEAs resubmitted on either Monday, March 3, or Tuesday, March 4. By Wednesday, March 5, then the entire budget request and report review was completed by the entire budget review team. The budgets for all nine AEAs were returned with comments on Wednesday, March 5, for items such as inconsistently shared centralized services, descriptions missing, sections, calculation discrepancies, missing budget assumptions, and missing stakeholders served. Each of the budgets were resubmitted by 9:00 AM on Friday, March 7. The budgets were reviewed for changes that day, and seven were determined to be statutorily compliant. Two AEAs submitted additional changes on Monday, March 10, and Tuesday, March 11, after which each of those budgets were determined to be statutorily compliant. Throughout this new process, we just want to recognize that the AEAs have been very responsive. The department and the AEAs collaborated diligently together throughout this process to ensure that each budget was ready for the state board's review during today's meeting. Thank you. As part of this new budget request and report process and deadlines, a two-page summary of the budget report and requests were created for each AEA to provide a very high-level overview, which department, myself, Sandra Klein, Angelisa Feinhardt will present to you, after which then we'll turn it over to each AEA, and they will present to you their budget requests and report in detail. First, I'd like to highlight the main portions of this two-page review, and then I will begin my presentation with Central Rivers sections specifically. So on the front page, which is the one that has the title, the top section reflects the stakeholders that are, that are served by each of the AEAs, including the districts, which include the charter schools, non-public schools, teachers, and students. The second section highlights the special education components and other things, specifically including the plan for each AEA's special education center of excellence, as well as any changes to their special education support services FTE counts, general shared and centralized services, as well as a recognition of whether or not any leased or owned property or buildings changed from the FY25 budget report to the FY26 budget report this year. We also took out one quote from each budget to recognize a positive look toward the future. The back portion of the page then reflects the actual action that the board will take today. This is the information, the two things that the director determined, or the two things which would determine whether or not the budget was statutorily compliant. I'm going to read a little bit of information about the top section, because this is new. So this is under the section Total Administrative Expenditures for Fiscal Year 24 Actual, Fiscal Year 25 Reestimated, and Fiscal Year 26 Proposed. Administrative expenditures include costs related to administration and administrators, as defined by House File 2612, Section 17, Iowa Acts 2024, which includes chief administrators, directors, and department heads, regional administrators, regional zone coordinators, district coordinators, human resource, and personnel managers. By July 1, 26, AEAs are required to reduce these expenditures by at least 30%. The department interpreted that to be a date certain of June 30th, 2026, which means that compared to the final fiscal year 24, then to final fiscal year 26, that 30% budget reduction administrative expenditures should be reflected. So we determined in this section whether or not each AEA was planning to meet that expenditure reduction by that timeframe. The second section then, the three-year comparison for budgeted funds, again fiscal year 24 Actual, fiscal year 25 Reestimated, and fiscal year 26 Proposed, determined whether or not the AEA was budgeting within its means and would budget to end fiscal year 26 on a positive balance. Within this, I think it's important to note that it is expected that each AEA does hold a balance at the end of, at each fiscal year. And so the contextual note that we wanted to provide here on behalf of each AEA is that the AEAs may use ending fund balances, i.e. those resources carried forward from a prior year, to pay for costs incurred during July and August before the state aid payments are begun to be received in September. So there is that period of time in which they must have those resources available from a prior year to continue operations. The third section then in the back finally is that director's recommendation. So you'll note that there's a check mark by each of the two items above to determine whether or not the AEAs met the requirements for each of those sections. And if that, that check mark was present, and it is for each AEA, and in the bottom section, their director's recommendation does recommend approval of the budget as statutorily compliant. Are there any questions on this one-page summary before we begin Central Rivers specific?
No, but I have a comment. Those were very, very helpful as we reviewed each of the AEA budget years moving forward. So thank you for succinctly putting that together, and thank you to the AEA for providing that information.
I have a question on the ending funds balance. Are they, you said that they are required to have ending funds balance just to, is there a certain amount that they would need in order to carry over until the September funds are received?
So we would not make that determination of what that each AEA would need, because there are different obligations that each AEA would have during that time. But we would expect each AEA could answer that question for you on what their ending fund balance means within that context for each of them.
Okay.
Good question.
That contextual note is just a general note that, that obviously applies to all programming. And then there'll be a unique context that each AEA can offer, but we wanted to frame that applicable note across all AEAs. Awesome. Thank you.
Questions?
I, I do not believe that the board has met Division Administrator Angelisa Feinhardt before, so just ask her to introduce herself before we jump in.
My name is Angelisa Feinhardt. I'm the Division Administrator for Special Education, Regional Continuous Improvement and Compliance, and also the Regional Special Ed Director for Great Prairie AKA.
Thank you.
Echo Mary's remarks about the, about the executive summary, I'll call it. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Very helpful.
All right.
Okay. We'll go ahead and get started specifically with Central Rivers AEA then. The reported stakeholder served includes 68,000 students, 5,000 teachers, 54 districts, including one charter school, and 27 non-public schools.
And Central Rivers plans to, in partnership with Keystone AEA, begin a center of excellence around Iowa early access services, and that is planned to start on July 1, 2025. They have an increase, proposed increase of 18.46 special education FTE. They have several services that are shared or centralized. Obviously, I'm not going to read every list to you, but I'm going to highlight a few. For Central Rivers and Keystone, I want to highlight that they're sharing several key positions, like the Chief Administrator, the Educational Services Director and Special Ed Director, and they're also in a media and instructional technology quadrant together.
The AEA did not report any changes in owned or leased building or land since the FY25 budget report. And the budget quote for Central Rivers AEA is the general financial health of our agency remains strong, in large part due to rapid innovation around general education services that meet district needs in a fee or service environment. Moving on to the back page, we recognize that Central Rivers is planning to meet that 30% administrative expenditure reduction by the end of fiscal year 26 at 32.8%. They do have a check mark for that section. Additionally, they are planning to end fiscal year 26 on a positive note. So they do have a check mark for that section as well. And the director recommends approval of the budget as statutorily compliant. Are there any questions before we turn it over to the AEA?
Good morning. My name is Stan Rangans. I am the Chief Administrator at Keystone and Central Rivers. So I split my time between those two agencies. And this is Jennifer.
I'm Jennifer Coombs-Johnson, and I am also shared between Central Rivers and this officer in business.
So you'll see both of us twice today. Just always know Jennifer's the brains. I'll talk a lot, but she'll have, she'll have the real answers. So not exactly sure where the board would like us to begin. You have a 27-page document, I believe either electronically or on paper, that outlines the, some background about the AEA system. It also includes our budget. We'll certainly get to questions about carryover, unspent balances, and why certain numbers are targeted, or why we're currently at that position, if that's a question we can circle back to. But as we go, feel free to, to interrupt with questions, or let me know, or certainly at the end, I've got about 15 to 20 minutes. So I will speak as rapidly as I can. I certainly won't intend to go through all 27 pages. In fact, the overview did a pretty nice job of covering most of what my talking points would have been. So of Central Rivers, you'll see from the overview, it provides services for a large portion of the state of Iowa, 68,000 students in public, private, and more emerging charter schools. We think those numbers will likely continue to evolve throughout this year and into next year as charter schools come on board. You'll see a listing on page one and two of those schools specifically, if you have questions in regards to those districts. And then we'll break down of the teachers and administrators that we serve. So as for students, as you know, and if you need me to go into less detail, I'm happy to do that. We provide special education services. It's probably 75 to 80% of our work. But then educational services for administrators, for teachers, for paraprofessionals, whether that be through professional development, now is approved by the, the state, whether that be in school improvement initiatives, really answering most of their requests historically, what do they need help with, what do they want the AEA system to lean into and provide leadership with. So that's where you'll see the others served, administrative curriculum directors, head start programs, parent educators, principals, pretty much if you're in the education environment in pre-K-12 in Iowa, the AEA system has some connection with you with services or professional Our programs, you'll have a, a list, or a link, I should say, in your document that lists all of the programs that are provided by the AEA system. Many of those things, we collaborate with our neighbors, unless we're not, you know, being redundant in our expenditures. I won't go through that list. It's a document all of its own unless there are questions You'll see on page five, a nice visual of the map, the districts that we serve. You'll see it's a large geographic footprint from north to south, and then of course, east to west, a little bit tighter confined. You'll see where our offices are in Clear Lake, Cedar Falls, and Marshalltown. So we spread those out to be connected with, with the districts we serve. So it's not always a matter of we're traveling from Cedar Falls, or they're needing to come to Cedar Falls. we're traveling from Cedar Falls or they're needing to come to Cedar Falls to receive those services. Page six is really just a breakdown of those facilities. Page seven, capital assets, you know, as any agency, we have certain capital assets that we own of significance, probably other than our facilities, our vans. You see oftentimes, parents or community members know us by the vans when they see our vans delivering materials to schools, so that's their first sort of visual. So we do have a pretty complex van system that provides not only media materials and robotics and those types of things, but also provides an opportunity for special education equipment to be moved from district to district as needed, whether that's physical therapy, occupational therapy equipment, a whole variety of things. Staff. Our organizational chart has changed significantly, probably more at Central Rivers than the other AEA's in the sense that for the cabinet-level positions are shared, as was mentioned earlier. My position is shared between Keystone. Jennifer's position is shared as the SBO with Mississippi Bend. And then our Ed Serv Director and our Special Ed Administrator are also shared with Keystone. So it's had a significant change in its organizational chart, particularly at the cabinet-level leadership positions. Everybody good? Should I keep going? All right.
Just a a question maybe. How is the shared positions doing when you're, you're at a different AEA and you have others from Keystone? How does that work as far as?
You know, it's I should probably let Jennifer answer that question. From my vantage point, it works fairly well. A lot of initial organizational timing. So our cabinet at Keystone meets on Mondays, cabinet at Central Rivers meets on Wednesdays. Jennifer is opposite of that with Mississippi Bend. So we're able to all be in a meeting half a day per week if needed to coordinate those efforts.
Exactly. Same. Our Mississippi Bend meets on Monday, or Central Rivers on Wednesday, so that does allow me to be at both. Zoom is a great option because I'm logistically a lot further than Central Rivers, so when I'm not there in person, I'm on Zoom. So it's worked out as well as I think you can expect for a shared position. So, yeah.
And each have their own boards, as you know, so that creates some opportunities to connect with with districts through the boardsmanship or the elected board members. And so creates some challenges, but also creates some synergy between the two agencies to, you know, sort of figure out at the board level, those sort of philosophical pieces, policy pieces moving forward. So it's, you know, there are times we double our efforts, you know, two board meetings a month, two, you know, but for the most part, very manageable. Thankful to technology, Zoom is a huge help for us.
And we have good staff.
And great staff.
Yeah, great staff at both, you know, all of our locations. So, you know, the, the work is being done with that great staff that's supporting us, excuse me, so that allowed, that also makes a big difference as far as in a shared position that you have good staff that's working for you at each agency, so.
I would also call out on Page ten, you'll see the changes. Some are negative in the sense of reduction, some are positive in special education. So those are our anticipated staffing levels for next year. That's not our current staffing level. So we are working to hire, particularly in the special education realm, additional staff members. So our hope, as reflected by the end of February, would be to add those positions. So there may be some variance in our budget when the actual budget is fulfilled, but that's largely going to be due to whether or not we're able to fill all of the positions we envisioned having to support the districts that we serve. So, you know, it's competitive out there, particularly in the world of special education, and you'll hear later about some, you know, opportunities of centers of excellence to try to grow staff. And so I think that's a work business we're all in, in K twelve. So just know that some of those numbers are cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to fill those positions.
Yeah.
Okay. So maybe if you want to jump to administrative expenditures on page
eleven.
Thirteen. Do you want to, you'll notice we did meet the statutory requirement of thirty percent reduction. I believe we were one that was initially returned. Ours was at twenty-nine point six percent. So we had to make some adjustments to put that above the thirty percent threshold. Misinterpreted legislation, whether it was this budget year or next budget year, so. Yeah, which fiscal year was impacted, but we're able to make those adjustments and be above the thirty percent. As you'll see, a portion of that is the shared positions that we've talked about at length.
Administrative positions themselves have decreased by seven point five FTEs. Part of that decrease was between twenty fiscal year twenty four and twenty five, and then we have another decrease proposed in twenty six that brought us down to that thirty-two point eight percent in the administrative positions. When you look at administrative expenditures as a whole, that's not just administrators, it's a lot of other administrative type functions that go into those coatings for administrative expenditures. Also, within that, there's revenue that is generated within those departments that offset that expense. And so you'll see that on thirteen, page thirteen, that we do reflect revenue offset for some of our services, like our business office has revenue that's generated through shared SBO services. Our IT does a lot of IT-type revenue generating services for districts. Our creative services does as well. So that is offset there, bringing our total expenditures within line of that reduction of thirty percent for the overall administrative expenditures, both on the administrator side, FTE side and in total.
I know that was a significant focus, so certainly can pause there for questions.
I'm going to continue.
Okay, thank you. So if we jump to Page sixteen and seventeen, you will see the centralized services. So centralized services are basically where agencies share, create a budgetary efficiency or an economic efficiency services. So you'll see down in the, what the service is on Page sixteen, and you'll notice an awful lot of those collaborative relationships are between Central Rivers and Keystone. So the question earlier is how does that work? Well, part of it is, there's, again, some synergy between the work that's happening in both, and how do we share, whether it's specific work elements or specific people with certain expertise that maybe are in a shortage area. So you'll notice a lot of those are happening in the top portion of the page between Central Rivers and Keystone. You'll see some statewide pieces, technology, we've broken, and others will talk about this as well, the state into four quadrants, so sharing some statewide efficiencies, but then also a quadrant efficiency, so that within that quadrant, you know, instead of having replication, we're sharing those positions. It is fortunate that that quadrant for us is also Central Rivers and Keystone. So we obviously have a very good opportunity to find places that we can collaborate, work together for technology. Centers of Excellence, really proud of our team stepping up. When we talk about central, centers of excellence, Annette Hyde, our Special Education Administrator, was one of the first to jump on board with an idea, and that was mentioned earlier. And you'll see, time late here, with early access, that plan is being developed right now with the hope of finalizing that by May of this year. Some work with Angelisa and the DE team to make sure that there's sort of a vision or philosophical connection between what we're doing and what the state would like to see, certainly with the director. This summer, we'll be in sort of development phase of our team with the idea then that late winter, I'm sorry, late twenty-five, so December, January, February, over the winter, bringing in on the other AEA's onboard. So just wanting to make sure that, that I'm reading a few of the bullets here. Efforts are focused on evidence-based instructional strategies to improve child outcomes as measured by early childhood outcomes. Efforts can include recommendations and guidelines for documentation, teaming, implementation, fidelity and checks, and other practices related to effective early intervention services. So as educators, I think everybody in this room understands, the sooner we find them, the sooner we wrap them with with services as needed, the better the outcomes that they have as they're progressed through their academic life and then hopefully on into the remainder of their life. So it's a pretty big focus, I think, everybody in education. So really excited to bring that to fruition as a center of excellence. That also will be a collaborative effort between Central Rivers and Keystone, so I'll say the same thing in about an hour and a half when I'm back with you, but know that we've got great leadership with that, with Annette, who, again, is the shared special administrator between the two agencies. Any questions about that? There was a question, looking at my time, there was a question earlier about carryover or unspent balance and the appropriate levels for that. And Jennifer will talk about how some of those dollars are encumbered or already
Committed.
Committed, thank you. And then I'll speak a little bit about why the unspent balance is necessary. So certainly, as the director mentioned, part of that is to carry us through the months when we need to make payroll and pay other expenses. Not only traditionally, that's happened in the fall. This coming year, it's a little bit of trial and error because of the way districts will be billed, and so we don't have that same flow of dollars that we would have when it was coming to us in ten monthly installments from the state. So as we build districts and they pay us, they're, you know, we all have to get used to that. We'll bill them. They have to get used to paying their bills on time, so it's going to be a cash flow concern there to make sure, you know, that we can pay our bills in a timely manner. The other thing is, our revenue stream is the best information we have as of February twenty eighth. Not all districts have committed everything that they likely will commit because they don't know what SSA is, they haven't completed negotiations with their teachers, union and other work groups, so they don't really know what flexibility they have in their funding. Or the opposite, right? There might be a time where they've indicated to us they'd like a certain service for next year, but we'll have to remove that because of, again, maybe a change in their financial situation. So we have to have some flexibility in there to make sure we have the services available that the districts want. The other thing that's new for us, but we'll get better at, is sort of that on-demand request. Districts are used to calling us and saying, hey, you know, next Thursday, we're going to do a session on A, B or C, can you support us, right? So they want to be able to come to the store and buy something off the shelf. And if we're able to happen, we have to have something on the shelf, right? So, you know, Hy-Vee knows how many loaves of bread to stock every day, and we don't know that yet, but we'll develop that over the course of the next year. So we will lean into some of our reserves to make sure that we have what districts need in a timely manner. It's new for them, new for us, for them to make those projections in January for, you know, twelve, fourteen, sixteen months. And so we want to be good partners and have those things available. So to do that, we project revenue in a conservative way. Jennifer makes me do that very conservatively. And then we project our expenditures as sort of on the other side of that, a maximum. And so to make those things match, we need to have some, some carryover, some reserves. Now, that number will correct itself over time, and our reserves are probably higher than they will be in the future just because of year-over-year increases to that.
Exactly.
So tell them what's wrong.
You did a great job, Stan. No, just like Stan said, this is kind of going to be a learning year this next year just because of all of the changes that are involved. Budgeting can be somewhat of a challenge when you don't have, a lot of times budgeting is based on historical data and not having that historical data as far as like the billable services and things like that. It's somewhat of a best guesstimate based on, and we have some data as far as the district service plans that we've already had with districts and what they've tentatively agreed to. And so we can try to project some of that billable services, but otherwise, it's, I think after this next year, the following years will get much easier to project budgetary numbers. Fortunately, we have a fund balance that will allow us to have a year where we can lean into our reserves in order to kind of figure things out, for lack of a more technical really see kind of where things shake out and where the services are and our expenditures and what have you. So Central Rivers has been very good and diligent in the past of committing some of their reserves for future expenditures that they know are down the line. So a big portion of the fund balance is already committed. There's categoricals that are restricted, of course, inventories that are restricted, but then committed funds that are part of our fund balance have to do with debt that there is still some outstanding debt that's committed in the fund balance so that we have the reserve to pay it off when need be. Right now, interest rates are really good on deposits, so, and when you have a low loan rate and a high interest rate, it makes more sense to carry that debt and earn the income on your reserves. So right now, we still carry the debt, but it's committed in this fund balance. There's also a number of items that, you know, just infrastructure needs and building type repairs and maintenance that are reserved in those committed dollars too. You know, a lot of that stuff is high-dollar HVAC-type things that it's best to have a reserve knowing that it could, it's towards its end of its useful life, it could break down and need to be replaced, and so those dollars are committed. So that's part of that fund balance that's outlined in the, in the report. So I just wanted to touch on the committed piece there as well.
The one thing I mentioned earlier, and you maybe hear us talk about DSA, district service plans and service plans. So that's quite simply, we meet with each superintendent or their team and try to project what their needs might be for next year in the general education, whether that be media services or professional development, those types of things, and sort of build a plan based on that. We also have conversations with our non-publics, and so we're still in process with that. That's a little bit more fluid right now as the process of determining their access to funds. We know that'll be based on a per-student dollar amount, so we know the dollar amount. It's just a little bit of a conversation around how, what role the public school and the private school play in conjunction with each other. So when you hear us talk about those things, just know that that's a meeting between us, superintendent, trying to anticipate what their needs are for next year and building our revenue stream in that area for next year. And then similar conversations in special ed where we know we'll receive ninety percent of the funds that generate through special ed, it'll go to the districts, the districts will send it to us. Then that ten percent will be, however they're going to allocate that, is that something they're going to use our services for? So a lot of moving parts, and so I guess that's sort of my commercial for why we need some padding there in our reserves to sort of figure out life moving forward.
Yeah. I just did a quick calculation. Your unassigned fund balance, ten point six million, and that's about fourteen percent of your total budget. That's reasonable. It's reasonable.
I was, prior to this, I was superintendent in Dubuque for a decade, and we always had that band. The ten to fourteen percent was always our goal, so I think educationally, that's a pretty normal safety spot.
So your conversations and obviously trying to figure this out first time around, any concern about federal funds and revenue that you usually get that may be changed, or is that always a concern?
Well, I think that, this morning, I'm like, driving from Dubuque, so we'll have to wait and see. We certainly use those federal funds to make sure that districts receive everything they have. Not all districts will generate enough in their ninety percent to attain the services that they need for their students. And so that's how we utilize those federal funds to sort of balance those things out. So that a small district, if they have a, and in a small district, right, you might have one or two students who move in with really unique and expensive needs. Well, the ninety percent that district has, as flow-through, might not meet all those needs, so we use those federal funds to offset that so that every student, regardless of their zip code, those federal funds to offset that so that every student, regardless of their zip code, has an opportunity to have what they need for their education. So it is very important to us. Will it change? I'm not sure.
Right, right. You just have to go with the flow and figure out what happens, what to do.
Another rationale for our unspent balance, by the way.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Are there other questions for Central Rivers? The recommendation is that the state board approve of their their budget as for general.
I move to a state their budget is presented.
Second?
Motion by Mary, second by Cindy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion's carried. Budget's approved.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
That's it. We're going to be taking a 10-minute break, and we will continue on with our agenda.
Oh, so now? Oh, okay. All right.
All right, we have Grant Wood with us.
Good morning. I'm John Spear, Chief Administrator, Grant Wood, AEA.
Oh, Sandra's going to go first.
You're going to go first, Sandra?
Finish introducing herself.
And I have Barb with me.
Barb Farms, I'm the Director of Business. President Robbins. Again, I'll go over the two-page summary, and then we'll turn it over to the AEA. The reported stakeholders served by the AEA includes 72,000 students, 5,780 teachers, 35 districts, including three charter schools, and 30 non-public schools.
Grant Wood AEA is proposing to start a Center of Excellence for Leadership for Assessment, Linkages, and Instructional Programming Practices for Successful Post-Secondary Transitions for Learners with Disabilities, and it is targeted to begin July 1, 2026. They are proposing to have a decrease of 1.3 Special Education FTE and highlighting some shared and centralized services. They provide Power School Services, networks like Curriculum, Special Ed Leadership and TAG, and are sharing an Early Access Administrator.
The AEA did not report any changes to own or lease land or buildings from the FY25 budget to the FY26 budget. Positive outlook noted from the budget report and request is that Grant Wood is in a strong financial position to navigate the challenges presented in fiscal year '26. Moving to the back page, we'll look at the information on which the board will take action today. First, I'd like to note the check mark in the upper section reflecting that Grant Wood is proposing or planning for a 32.8% administrative expenditure reduction above the 30% required. The next section does reflect that Grant Wood is not projecting to incur a negative balance at the end of fiscal year '26. And finally, the director's recommendation, which is to approve the budget as statutorily compliant. Thank you, Chief Spear.
I saw a year ago, I jumped the gun there, so sorry. We're happy to be here. Thank you, the board, for the service you do. So often thankless task, as is a Grant Wood AEA board member or a school board member. So we thank you for that. Jennifer and Stan did a really nice job of going through a lot of the generalized AEA information, so we'll skip that part so that you don't have to hear it nine times. We'll try to focus a little more specifically on Grant Wood AEA, so we thank them for doing that. So Barb and I will just go back and forth, kind of highlighting some of the information specifically about Grant Wood AEA. You know, I always like to add, when we talk about the executive summary, what Grant Wood AEA is about, we're a very compact AEA, and that is an incredible bonus as an agency. You know, we're no further than an hour's drive from any of our school districts, and you certainly can't say that for all AEAs. You know, we serve a seven-county area in and around the Iowa City-Cedar Rapids corridor. It's Kirkwood footprint, we share the same footprint. I mean, oftentimes, when people talk about populations, that AEA, oftentimes, they don't think about paraeducators or substitute tutors. So AEAs do paraeducator training and authorization, run substitution authorization programs. And at Grant Wood AEA, we also run a program that intakes, does the background checks for 16-area schools, helps the backbone of AESOP, which is the program where you can acquire subs. So oftentimes, those are a couple of populations that are overlooked when you talk about AEAs. Barb and I are going to spend a couple of minutes talking about programs, mostly programs that we work with or share with other AEAs, so a little preview of centralized services. I will start with a couple here. One happens to be the only adaptive PE program in the state. So we actually have a consultant who actually goes out to schools and helps the instructors, helps students access PE that normally would not necessarily see that service. If you're ever around, it's an incredible program. You don't see the devices that have been created to allow quadriplegics or to participate in free throw shooting and things of that nature. We run off-site programs like many of our other peers, all the way from birth to community college students, and a mentoring and induction consortium we share with 16 of our school districts and several other AEAs that helps first-year teachers transition into the profession.
Another program that's unique to Grant Wood is the VAS Center, and that stands for Van Allen Science Teacher Center. That started in 1992 at Grant Wood, and we actually support districts in at least three other AEAs, and we're now beginning to transition that from the FAW Science Kit curriculum to Open SciEd. So we have started investing in Open SciEd kits.
You know, we offer onsite professional development at our agency. We offer onsite professional development at districts. We, like many of the other AEAs, are now offering micro credentials, which would be an anytime, anyplace professional learning opportunity, which has been extremely popular with staff. We've also had districts begin to chain those together for a series of learning events for their own staff that it's kind of an anytime, anyplace learning. So we're kind of a 21st or maybe 22nd century learning opportunity as we look to the future.
And we also, we provide support for student information systems across the state, specifically for Power School and Infinite Campus. We've done that for many years, and then, I think John mentioned earlier, we have a substitute management system that we call Sub-Central, supports 15 of our districts currently, and we've had inquiries about expanding that. So that just manages the substitutes in our area.
When you think about Fed's position codes, Stan mentioned, Jennifer I think did as well, this is a snapshot in time. We are staffed appropriately in ed-serving media, but we continue to hire specialized staff. We hired specialized staff last spring. We continue to hire specialized staff this fall, this winter, and will continue to do so this spring. So I would guess ultimately, our specialized bed count will be up. But if you look from '24 to '26, we would be down somewhere around 16% to 19% staffing from '24 to '26 in all areas. Most acutely in ed-served media, we are trying to hire back specialized. That's an area that we would like to grow our staff as we move forward. That would be page 14 on your report.
Are many AEAs hiring specialized staff? Because it seemed like the previous AEA was the ending of, I mean, so.
I would say generally, most are hiring specialized staff. One of the side effects of '26-12 is we lost a significant portion of specialized staff when we really didn't lose the job responsibilities of our specialized staff. So I guess I would probably say every AEA or most would say, we're probably short specialized staff. We would like to have more, so that's why we continue to hire.
Is that, are those easy positions to fill?
Not really, no, not necessarily.
I'm wondering.
Especially depending like where you are.
Okay, oh, okay.
The compactness of our region and being near a large metro area, I believe, is an advantage in hiring specialized staff, but even even in an area like Iowa City-Cedar Rapids, it's difficult to hire specialized staff, especially in particular areas.
Are those positions that can be shared between AEAs?
We are. For example, we're, we are better able to hire a handful of specialized staff, and so we're beginning to share with Great Prairie. So there may be a district or two just just below our southern border where Great Prairie is, so we'll we'll reach down into those districts to help Great Prairie. And if they have a specialty that we're unable to hire, they'll they'll help us as well.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely, that is, that's happening.
Okay, thank you. Are some of your specialty areas that you mentioned, the VAS, even the sub, are those revenue opportunities as well for either other AEAs or other districts in other AEAs?
It is, I don't think, it's probably a little overambitious to characterize anything as truly revenue generating. We hope to break even with a little bit of cushion to help pay for just overall overhead and expenses, but all these programs that we would call traditionally fee-for-service would have been something outside of ed-served media that was outside of the norm, like like VAS. Now all of ed-served is a fee-for-service, so everything runs like our traditional fee-for-service programs have historically.
Okay.
Barbara, you can talk about 16, 17?
I sure can. Yep, so, so yeah, the tables on 15 and 16 just go through the breakdown of staff by special ed, ed services, and media. So we've had, you know, the largest reduction of about 22% in ed services, another 6.5% reduction in media and technology. So, and then at the bottom of 16 is where we move in to talk about our administrative staff. And, you know, so we're, we've met the 30% reduction requirement in the House file, and so we just have a list of what has been included in those reductions. And then the the table on page 17 shows that reduction. On page 18 is where we look at the broader picture of not just administrative positions, but administrative expenditures. As Jennifer already said, that middle section of that table is the revenue, and we, Grant Wood is a little bit more unique in that we've had fee-for-service programs for many years. So our revenue in that section is probably higher than you're going to see from most of the other AEAs.
So like was Cindy's question, our vast revenue would go in that section? All of our traditionally outsourced programs, revenue-producing programs?
Primarily technology. So our student information system support, we offer managed IT support services to many districts, and our Sub-Central substitute management would be in that section. That would also include those shared positions. So we have shared chief in the past, we have shared a director as superintendent, we have shared special ed consultants as district special ed directors, so all of that is incorporated in that section.
I would just add a quick note. Stan and Jennifer were very diplomatic. Sharing is working, but it is challenging. It works well if you're able to partner with an AEA, and most of the sharing, I think, happens across one border. It gets much more complex if you have bits and pieces, but, so I think everyone is sharing and it's working out well, but it is, it is challenging at times.
I was gonna, I think, because it seems like it's a position that's shared maybe between two, and some are shared with different AEAs, so that that seems a little bit more difficult. But I mean, when they're, when you guys are sharing it, are the whole cabinets coming together and planning, or is it just that person's going, jumping between two different AEAs?
Probably not much cabinet sharing yet, but as we share more and more cabinet members, I would see a scenario where the more cabinet members you share collectively, obviously, it would make sense to have joint cabinet meetings, and some of that, I think, is happening. But I think that will grow.
Okay. That seems to make more sense then.
Yeah, so I think then on 20, on page 20 just shows that we're projecting a 32% reduction in those, 32.8 in total administrative expenses. So we're meeting that threshold. And then page 21, I think John is going to talk about centralized services.
Right, you know, we covered many of these when we talked about our program of services. So I don't, I don't, I won't talk about many of them, but if you look at the bottom of page 21, exactly, that's, that outlines some of the sharing that we're doing with Great Prairie, which would be, we share a southern or a northern border, depending on your orientation. So like TAG, audiologists, hybrid services, various administrative services, we're beginning to share some of those positions with Great Prairie AEA, helping each other out where I may have speech听觉科ologist who can go into the southwest of mine or the northeast of Nathan's, and he may have an audiologist who could come up in a district that's further away from my my center. So we're beginning to do those, and that would outline some of those services. Center for Excellence, we're excited about, on page 23, leading the assessment linkages and instructional programming practices for successful post-secondary learning. I think what we'll start with this summer into the fall is we'll lead an audit of all nine AEAs to kind of assess what programs, what staff, and what resources do we all have? So what are we all doing in common? The things that we aren't doing in common, are there exemplars or north stars that we could pull together? And so what we'll try to do, I think this would be uniformly true of every Center of Excellence, we'll have a uniform system and process that all AEAs will participate in, but will be led or coordinated by an AEA. So we'll happen to be the the lead AEA or the coordinating AEA in that service.
Then to page 24 is where the fiscal detail begins. So I just noted that over the two years since FY24, our revenues have decreased by about 20%. So in addition to the administrative staff reductions that were highlighted, we, there are additional staff reductions planned in the areas of ed services and media to match up with the funding that we're projecting the revenue. And then as far as, on the bottom of page 24, I noted, you know, as far as our fund balance levels, there have been lots of great points made. Another one to note is that AEAs have no taxing authority. So unlike school districts that have a management fund, their property and liability insurance or PEPAL funds for their facilities, ours all comes out of our general fund. So I think that's certainly justification for us to have a little bit higher levels even than school districts, so. And then on page 25, I would just highlight at the bottom, you know, I discussed what, kind of what some of our assumptions are. So obviously, this is based on 0% SSA at this point. It's based on not anticipating much increase in federal funds, which for us is primarily IDA, special ed funds. We also have some Title III, Title I funds, so.
And so as Stan and Jennifer mentioned, we're in the process of finishing up our district service planning meetings. We have all of our public meetings down to the exception of one. We've been delaying a little bit, our accredited non-public schools, but we'll start those at our end here after spring break. We've been really, I think, happy or pleased with the response from our districts. It really is, the last two years have been kind of an educated learning process between both districts and the AEA. And I talk at every one of those meetings that as time goes on, each of us will get better with this process, because once you have known products and known processes, you can better estimate or guesstimate. So I think I feel very good where we are with our with our partner schools and the services that they're requesting from us in the DSP meetings. You know, I think this is our most conservative estimate on a budget. We always estimate, estimate low on revenue and high on expenses, and usually that serves you pretty well when you're budgeting in the future, and Barb does a really good job at that. I think last year, we said this as well, we have tried over a handful of years to actually lower our unassigned fund balance, you know, our ratio, and we would look to end fiscal year '26 with an overall ratio of about 14.6%. And, you know, we feel comfortable, usually generally accepted school accounting practices would have you be between 7% and 17%. So we feel like we can hover around that area and feel confident and comfortable with where we are financially.
Do you happen to answer any questions?
Questions for Grant Wood?
As a, as a general matter, despite the cuts that you are facing and have dealt with here, do you believe you're able, with this budget, to meet the needs of your area?
Yes, I think Yes, I, I, I think we are. I, I think the real problem will be, everyone will have to overstaff a little bit to be flexible because, um, you know, there might be, there might be the need for five math consultants Wednesday, October seventh, and we only have three. You know, it just doesn't perfectly work out. So, I, I do believe we will have the resources and the staff to meet the needs. I believe both we and districts are gonna have to be more flexible on how that looks in the future. Because we won't have, we won't be, be able to be as flexible as we were in the past. So, that will probably be the challenge moving forward. The need isn't equal each day. If it was, it'd be easy to predict the number of staff. So, it's harder to predict when it ebbs and flows throughout the year and, and throughout the week.
I'd also just like to add, as others have, that A, I appreciate this format immensely. And B, thank you for your very direct and succinct, uh, explanation of how you're dealing with this. Certainly appreciate that.
You're welcome.
The questions?
Just have a comment when I was, I will fall as we use, uh, Grant Wood for Power School Support. Huge, I mean, huge. It was extremely valuable.
Thank you.
I would take a motion to approve the budget for Grant Wood.
Mr. Chair, I will be approve the Grant Wood AEA budget as presented.
Well, I will second that.
By Brian and seconded by Cass. Any further discussion? Here in none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All the same sign. It's scary. I'd like to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great Prairie.
Morning. First of all, just thanks for your service. Like John mentioned, we know that, um, VAS with a lot of volunteer work. Your time today. I'm Nathan Wood, Chief Administrator at Great Prairie. Uh, this is year two for me. And I'll let, uh, Sherry introduce herself. Sherry just started with us in January. Dennis retired after twenty-seven years at the agency and, and Sherry is now month three. I'll let her introduce herself.
Sherry Westendorf, and, um, I'm from, well, from Hedrick. And I, my background is, uh, school finance. I worked at small school Kyoto and then I went to Pekin. And, um, so where I live is very close to the AEA. So, you know, just that transition worked out well when Dennis decided to retire us.
Yeah, so I told Sherry I'd give her a pass here and I'll cover most of the finance stuff today. She's learned and drank out of a fire hose the last, last couple of months. But just appreciate, she's been very tough. I had to learn a lot of things in a, a short period of time and I appreciate her work with the agency.
Thank you so much. Great Prairie AEA, reported stakeholders, serve at thirty-five thousand students. Teachers and administrator, twenty-seven hundred, thirty-two districts and thirteen non-public schools.
By January first, twenty-twenty-six, Great Prairie AEA plans to begin a Center of Excellence for Language and Literacy for Learners with Disabilities. Between fiscal year twenty-five to fiscal year twenty-six, the budget reports a decrease of point zero-two Special Education FTE. And some highlights from shared and centralized services includes sharing networking teacher librarians and library program services and special education services like deaf and hard of hearing database supports, audiology services and child find teams.
The AEA did not report any changes of owned or leased land or buildings since the FY twenty-five budget. The positive look into the future as quoted from the budget report and request is Great Prairie AEA is in a position with solid ending funding balances to run a deficit by retaining as many staff members as possible for FY twenty-six. Moving to the back. The AEA, uh, did budget to meet the statutorily required thirty percent reduction in administrative expenditures by July one, twenty-twenty-six at thirty point one percent. Additionally, the AEA budget does not project a negative balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-six. The Director is recommending approval of the budget as statutorily compliant. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. I'll kind of start in here and just, and I kind of echo what John said. I'll try not to repeat all of the, the stuff that Stan started with and did a nice job. I'll talk specifically about our agency, um, really digging into who we serve. One of the challenges that we're facing this year was we brought in, uh, two new accredited, uh, non-public schools this year and another one next year. So, a good thing, uh, but just a different landscape for us. Uh, it's so only thirteen schools are accredited non-publics, but that's a huge increase from where we're at just a couple of years ago at seven. A little bit about the programs that we serve, uh, or the programs that we provide, I'm gonna highlight a couple that are specific to Great Prairie. So, in two thousand sixteen, I led a, um, shared social worker pilot, one school district. We, um, started that pilot because there was a lack of mental health providers in our area of the state. Since that time, for next school year, we'll be working with twenty-six districts, uh, to provide mental health services or social worker services of districts. And what that looks like is we provide a, a licensed social worker to come in and provide small group, school-based interventions, to make sure to figure out why kids aren't coming to school, what types of supports they may need to be more successful in school and provide that support. Uh, we also have piloted a, a language and literacy pilot, which we'll talk a little bit later of how we, uh, are gonna work with other agencies across the state to build that capacity and the connection between, um, communication skills and onset, learn, onset, um, literacy. And then another one I want to talk about is library program services. Again, just a lack of, of districts enabled to, being able to hire lib, uh, licensed librarians. We provide library services for thirteen of our school districts. Uh, so we send a licensed librarian into the school district, um, each week. On page, uh, six, there is a, just kind of outlines our map. So, as, uh, Cassandra mentions, we, we provide services between thirty-four and thirty-five thousand students in the southeast border of the state. Uh, our map aligns with the Indian Hills Community College and Southeast Community College boundaries. And, uh, the one challenge we face that's different than probably opposite of what John talked about is we have a large demographic, a large geographic area. So, we have staff members that may drive from one area to another area and one assignment may be up to two hours of commute time from one district to the next. Um, on pages, also on pages six and seven, it talks a little bit about our, our capital projects. So, we have four offices. We have our base offices located in Atumwa. It's a fifty-two thousand square foot facility. It houses our media center, uh, our print shop and is the base hub for a lot of our professional development. Um, we are also making a change for next year. We, uh, we lease a facility for a shelter school program. Uh, we're gonna move the shelter school program from an off-site location that we lease, uh, to our facility in Atumwa.
How many students do you serve there?
Uh, and at the shelter school, so the beds, there's up to fifteen beds. So, the, the shelter is in a, in a NAIF town. Uh, the students are transported to the shelter school daily. So, it ranges anywhere from six up to fifteen. The challenge that we face there is those range from third grade to eighteen. So, it's, it's a very, uh, unique situation. But it's also something we're pretty proud of because those kids, they didn't do anything wrong to be there. You know, it's usually a family situation where there was nowhere for them to go. They can be great kids. They can also be kids with a lot of challenges. But, uh, they're just looking for some support and love and, and we have a, a small group of staff that work there every day. So, we'll be transitioning to the Atumwa office. We're excited about that. There'll be more space. There'll be an outside place where they could get out during the day. And we'll also have some supports that have access to our media center and some other things that they don't have access to the shelter school now. Page eight is also just outlines capital assets. I'll be ha- happy to answer any questions there. One thing to know, um, is that, uh, we are gonna, uh, make an efficiency change. We operate two print shops. One in our, um, office and one in our Burlington office. And in July, uh, we'll transport, we'll transfer everything to our Burlington office. We'll be then, um, liquidating some of that equipment and then making some, um, staffing reductions in that area. Page nine talks a little about leadership organizational structure. This is something that I'm, um, I'll say this. Changing uncertainty brings a lot of anxiety and worry, you know, the unknown brings worry to people. Change also brings some opportunities. So, I've been at the agency now for twelve years. Since I got there, we have talked about making, uh, making a leadership structure change, uh, with our regional administrators and the responsibilities that they have. And we're gonna do that in July. So, there's some opportunity there that we've known for quite some time we needed to. And now, for, that was the, kind of taking advantage of the crisis situation. So, we, I won't get into too much detail, but we are trans, we are taking, um, but when I got, there was nine, has been reduced to six. We're taking six regional administrators and, and making three specialty, uh, positions. And our goal to that is really to create content experts that can support our staff and district staff. So, we'll have one administrator that will be, uh, the lead for our entire agency on child find responsibilities and coaching a special education teacher. So, special education consultant, social workers and school psychologists. Another administrator will be solely responsible for the related services that we provide. So, speech language pathologist, occupational therapist, physical therapist, teachers of deaf, hard and such, the ones that work directly with our staff that work directly with students. Now, the third will be the administrator of managed services. We'll take care of a lot of the contracted services that we've talked about in educational services and media. And that person will also work, uh, with the department on our Title I, Title III and our other, uh, managed domains. So, on leadership structures, you can see on page nine, uh, fiscal year twenty-four, we are twelve administrators. Uh, we reduced to seven administrators here for fiscal year twenty-five and we'll be at six administrators starting in July. That is, that is a, a challenge for us. Uh, my role is shared as the Chief Administrator, Human Resources Director. So, in the future, I think our next steps are really to look at, how can we, um, additional efficiencies will have to come with sharing outside, which John talked a little bit about exploring those opportunities with neighboring AEA's. On pages ten through twelve, I won't go through these specifically. The one thing I'll note is that, uh, we're not expecting to decrease our, our overall FT count. And I'll talk a little bit about, since we've submitted our budget, um, through district service plans, we've actually advertised for several different positions, um, that we'll actually try to increase our FT just because of district requests. Any questions on, uh, that's staff makeup or leadership structure? Talk a little bit about district service plan. So, um, Great Prairie is in a, in a unique situation. And I'll, I'll kind of take it back to, uh, what we talked about at the beginning with shared social workers. Our biggest challenge at Great Prairie is, um, hiring highly qualified candidates. In the service for a fee model of educational services and media, the change in funding and those going to the district control, that's also probably been one of our biggest. It's also been a benefit to us because districts have not, but there's not the human capital to hire highly qualified, uh, experts across the field. So, in our situation, um, Great Prairie is expecting to maintain the super majority of our educational services staff. We originally thought we would reduce a couple and since March first, we've had, um, since we've completed all those district service plans, we've received returned copies of those contracts and we're gonna retain about seventy-eight percent of that funding for next year. So, we'll actually look to increase some job categories such as shared social workers. Uh, we're gonna have to hire an additional math consultant, which is a good problem. Um, it's just, it's, now it's just trying to get those people, um, hired. Um, we're currently also working with districts on what is the, the ten percent of special education funds look like. Again, I think a human cap, because a lot of our districts don't have a leadership support in special education. So, they've relied on the agency for that. So, we're currently working with districts and we're looking to recur, uh, again, retain about seventy-five percent of those funds. So, unique to our agency, I would like to say it's all because of us. I also acknowledge that it also is a human capital issue and just the inability, uh, to hire additional folks in that area. Uh, the last thing I'll kind of say on, um, staffing is just that it's ever-changing. I talked a little bit about that already. And how we, we plan to maintain, uh, due to the amount of staff we lost, but our hope now is to actually increase some of our FT. Page fourteen to fifteen, uh, talk a little bit about, um, administrative expenditures. As Cassandra mentioned, we, um, from fiscal year twenty-four, we are just short of four point two million dollars in the, in that, um, administrative expenditures, uh, section. And we are reducing now to around two point nine million dollars. Centralized services on page sixteen, uh, talks a little bit about some of the, the efficiencies that we've tried to make with other districts. My staff is tired of hearing us say this, but this is the term I use all the time. We need to increase efficiency, but main high level effectiveness. We can't, uh, we have to be sure that we don't decrease effectiveness trying to be efficient. Some of the ones that, uh, that I'm proud of, and John mentioned a couple of these earlier, um, information technologies, uh, with Grant Wood in Mississippi Bend. Prior to this, um, centralized service and sharing with Grant Wood, Great Prairie did not offer contracted IST services. Uh, we're projected to have, offer contracted IST services, uh, with eleven of our districts for next year, which, uh, grew from two this year, um, zero last year, two this year, eleven next year. So, it's just again, a high need for our, for our districts. We're also working with, um, Green Hills AEA on virtual EL services. Again, a service that's very rare in our area, or a lot of our districts may have one or two students that need virtual, or need EL services and aren't able to, to afford or hire a qualified candidate. Uh, we're able to bring in now, um, highly qualified support in EL. And then another partnership that I'm proud of is that we're working with Green Hills AEA to provide, uh, we have two very small school districts, um, both less than two hundred and fifty students and Seymour, which is part of Great Prairie and Mormon Trail that is part of Green Hills, they share a superintendent. And their superintendent reached out to us and said, how can you both help? So, instead of our agency going in and talking to him and then Green Hills going to talk to them, we sent representatives from both agencies. And we're gonna share some of those services across agency boundaries. Uh, so where that superintendent and that, that team will have to work with one person instead of, uh, instead of two different agencies. Any questions on, um, administrative expenditures or those centralized services? Uh, Center of Excellence, so I'm gonna talk briefly about our Center of Excellence. Uh, this kind of goes back to the work that we had already started with our language and literacy pilot. Uh, this was something that we did four years ago. Uh, we saw some, we saw some really good, um, results from student achievement data. I will fully acknowledge our plan isn't to take what we did and just deploy across the state. Our first step, uh, to start in July one of twenty-twenty-six, over the next twelve months, we're kind of inventory, where are others, where are other agencies at? What are they already doing that may match with what we are doing that's there, that they have seen effective results on? And our goal with that is really to take the foundations around early, early communication skills and how if we have a higher impact, uh, with those kids at an early age in communication, how that transfers to literacy in the classroom, specifically those before third grade and a focus on special education students. So, how can we help our school districts with those students they struggle the most with? So, our goal will be to take, um, highly effective strategies, implement those, um, into our, into our staff members, potentially into their EERs or their evaluation reports they write for special education students. So, trying to match student need, or match student, match instruction, uh, to student need. So, we will, work's already started and it'll continue to go, uh, here the next, let's re-prepare for July twenty-six. I'm gonna talk next just about, uh, a proposed revenues, uh, by source as we get into, um, different pages. Similar to other AEA's, our, our reduction in, um, controlled tax funding goes from seven point two, seven point two-five million to two point nine million. So, a reduction of about four point three-five. The bright side for us is that our, our revenues from local sources were projected to increase from, about one point three million in fiscal year twenty-four to four point five million in fiscal year, uh, twenty-six. Expenditures, um, similar to, uh, the other agencies, um, you know, the one thing that I, that's been a bright spot for us this spring, the last three weeks really throughout the month of, month of March, is how we're, um, expecting to have increased local revenue sources. Um, and we'll look to hire some of those additional support services and instructional staff, um, in the revenue section as we confirm those district service plans. We, we were very candid with our districts in, in January and made, um, statements that if we could get these people under, if we could get agreements signed and returned, that we would offer those contracts or try to, try to retain as many of those staff as possible. And I think our districts, just knowing the hiring situation that they are in, realized that and that helped, uh, get those contracts back at a quicker rate. Next thing is just fund balances. So, actual fund balance at the end of twenty-four is about, um, seven, seven point six five million dollars. Uh, projected to be at five point nine million dollars at the end of, uh, twenty-six, which is actually higher than our fund balances the end of fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two. And a percentage-wise, we're pushing the twenty percent mark. So, I also feel confident about if we can hire additional qualified staff. Uh, we're in a position to do that, um, just like others, uh, agencies have talked about in our committed fund balances payroll for, uh, July, to September, depending on when those revenues start coming in after we bill for those services in the fall. Uh, we also have some, uh, facilities projects we've kind of paused, uh, last year, a roof and an HVAC system in our Burlington office. It's, so some infrastructure components that we've kind of paused. And I think we'll try to make some, here, uh, over the next twelve months on what that looks like. Last thing I talked, I will talk about and then I'll definitely open up for questions is our challenges, I think, at Great Prairie is, um, just how do we maintain the high level of services that we've projected to sell for next year? How do we maintain that, uh, moving forward? We realize that those funds are now general education dollars for districts and they're also pulled different directions. So, how do we ensure we provide value-added services that are high in quality that districts and teachers ask for? So, their superintendents realize that. And then, um, are also the second challenge, I think, is working with districts on the special education ten percent funding that they now control and ensuring that that stays close to students and doesn't transition to management. So how do we ensure that kids are getting the services they need and it doesn't just fill a short gap that may be away from student achievement? And then our, our last challenge is really just around how do we attract staff in our agency? How do we hi- hire highly qualified staff? The challenges or the priorities and, and the highlights, I guess, would be our increased revenue from local sources. We're very excited about that for next year. I'm also excited about, there's a lot of anxiety, I think, our agency around leadership structure. It's something we've known for a long time. We're excited about that. And then the efficiencies with other school districts, we're providing higher quality services in several areas because of the partnerships we've developed. And I think that's not something that we've done on our own. We've been able to capitalize on that with other school districts. Priorities for next year, again, just maintaining that revenue, having a positive impact on the services that we serve. Not giving up any of that effectiveness, just for efficiency, like I talked about earlier, being effective number one and then being efficient. And thank you for your time. I'm glad to answer any questions or if you have questions for Sheri, you can put her on the spot.
Nathan or Sheri? Questions for you, Nathan? Contract negotiations are you settled yet?
So we have not settled. We, we've met with the association last week. All of our assumptions were based on a, a 0% SSA and a 4% package. In preliminary conversations, I think we're going to be, I feel very confident we'll be able to settle in that close to 2.5 to 2.8 range.
Other AAs settled yet, you know?
Yeah, I will speak on, I know some have and have been in that similar range. I don't have an exact, John, if it's two to three, I know have settled and others are in the same situation as us is trying to, to get into that situation. I, I will compliment our associations. We kind of had conversations around when we have such uncertainty in revenue. It came down to the higher package just means less people in our, in our staff or our association leadership was very, very collaborative in that and understood our situation. So.
I guess employees is at about 80% of your total budget approximately?
Yep, yeah, about 82%.
So when you negotiate a, a percent makes a big difference.
Right.
So my question that I had. Other questions?
I just, I, I just compliment you on taking, I mean, the, the administrative structure changes. That is not easy and recognize your efforts on that. And to your point, to continue to focus on the services and the quality versus, you know, the quantity or efficiency gains from that. So thank you.
I would entertain a motion to approve the budget for Great Prairie.
So moved?
Move by Cindy?
I was storing my books over there too.
Motion by Cindy, second by Brooke. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Oh, same sign? Motion's carried.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. You're a third of the way done.
And present, Paul, it's not a comment for a, a specific A, you've heard a couple of times raised in presentations, the use of the 10% of special education funds by school districts. Just want to draw your attention to that's what we were talking about in our initial department directors report. The comprehensive allowable use of special education funds document and that update to our House file 2612 implementation page that Dr. Klein and Dr. Feinhardt led and, and is informed by the questions and the feedback of the AAs.
All right. Green Hills.
Morning, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jason Plord. I'm the Green Hills Chief Administrator.
I'm Kelly Allen. I am the school business official for Green Hills AEA and operations too. I take care of that.
Good morning. We'll begin the budget summary for Green Hills AEA. The AEA reports many stakeholders served, including over 37,000 students, almost 3,000 teachers, 44 districts, including two charter schools as well as six non-public schools.
Green Hills plans to start a special education center of excellence focused on assistive technology supports for learners with disabilities beginning July 1, 2026. Do I need to stop? No? Okay. The, between fiscal year 25 to 26, the budget reports an increase of 7.8 special education FTE. And shared and centralized services of note include sharing a child find team and preschool specially designed instruction services shared with Great Prairie, I believe, which we just noted, and also the English language learner services.
The AEA did not report any changes in owned or leased land or buildings from the FY25 budget. A positive look into the future is quoted from the report and request was Green Hills AEA is in a good financial position to navigate the challenges presented in fiscal year 26. Moving to the back of the page. The AEA budget meets the statutorily required 30% expenditure reduction and administrative expenditures by July 1, 2026 at 31.6%. Additionally, the AEA budget does not project a negative balance ending at the balance of over $5,000. Finally, the director's recommendation is to approve the budget as statutorily compliant. Thank you, Chief.
I'd like to start by highlighting a few of the programs that we offer that we're very proud of. So I'm on page three. Nathan mentioned, you know, and we all know this in, in Iowa and across the nation, there's a lot of challenges with young people with behavior needs, mental health needs and so forth. And so we've started to travel that path with our LEAs. Couple I'd highlight there are mental, mental health, social worker program, which is similar to what Nathan shared before. We have, we started with three, then we had six, now we have nine and, and soon to be 11. Mental health, social workers, highly qualified folks that are actually going into the school with school-based therapy. When you have large swaths of rural schools, you know, the challenge is to get a therapist. You know, you have to drive Des Moines or Omaha and then even then you're on a waiting lift off. And so this idea of having master social workers in the schools is a very powerful response to help children with their mental health needs. So we do offer that. We also offer one hybrid opportunity. We have Iowa Connections Academy, which is an online program. And those students, like other students, continue to have mental health needs. So we have a master social worker that'll be working with those students three days a week with therapy. So we're proud of that new exploration. Related to that, superintendents in schools in Green Hills, like across the state have asked for supports with students with behaviors, in particular therapeutic classrooms. So we had three therapeutic classrooms that we started. The first two of the three were doing very, very well financially and one was losing about a hundred thousand a year because of a variety of things. And so I did put a pause on that, working with our board and, and the superintendents to stabilize that. We were able to revisit that this year now that we've stabilized both programs. And we're actually proud to say we're opening our third therapeutic classroom back again at Orient Maxburg. You might know that they're dissolving and so they have a, really a pretty wonderful space there. And so we worked with the interim superintendent Jeff Cruz and the Ottawa Valley School Board and administration to open that facility. So we can have access in our east part of our agency for students to have behavior challenges and therapeutic needs. So you'll hear more about that in the future, I'm sure. Another program that we're very proud of, we have 25 school-based interventionists. We partner with the fourth judicial court to provide a grant to us in order to hire what are called SBIs or sometimes graduation coaches. And they work with at-risk students in the school on everything from why are you, why are you not attending to, why aren't you doing your homework? I notice you're failing a class to a whole host of other things. So that's a program that's, as far as I know, the only in the state, the only one in the state, very unique. And it's a amazing program that we're going to continue. Teacher librarians continues to be a challenge everywhere. Nathan mentioned that. We also have three people that are certified. So we provide teacher librarian services in the schools when schools are in a spot and can't find somebody that's highly qualified. And then finally, a new adventure for us is it's been EL, but virtual EL is a new exploration for Green Hills. What it does is when you think about rural Iowa, like Nathan mentioned, often a, a family or two move into a school district and those students need and deserve services and it makes very challenging to find a third grade teacher, let alone find a, a teacher that's certified in EL. And so what we've done is we've hired two EL virtual teachers, highly qualified. Like probably many of us in the room, our age, we, we wonder is virtual impactful? Is it, is it adequate? Is it, is it something we can be proud of? And I, I would tell you that absolutely we can be proud of those services. They're high quality services and we work with the schools on those. Any questions, comments on programs? I'll move to our organizational structure. You'll see there a circle. Few of us have moved, moved towards this idea of a more flattened system where we reduce central office type administrator type. On page six on the circle there. And so the, the circle is conceptual and the idea is that children and families and communities are in the center. So it's just kind of philosophical underpinning of how we approach the work. But in terms of the overall structure, five years ago, we had 16 administrators that would be considered more of a central office removed from, from schools. We continued to reduce when I came on board about one per year. And then this past year, we reduced six positions. So we've reduced from 13 to, to seven. How do you do that? That's responsible, by the way, for a big percentage, you know, as we think about that 31.6% total expenditure reduction. Obviously, we've garnered, garnered savings from that. What we've done is we've moved from a, a model where people are more oversight in the central office. And we pushed into the field and, and what that really looks like is all of us are familiar. You go to Target, Walmart or whatever, you'll often see a working manager, somebody who's worked up through the ranks, they're dynamite, they show leadership, they've been customer service, they've been a cashier and they show promise and they're interested in leadership, they volunteer for that. So we have people across Iowa that are parts of all types of disciplines that are looking for leadership opportunities that aren't administrators. And so we elevate those folks, we give them some, you know, a little stipend for their leadership opportunity. And then their working managers, because at least in Green Hills, they all have, they continue to have assignments in their disciplines. So if you're an SLP lead, you continue to have a roster, but you have a smaller roster in order to provide opportunities for you to lead. And so people like Jason and Kelly become more about oversight and making sure that, that you find the dynamite people within your organization. You elevate them, you coach and you mentor them and you help them lead those disciplines. So every time we do that, we still have a person, but we save 40, 50, $60,000 because executive directors are making $150,000 a year. These people are making 80 to 90. So you keep doing that and you, you, you flatten the organization, you elevate the people that want to be elevated and you continue to maintain high quality services. So that's it. That's how we did it conceptually. I want to jump to the centralized services page. I'm on page 11. Some of this you've already heard about. The, the chart there at the top kind of provides background for the narrative, narrative I just provided. We continue to be proud. Like Nathan said, you know, there's a lot of challenges with this change, a lot of changes happening simultaneously. But with every change, there is that opportunity and proud of all the AAs coming together and really doing a deep dive and analyzing subsections and pieces where we can turn that challenge into an opportunity. And there's evidence of that here, you know, as we think about Green Hills partnering with Great Prairie, like Nathan said, we're also partnering with Prairie Lakes with math. They needed a math consultant. We had a math consultant in the north part of our agency. And so we were able to provide some, some math services there, preschools mentioned, among others. I'll pause for just a minute. Real proud of our Center for Excellence work to date. We've, we have one person that's hired within Green Hills that's going to help us lead this. We also this week did interviews for internal candidates for two part-time people to do the work as we think about assistive technology. And they'll come together around creating some visioning for the early, for the AT supports across the state. We've already met with Melissa Lawler, who you may know, she's a, works for the Department of Education. We met with her, our team met with her this week. I'm in the process, she gave me some homework. I'm in the process of reading a document that the department put together that's authored by Melissa Lawson. Pretty excited about that. Assistive technology is really a national conversation that's spilling into the state that I get excited about for lots of reasons. I'm in year 31, public, public education in Iowa and a special ed teacher, done lots of different things. And as many of you that have been involved know, things come full circle and then we get, put a new name on something and we say, well, you know, here's this and it's this one, this one, I think there's a lot to explore. It gives me some hope because it's a lever that probably in Iowa has been largely untapped, right? And so we're all looking for those golden nuggets in terms of how can we start to close the gap as we think about students with disabilities and all students? And I think it's not going to be one thing. AT is not going to take care of all of it, but AT working in concert with some of the things with reading, science of reading, some of the things that you heard about earlier with math and so forth. All that coming together cumulatively will, will be the, the levers that, that really changed that. So AT, as I was reading through this from, from Melissa, I got pretty excited. I'm looking at Angelisa because she knows so much more than I do about this. But what I heard from Melissa this week when we met is in Iowa, we've had pockets of this, but we really haven't taken a comprehensive approach to it. And so we're going to take the lead. We're going to work with Heartland. Heartland has a great team. We're going to work with Melissa and the department and move the state forward together and discover a lot of things and find some gold nuggets. And I, I think it's gonna, it's really a promising practice. It's been there and we haven't, we haven't touched it. So the only other thing I wanted to share, and then if you want to share anything on the budget side. Kind of hot off the press. I was interested to hear from Nathan, the number that he shared that they're at 78% of funds as they think about EdServe and media. And this morning I was kind of running some numbers and interesting enough, we're at 77.9. So we're right at 78%. So I don't know if that'll be a common number. But as we think about projections, you heard about the challenges early in terms of how do you create projections and estimates and, and be somewhat accurate? You know, it's, it's easier in the past when you look at the patterns. Well, this is kind of a new normal. This is a, this is a foundational year. And so there's a lot of uncertainties. So what we do is we're comparing to, we used to have 100% of EdServe, 100% of media, 100% of special education. So as we run these numbers, I, I see here where we have 77.9%, as I mentioned. But in terms of districts, we've got 12 of our districts that are investing 50 to 75% of those dollars. We've got 22 districts, which is the bulk of our districts, investing in us 75 to 90% of their dollars. Five that are between 90 and 100, and then four that invested more than 100%. So our range right now is about 50% of dollars coming in from one, one district as much as 125%. So that gives you an idea of the range of numbers. And then I've got a list of the districts here. So next steps with that would be to study those districts and just see, is there any patterns there in terms of who's opting into the services and maybe who's saying no? Why are they saying no? And why are some, why are some saying yes? And can we discover some patterns in terms of our response, thinking already head to the following year?
I think, I'm just guessing, I think size of school district has any bearing on that?
That was my first premise, honestly. And again, this is just this morning and when I was, we were scanning them in the different categories that I mentioned. I didn't see any obvious patterns initially. I would say what we've been telling our staff is there's two things that provide us sustainability and really the ability for AAs to thrive. Relationship, relationship, relationship. This is a people business. It's all about people. And then related to that is high quality services. Like everybody in the room, I want to work with people I like, that I trust, that are super competent. I'm willing to spend money there. And also I want to make sure that those things are very high quality. Last night we went to dinner, Cindy and I, with some others and we, we chose a place that was relationship driven and we chose a place that had great food and atmosphere, right? So the same thing in education, our schools want to work with people that they trust, that they see as caring, as people of service. But they also want high quality. So that's the, that's kind of the sweet spot moving forward. So I didn't see any patterns yet, but maybe ask me that next year.
Well, just putting together the budget, I didn't have this information while I was putting together the budget. So I was a little cautious and I don't have any history because this is a whole new world for both AAs and districts. So I was a little conservative on the revenue side and a little more, I have a few more expenditures in than I, than I normally do just because of the situation. So, and we are projecting a deficit for fiscal year 26, but we do have a fund balance that can carry that.
We're going to run about, yeah, and do our reserves. And then in terms, in terms of solvency ratio, which was discussed a few, a few times, we're running around 12%. So 5 million for us is about the right number in order to cover our expenses. But also continue But also continue to commit to finding people and funding people. We did everything we can, we could to retain all of our staff this year. I'm willing to go in the reserves a little bit in order to do that because people are always our most valuable resource. But in this new system, as you heard, they're they're even more valuable because they're hard to find because they're amazing, incredibly highly qualified folks. And so every time you lose that person to, you know, another industry, another state, it jeopardizes your bottom line, your your foundation. And so that's what we're trying to do, all of us, is to maintain staffing and then continue to recruit and retain.
Can you go to the first page?
Questions or comments? I mean, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budgets.
I would move it from last, the Green Hills budget, a second.
Remove by class and second. I'm married to go through the question for Green Hills AEA. Any further questions or discussion? There are none. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. On to Heartland.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for giving us time today. All nine AAs appreciate the opportunity to tell our individual respective stories. My name is Cindy Yelich. I'm the chief administrator at Heartland AEA. I have with me Brian Whalen, our director of business services. Some of you would have known our previous CFO, CFO Kurt Subra. He transitioned to the West Des Moines schools and Brian has stepped in quite wonderfully to leading the business side of the shop. Brian has a long history with Heartland also, so has really deep knowledge of budgeting and our budgeting process. With that, Cassandra, I think you get to take over, right?
Yeah. Reported stakeholder served by the AEA includes over a hundred and forty seven thousand students and over eleven thousand teachers and administrators, including from sixty one districts. Also, I'd highlight four that are being served that are located outside of the AEA, as well as four charter schools and forty seven non-public schools.
Heartland plans to begin a Center of Excellence July one, twenty twenty five, focused on recruitment, retention, onboarding, mentoring and professional learning for AEA special education staff. In addition, they plan to partner with Green Hills to focus on a Center of Excellence for assistive technology supports for learners with disabilities beginning July one, twenty twenty six. Some of the shared and centralized services notable for Heartland include creative services, professional development registrar sharing, cybersecurity support and regionalized technology support.
The AEA did report one change, told that the property located at sixty four forty five Corporate Drive in Johnston. The positive looking to the future quote from the budget includes, "Heartland AEA is in a good financial position to navigate the challenges presented in fiscal year twenty six." Moving to the back page. The AEA budget needs the statutorily required thirty percent reduction in administrative expenditures by July one, twenty twenty six. It is budgeting to reduce those expenditures by thirty point six percent. The AEA budget does not project a negative balance. And so finally, the director's recommendation is to approve the budget as statutorily compliant. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we wanted to highlight just a few things. First of all, as we talked about the districts and schools that we are serving for next year, I wanted to point out that this is actually an increase of fifteen entities for Heartland AEA, the addition of the four districts that are currently served outside Heartland that have worked with their boards and the department to shift their special education services to Heartland AEA. We are adding two additional charter schools and then increasing nine accredited non-public schools. We project over time that that number of accredited non-public schools will continue to grow as there are several non-accredited schools that are starting within the Heartland area. So I think as you see that project forward, you'll see that number continue to grow. The other thing then I wanted to highlight for you is some of the programs and services that Heartland has that are unique. This is on page ten. One of them is the HART therapeutic program that Heartland works with the Wintersett Community School District. And we serve multiple, we serve students from multiple schools across the Heartland area. That is a very specifically designed service for students that are needing additional therapeutic and mental health support and they're able to attend there. We also have been providing some gifted and talented support, not only to Green Hills, but supporting districts as they look at program evaluation support and enhancement of theirs. And then the third example of program that have enhanced Heartland is we have invested heavily with our staff in both special education and former Ed Service areas on implementation science. And what this is really about is supporting schools to make sure that initiatives that they have identified are being implemented with fidelity and fully getting the full impact for they can for student achievement gains as they have identified what their local initiative is. Then as we look at page ten, where you see our office location, our map of services, what we wanted to point out for you is the districts that are joining Heartland for next year are highlighted in gray right now or they're colored in gray. So you can see those districts that are currently to the north of Heartland.
You're joining for specialized for all services or just specialized services?
So House File twenty six twelve statutorily does not require that they identify the AEA for education services and media services because they are able to retain a hundred percent of those funds and purchase services where they think is the best fit. It is only for the for special education services because of the flow of that ninety percent of dollars that they have to have board approval and then work with the department so that those dollars for special education flow to the new AEA. If you would, anybody would like to provide more information on that topic?
That's it, but are they contracting with you for other services?
Oh, are they?
Science special?
Sorry about that. All, when I look at all four of those districts, they have some education services that they and media services they are contracting with Heartland for. It's been actually a really nice partnership. In two of the districts, they had a service from Prairie Lakes that they were interested in retaining. So we are working with them to retain the services in media or Ed Serve that they wanted and then continue to buy other services from us.
Okay, and so if Peyton Sheridan are able to come in because they're connected to Green County, is that?
They actually are, well, I believe actually twenty six twelve, the interpretation has been if your current AEA is contiguous to the new AEA. So in theory, a district in the middle of Prairie Lakes could contract with Heartland. But also, if you look at the very, very tip of Peyton Sheridan, they do connect to Glen Hollston. So if we had the other interpretation that you had to connect, then they would actually make it.
Thank you.
Other questions about the map? All right. I know that it was noted that we did sell one building that is on page twelve, currently was formerly part of the Heartland Facilities Network. I wanted to point out that that was an administration center. And the reason I'm highlighting that is you will see if you, when you work for our budget, we have done everything we can to make the cuts the furthest away from kids that we can. So letting go of administration center, but we still have that facility there for staff that are working directly with kids. And you see, if you look at where our other buildings and facilities are located, they are either to provide families with access to hearing booths so that our staff are closest to the distance we serve. And that is also when you look at our administrative cuts. Our first frame was, what can we do? What can we reduce for kids? A very similar thinking that we use in K twelve settings. As was pointed out, we are meeting the statutory requirement for our thirty percent reduction in administrative costs. If you look on page seventeen, you can see that the actual number of FTE we've reduced in this area is forty three percent. As I said earlier, Brian has assumed additional responsibilities. And so we had a reduction in business services. Our facilities person now is being shared with a local district. And so somebody internally has picked up those responsibilities that he is not covering. You see that we have made reductions in regional administration. And then we are projecting a reduction in leadership in media services for next year. And we will be sharing our chief academic officer with Grantwood AEA as she assumes the responsibilities of their chief administrator upon John Spears' retirement. Any questions about admin reductions? All right, centralized services, which are highlighted beginning on page twenty two. I did want to just point out again that we are trying to capitalize on two things. One is what we do that is administratively maybe more efficient. And so you see that as was also shared with Green Hills, we do the printing and production for Green Hill schools. So that happens at Heartland, which has allowed them to free up resources at Green Hills. But the other one I wanted to highlight for you has been actually a great longstanding partnership with the Department of Education and all nine AAs, and that is the Once a Month Curriculum Network. So Dr. Susie Mead currently plans that agenda in conjunction with Tina Whalert and others from the department team. And we are able then to do a statewide curriculum network. And then each AEA after the statewide curriculum network can then meet with their respective curriculum directors to do anything that needs to be tailored specifically to their AEA. I think the thing I'm most excited to talk to you about is our Center of Excellence. As you, Dr. Feinhardt, say, we are looking at developing a Center of Excellence for recruitment, retention, onboarding and mentoring of special education staff. And one of the things that's very unique to Heartland AEA is we have far and away the greatest percentage of school psychologists in the state. And there's very specific requirements around how you intern, how school psychologists complete their internship, how you mentor them. And so we were uniquely positioned to provide that supposedly increased recruitment of school psychology across the state. But as we were in conversations with the Department of Education, it became clear that that focus actually applied to the onboarding retention of special education students or staff across the AEA system. We have a very well-developed two-year onboarding experience that helps special education staff become aware of not only specific things around in their practice, in their discipline, but also have invested in letters training for our special education staff so that they are working in schools with that same information and that same knowledge that the department has so worked so hard to drive into the school system. So as we look at then implementing across the state, we'll be tapping into those learning progressions, that two-year onboarding plan, and then looking at how we can use that to support retention and then out onboarding. We believe for recruitment purposes, we are going to have to expand our scope well outside the state and what, see what we can do to attract special education staff, not only from surrounding states, but school psychology, special education consultants, occupational, physical therapists from across the Midwest. With that, I will let Brian make any comments he would like to on the budget specifically. And then we can entertain any questions. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, I'm going to have that one thing. The other thing I meant to mention is Heartland does have a bit of a different story around staffing for next year. As you can see, we are reducing thirty two special or thirty six special education staffing. Staff members for next year, there's, there are two very specific reasons that Heartland has a bit of a different picture than many of our AEA colleagues. One, when House File twenty six twelve was passed last year, there was a longstanding formula previously that took the deappropriation that the legislature approves at the end of the session. And they used figures from two thousand and twelve. And that was how they calculated what percent of that deappropriation each AEA was responsible for. What they did was they changed that so that is now calculated on current student enrollment. If you think about the growth of student population in Heartland, that meant that we had to quickly adjust to take, absorb a much larger portion of that. The other thing is that Heartland for many years had prioritized special education staffing and services to schools. And it was permissible to use education services and media funding to support special education. And Heartland had made the decision many years ago to start to do that. And we were supporting special education with about three million dollars from education and media services. So obviously, now that those dollars do not come to the AEA, we had to back out that three million. And then we had to back out the bigger proportion of the deappropriation. And then we have the ten percent of the special education dollars that districts are able to retain to expend on their own priorities. So in order to budget for those three things, you see that we've reduced staff in special education. Brian, any comments you'd like to make about the budget?
I would just point out that similar to the other AAs, we have about a twenty two percent reduction in our revenues when you compare back to fiscal twenty four. And it just so happens that it's about a thirteen million dollar reduction this year, another thirteen million dollar reduction next year. When you look at our administrative costs, similar to the other AAs, we do generate some revenues. So we have some revenues coming from our IT staff. We also have some revenues from our creative services, print shop. But down, bottom line, we'll be reducing from about seventeen point six million down to about twenty two point one million. So it's going to be a reduction of about five point four million in our administrative costs.
And I think those were, you said we were reducing from seventeen to twenty two, but we're reducing.
Seventeen to twelve point two. Did I say twenty two?
You did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was like, well, that was way better news than I thought we had, Brian.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Otherwise, open it up to questions?
Briefly, cybersecurity services. Is that a hot topic or is that, I don't know, was it Des Moines Public got hit and a couple other school districts got hit recently is? I mean, what capabilities do you have, I guess, I don't know?
Yeah, so Heartland, over the course of several years, has worked on a cybersecurity tool package that includes everything from phishing testing, penetration testing, how you develop a plan for if you have an attack. So it is a comprehensive package. And really, as we've worked with experts in the field, it is about a school adopting a comprehensive package. It isn't really sufficient to say, well, we're going to do phishing emails or we're going to do penetration testing. It is something that is hot topic with schools in that they know the more we do online, the more data we have online, we need to keep those secure. It is expensive. And it's expensive whether it's you're trying to build your own program and whether you're working with individual vendors, where you're working with a comprehensive set of tools that Heartland provides. But it is something that there is interest in. And I think schools are trying to figure out what's the level of security they need to keep student data secure.
Do you know of any other AAs that provide that service?
So this is actually something that through the four tech quadrants that you heard about in another presentation, we are able to provide across the state. We have some districts from the Grantwood area who've said they just want to contract with Heartland directly. We have some of the other AAs who were in the cybersecurity business prior to House File twenty six twelve, and they continue to provide that level of support.
Thank you.
Explain a little bit about the tech quadrants and how, I mean, is it just like everyone contracts with each other and different? I mean, or how's it divided up and?
Right. So a year ago, as we started thinking about efficiencies, but also hearing from that legislative push that we needed to provide a consistent level of service across the state, it was an area that had really grown up differently in AAs depending upon who you had for in-house expertise. So you had one AEA that had done a lot of work in cybersecurity. We support a business software package that other AAs don't. You have another AEA that was actually doing onsite technician so you could do hardware repair. Another AEA was providing network support. And so we said, that really isn't consistent across the state. So we formed four quadrants. We have, sorry, Northwest is paired with Prairie Lakes, Green Hills is paired with Heartland, Mississippi Bend, Great Prairie, and Grantwood are paired, and then Keystone and Central Rivers are paired. And so the first step of this was to get consistent services across the quadrants and access those resources. So instead of Heartland trying to replicate, we want somebody who can manage network administration. We could tap into the expertise that Green Hills had in that area. Then the long-term plan is that there would be a statewide system of all the services. Right now, the way we're handling it is kind of, as you described, contracting with each other if there's a gap. But as we move forward, we think it will be more efficient to have one statewide support system. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And then how do you, do you, does each quadrant like hire IT specialists? Or would it be like a statewide IT specialist in all four quadrants or?
So right now, each quadrant hires their tech specialist. And it depends on what the service is, if it's a network administration, in-house tech support. The other thing that drives this is that you are more, it's more easily to access those staff in the metropolitan areas. So I was formerly the chief at Great Prairie AEA. It was really difficult for us to hire tech support we could send out to schools. But once we partnered with Grantwood, they were able to hire from the Iowa City Cedar Rapids area and then deploy. So that is one of the other drivers in the quadrants.
Very interesting. Love to hear how that's going in the next year or two.
Anything else we can answer for you today?
Other questions for her? Mary Nannell, take a motion.
I move a twizzle.
It's been moved by. It rolls the budget.
Second.
Second by Cindy. Any further discussion? Mary Nannell, those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. She's carried. Congratulations.
Thank you so much for your thoughts today.
Yeah.
And I think you get a prize. Most of the time you're on a board, you only have to deal with one budget, but you get to.
Okay.
We have a piece time.
I think it all over.
Oh, again.
Are you throwing anything?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Sure. You met me earlier. So Stan, again, Keystone and Central Rivers, this is Sharon. Just like with Jennifer, she is really the brains of the operation, so she'll answer the hard questions.
No pressure. Thank you so much. Keystone AEA reports many stakeholders served, including over thirty-one thousand students, twenty-eight hundred teachers, and twenty-one districts, and of course, our twenty-five non-public schools.
By July one, twenty twenty-five, Keystone will be partnering with Central Rivers AEA to begin the Early Access Center of Excellence. Between fiscal year twenty-five to fiscal year twenty-six, they are reporting an increase of four point five five special education FTE. We've already talked about some of the shared staff between Central Rivers and Keystone. Some other notable shared services, particularly in special ed, include the Assistive Technology Services, the Achieve Services, the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Database Support, and the Special Education Nurse Services.
Yeah. There were no owned or leased buildings or land reported different from what was reported in fiscal year twenty-five. The positive look to the future, as noted from their budget report and request, included. Starting in FY twenty-five, we entered into sharing agreements with Central Rivers AEA to share the chief administrator position, as well as the administrator of special education and the administrator of educational services positions. Moving to the back part of the page. The AEA budget meets the statutorily required thirty percent reduction in administrative expenditures by July one, twenty twenty-six. And this is planned to meet at thirty-five point two percent. Additionally, the AEA budget does not project a negative balance showing a four million dollar balance. Finally, the director's recommendation is to approve the budget as statutorily compliant. Steve Frankins.
Thank you. Good overview by the department again. One thing that I would indicate may change in the future is the number of charter schools that we serve. We're starting to, I believe, the Hope Charter School that is coming up onboard in Dubuque and some others will begin to receive services. So we'll see some, some changes there. I'll jump into the programs if there's no questions about who we serve. So you'll see on page four, Keystone is really active in shared positions. We serve a lot of small rural districts who, either based on size and budget or location, would struggle to have the expertise in some of those areas. So school-based special education directors and facilitators, it's a shared position between us and a school district. It's a great advantage, we believe, to the district, not only financially because they're able to attain those sharing dollars, but also they get very highly qualified, well-educated and continually educated person to be their special education or facilitator. Same with curriculum directors, so school social workers. We do, there were questions earlier about IT. We do have a long-term history of hosting applications for districts who maybe don't have their own infrastructure to do that so that a small district, and some of our districts are very small, have access to that level of expertise as well as managing their, their IT services. And then the one nuance is there is an Iowa Association, IA AEA, which is the statewide agency that oversees the AEA's as far as some of those joint expenditures. And so we are the fiscal agent for that as well as for Keystone. On the map, on page five, you'll notice that there are three stars. Those are our own facilities. El Cator is our, our central office, and then we have an office in Decatur, sorry, Decorah and Dubuque. And then you'll see the, the, the dots in New Hampton and Old Wine. The philosophy at Keystone for years has been to be contiguous to all school districts. And so those are mostly landing spots for staff. Those aren't meeting centers or places where generally teachers or administrators would come to. But we wanted to always be close to the districts that we serve or have our folks located there. I will tell you that we have sought appraisals of our own facilities as our unspent balance is a concern in the future, healthy for next year, but a concern in the future. We will potentially look at selling some of our facilities to offset some of our concerns in our, in our unspent balance. And we've had some interest from agencies, from folks who have reached out to us about those facilities. So just know that that map is, has lots of blue on it because we want to be close to the districts we serve, but also some of those stars may in fact become circles in the future as we rent space. And those rental spaces, I believe, other than the Delhi facility, are in schools. So it's a classroom that we convert into workspace for, for teachers. So that tends to work fairly well for our folks as well. An organizational chart, again, not to beat a dead horse, you'll notice there's a lot of shared positions on there. Keystone, geographically, is similar size to many of the other AEA's, but population-wise, you get northeast Iowa, and our small school districts are fairly small. And so that's, I think, what made some sense as to why we would share position to a Central River. So between the two now, though, that's about a fourth of the state from Dubuque to up to North Iowa School District in the, in the extreme northwest for us, or middle of the state. You'll notice also on page nine, change in or fluctuation in positions. You'll notice increase in special education positions, either support or consultants. Other areas, you'll see reductions or minor reductions. Question came up earlier too about staffing and hiring. We do have some open positions that we would hire an audiologist. If anybody knows an audiologist, I'll give them my information. We'd be happy to hire them. So some of those really nuanced, difficult positions. But other than that, we were very fortunate at Keystone to maintain our special education staff. Statewide, you know, people want, we're unsure this time last year. And so some special ed folks moved on to districts. At Keystone, by and large, we were successful in maintaining our staff. Administrative staff, we've covered that. Budget sharing. Highlights, anything that I missed on that end?
I guess the shared positions is kind of the highlight of, of how we've reduced our administrative staff expenditures with those sharing agreements. And we have some other sources of revenue that offset some of the other administrative expenses with the Iowa Association of Area Education Agencies fiscal support that we provide. And we also have some achieved data personnel that have been providing services to Central Rivers. And that includes some office assistants that maybe would have been normally doing just work at Keystone, but we've been able to do that. So that's kind of that and really trying to trim down as much as we can to, to reach the thirty percent reduction there. We've, we'll dip into our fund balance a little bit if projections are as we think they are, but we feel pretty comfortable with having the fund balance to, to reach into this year as we learn what kind of services schools are going to purchase from us and what the revenue and expenditures will be.
We're also a little unique in, not to, with our media services. Many of our school districts will continue with our media services and that sort of hit and mess around the state. But again, more of our smaller rural schools, they don't have to maintain the same robust library if we have it. And we're, they're able to, you know, also we can transport those materials there on a as-needed basis. So that's something that's been, will be strong for us in northeast Iowa into the future. The Center for Excellence is the same as what I spoke about. And it's been mentioned before, the early access and it's, yeah, because of shared physicians, sort of expertise, yeah, or leadership there. We'll work to bring that to fruition under the, you know, the banner of both AEA's. And then as time permits and opportunities arise, we will look for a second Center of Excellence so that both have sort of standalone or two shared, so that we're sort of pulling our weight, if you will. Any questions?
I have one question. And I asked this other times, but despite the cuts, do you believe that this budget allows you to meet the needs of the area?
I believe we have some areas that we will be stretched thin. I will meet the, the needs. It will be at the same level or quality, quantity is that has been historically, probably not, but we'll work back into, into that scenario. Also, keeping an eye on, and I know, Brian, in the Dubuque area, the Holy Family System as they begin to potentially look at special education students and needing additional services, how will we meet those needs? And so it's not only the change in our staff, which I had mentioned earlier, we feel pretty good about, but it is sort of the expansion and how will we meet those, those demands? Because again, we want all students to have access to everything they need to maximize their educational opportunities, regardless of what school district they go to. So something we're, we're committed to doing, but how, we'll always continue to have to adjust and figure out how financially we can afford the positions that we need, but also, and probably even more difficult these days, making sure the positions are available. Or if you look at our map, for us to recruit, hire, retain folks in Dubuque, Western Dubuque, West Delaware, that's relatively solid. It's harder to push those resources north. Of course, there's a circle around Decorah too that, that tends to be pretty solid. But in many of those smaller districts, it is sort of a, a grow your own, if you will. That's why we're excited about the work that Cindy and Heartland will be doing around, you know, recruiting, retention, but also growing that stream. Because in some of the smaller communities, it really is kind of a investing in somebody in the hopes that they come back in, in four or six years and establish residency in the home, in their home area.
Thank you for that. Stan, do you see further sharing arrangements in, in your future? Maybe along the lines of what you were just describing or that your board is, you know, considering reaching out? Or are you being reached out to by other entities? I know you combine, you already described one where you share administration. Are there further sharing things up to and including combining with other AEA's?
So that's always a conversation. A question I get asked a lot is, is you see the, the Central Rivers on the Keystone staff. I get, when I have that conversation with superintendents, often they prefer us because I think they feel they have a stronger voice in the smaller or in the current AEA system. And so to, for the administrative team to have multiple boards, I think that's something that we'll have to figure out. I, I think that, that's working okay. I would say it's working well. I wouldn't stop short of saying it's working great. Because I do think that the board's connection to the districts, the superintendent's connection to each other when we have monthly superintendent's meetings, I do think it's worthwhile to have one at Keystone and one at Central Rivers, a little bit smaller, better connections between those, those districts. We bring in experts from state, other places. So I don't know. And there is, the process would run through the department and through the director. So any conversations around consolidations would, would work its way through the department as well as the, the local AEA boards. So that's a really long way of saying I'm not really sure, Brian. Certainly part of the conversation.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And obviously, what you've presented today is excellent and the direction you're going is, is great. And, and I think the, this part of the state, it's, is grateful for the service that you're providing.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Keystone?
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the Keystone budget as presented.
Moved by Brian. Second by Cass. Any further discussion? Mary Nannell, those in favor of the motion, who's indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. She's carried. Join us this afternoon or not?
I think I will. Thank you all.
Aye.
We are at time for lunch, or even past time for lunch. Got twelve eighteen. Let's make it a thirty-minute break.
It's like December.
Agenda.
I have nothing to report. I don't even need to report.
I'm sharing a letter that was in my folder with you about science standards. Other point of business is that we have seven applications for next year's student rep. And we need to narrow that down to three. People would like to volunteer to help screen those and make recommendations. Mary, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, we did that last week, didn't we?
Yes.
So we don't have anything to do next week going forward. It's official next week. Official Friday. You'll just send those out then. Done.
Did the, yes, I did volunteer as well.
I didn't know if you were being volunteered.
I was, but I did. Has the application period closed?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, just send them out.
It's closed. Jeremy.
Okay.
Jeremy.
How many, how many applications?
There were seven. The thing that I sent out to you was an email from. The thing that I sent out to you was an email from NASD about Central States region. We're trying to get this as an idea of how many people will be attending, so if you think.
We should do that with you now. We messed up on a few earlier.
I don't remember in your email if there was a link or once you responded and said, can you get a link?
I think the, all the email that I sent to you included the blank.
Okay.
Anyway, take a look at that. Other board reports.
The only thing I will share from Fiji that is education related is.
Off the falls.
We had a pretty cool learning experience in that a lot of, well, every village on the island has its own school. And so as we were coming back from one of our events, we were on a boat on the, out on the ocean. And we were passed by a boat full of children. And we smiled and waved and they were smiling and waving. And, and we kind of cruised by and our guide turned back and said, Fiji and school bus. The kids were returning from school.
Oh, my goodness.
So it was pretty amazing. Once we got off our boat, the kids were all outside playing. And it was kind of a gut check in that the island that we were on only installed electricity in October of 2024. So everything they have is generator, generator ran. And so after the kids got off the Fiji and school bus, they were just all outside playing and they had a game that they were playing, but we couldn't quite figure it out. But just kind of took a minute to think about that. And the last time saw kids outside playing and just genuinely engaged and having good fun like that and not even thinking about.
They weren't on their phones.
The internet. No, nobody had, nobody had a phone.
What language do they speak to?
What's that?
What language do they speak?
English, but Fiji and as well, but primarily.
I attended the community college advisory committee and Cass did a wonderful job facilitating the discussion and conversation. So. I don't have anything to report.
Michael, you in? Ryan, any board report for us?
No, sir.
All right. Hey, Jeremy. Or Deborah, did you get the three names of the people? Mary. Cass. Yep. Pardon?
Do you have the mascot tears? Thanks, guys.
Expect you to wear your mascot your hats next meeting.
Done.
You're on order with the.
All right, we will resume with item 11 on our board agenda. And that is with the budget from Mississippi Bend. Welcome.
I'm Jennifer Coombs Johnson again. Nice to see you all. I'm Business Manager with Mississippi Bend.
And Shane Williams, happy to be here, Chief Administrator at Mississippi Bend. Thank you.
I'll begin with the summary of the budget request report. The reported stakeholder served by Mississippi Bend includes 50,000 students, 3,500 teachers, 22 districts, including one charter school, as well as 20 non-public schools.
For the special education highlights, the Center of Excellence, beginning July 1, 2026, focuses on leadership for closing the achievement gap for learners with disabilities. The budget report shows an increase of 5.2 Special Education FTE. Shared and centralized services of note include data dashboard services and IT services.
There were no reported changes to owned or leased land and buildings since the fiscal year 25 budget. Positive quote looking forward that was pulled from the report was Mississippi Bend AEA is in a good financial position to navigate the challenges presented in FY '26. Turning to the back page, the AEA budget meets the statutorily required 30% reduction in administrative expenditures by July 1, 2026. They're budgeting for 32.9% reduction. The AEA budget does not project a negative balance with an $11 million balance projected. And finally, the director's recommendation is to approve the budget as statutorily compliant.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to present today. We know that you've heard a lot of reports already, we're number six, so we'll try not to be too redundant and repetitive. However, if there's something that we do overlook or that you'd like to put information on, please interject a question at any point. So I'm just going to do a quick walkthrough of our report, starting on page three. Our geographic area covers six counties in Eastern Iowa, 21 school districts, 21 non-publics, as Cassandra had mentioned. I think one thing that's of note on page three is the percentage of our, of our staff who are embedded in school districts, almost 90% of our, of our staff are actually in schools, serving students and serving the adults every single day, as well as serving parents as well. Flipping to the next page, under the program section, I do want to highlight, we included AEA Special Education Core Services. Our primary function is to serve support and related services as well as child find, as well as closing the achievement gap for learners with disabilities. We take that responsibility serious and it's a responsibility that we hold as paramount. In fact, this year with our team, we've done a number of reading. One thing we read was Good to Great, which is a seminal book, just an organizational improvement. And our head thought concept is being world-class and closing the achievement gap. We want to be the go-to resource in Eastern Iowa that school districts look to, to serve students with disabilities and to help them close the achievement gap. Down at the bottom, some unique services that are maybe differentiated for Mississippi Bend. We do a comprehensive program evaluation of special programming. And we've done this in a number of school districts. And the reason why that's important is oftentimes school districts maybe have a gap in their systems, but they don't know the root cause of those. So we go in, we partner with the superintendent, special ed director, classroom director, principals. We do classroom walkthroughs. We do a thorough analysis of their current reality with respect to student data, outcome data, LRE data, identification rate, a number of those really important indicators of how healthy their system is. We also do a data dig on their student outcomes as well to see how they're performing relative to their same age peers. We've done a special education program review or audit this year in two of our school districts. We have a number of others that are asking for that as well. And at the end of that, what the school district receives is a comprehensive report, typically about 20 to 25 pages with, again, a thorough analysis of what their current reality is. But probably, and this is led primarily by our Director of District Supports, Kim Hoffman. They, they end up with a, a series of next steps or some recommendations. And then we will sit down with the school district and partner with them on a structured implementation plan to address whatever those gaps are that surfaced in the context of that thorough program review. We're really proud of that. And it's a service that, that we think has a lot of merit and could potentially be scaled, not just across our region, but also across the state. Another piece that I would highlight on that list is Leading for Impact. And I'll, I'll address this a little bit later when we touch on our Center of Excellence. But another thing that I think is very unique about Mississippi Bend is the relationships we have with our school district leaders. And so each year we have a series customized specifically for school district and school building leaders called Leading for Impact. This year we have 130 principals and other school leaders that come to Mississippi Bend approximately one time per month to learn and to grow together, find ways to actualize the leadership standards. This year our focus is on how leaders can develop actionable feedback to teachers and others that they serve in the district. So we have a speaker who's actually comes from model schools. And then he has some next steps for people. They're expected, expected to execute those, those next steps in between. And it's, it's again, it's a highly sought after, it's incredibly supported by our superintendents, and that's why we have such a great turnout. And then maybe two other highlights on that page for as a couple of unique services that, that we support school districts with our homeschool assistance programming. So we're actually the provider for homeschool assistance programming for a number of our school districts. So it kind of takes that management burden off of a, a district leader and, and we're able to maybe leverage some economies of scale because we have services that can serve a lot of our districts, whether they're larger. And then the other piece too is driver education services. We manage that for most of our school districts. And again, that's a service that's statutorily required for school districts to provide, oftentimes a private provider. We'll do that, otherwise school districts have to, again, have to assume that responsibility. They look to us to be that provider and so that their, their students are, have access to high-quality driver's education services. So again, another way that, that we're able to manage that and, and leverage some interdependencies that we have with our school districts. And again, that's very highly sought after from our, from our superintendents as well. Flipping through the rest of it, a lot of this is kind of redundant. Angelisa noted at the beginning, we're seeking to increase our special education staff. So we did have, we did lose a few more staff members last year than what participated. And so we're trying to backfill some of those positions to make sure that our, our child find services remain robust and that we're able to meet the, not only meet, but also exceed the requirement. So you saw the 5.4 increase and we're also adding an additional four social workers. So right now our plan is to add at a minimum 9.4 special education staff members. And so we have that budgeted in our budget as well. Continuing to go over to page 10 is Cassandra had referenced. We're meeting our statutory requirement of the 30%. In addition to that, to maybe just spotlight this on page 10, we actually have a 38.8% reduction in FTE or FTE in our administrative, our administrators. Page 11, again, you can see that, again, administrative expenditures includes not just administrators, that's, that's a piece of it. That's not all inclusive. There's a number of other administrative functions that are performed, both programmatically as well as in, in human capital. And we're meeting that. And then overall on page 13, you can see the aggregated decrease in those expenditures. It's 32.9%.
Shane, are you part-time or shared or have other duties?
I'm full-time.
Yeah, .78.
That was, last year we had a, our chief retired mid-year and then we did a short-term sharing agreement with Grant Wood. So that's why that fraction is kind of strange. Yeah, it was a temporary stopgap measure.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Page 15, centralized services. You can see where we've, we have a few different AEA's. I know the IT quadrant has already been referenced, so I, I won't unpack that. But you can see that we're, we're not only benefiting from that relationship, that we found some other opportunities for some cross-agency collaboration as well. And then the Centers of Excellence, I think this is an important one. And this is an area that Mississippi Bend is not only passionate about, but also takes very seriously. So when, when Kim and I, who's my main programmatic counterpart, when we started collaborating on this, you know, we started thinking like, what problem are we trying to solve? That's anytime you're deploying or initiating a new program, I think that should be your first and most fundamental question is if we're going to start something new, what problem are we trying to solve? And ultimately the problem we're trying to solve at Mississippi Bend, and I think across the state is how do we close achievement gaps for all learners? And so then we kind of take a step back, that's our ultimate outcome or that's our benchmark of success, that's our, our lagging indicator. What do we need to build toward that so that we're hitting the milestones? And we have a, a strong programmatic deployment that is going to lead us with a high degree of probability toward that, that intended outcome. And so what we've asked ourselves is what, not only what problem are we trying to solve, but then how do we solve that problem with excellence and consistency? To me, that's, that's foundational to what a Center of Excellence is. It's a center, which means there's some kind of consistency and it's excellence. So how do you do that with world-class quality? So that's kind of the basis of, of where we started our internal planning when it comes to our Center of Excellence and leadership for closing the achievement gap for learners with disabilities. And so I referenced earlier, our, our focus on leading for impact and how we have a lot of commitment and buy-in from our districts. So we started this journey on recognizing and understanding how critical the school leader is to performance outcomes of the school four years ago. So we're in our, our fifth year of leading for impact. And the reason is when we looked at our schools, what we, what we knew from our own experience as school leaders, building leaders, district, district leaders is we've never seen the performance of a school outpace the performance of the leader. It just doesn't happen. You're not going to find a highly effective school that doesn't have a highly effective leader. That's what drove us with some intentionality toward pursuing leading for impact. If we want to improve the performance of schools, you have to have a strong leader at the helm of that school, building the structures, the supports, the expectations, the accountability mechanism. So that's what really got us into this whole leading for impact and those pieces. And since then, we've, we followed through with a, with a high degree of fidelity and quality on that as well. And that's our why, because the, the performance of the school will never surpass the performance. That's our why, that's why we do leading for impact. That's a big part of our why behind our Center of Excellence and why we think that the leader is such an integral part of that equation. So we believe that we're well-positioned to be able to design and ultimately deploy and be a leader across the state in a Center of Excellence. And so a Center of Excellence in the AEA system is, it's, much of it is internal facing. So for us to be the go-to resource for our colleagues across the state, when they think about how do we affect better student outcomes? How do we close achievement gaps across the state? And how do we start with leaders to make sure there's commitment and they have the capacity to lead? That's the model that we're developing, that then we can train, model and support our other AEA counterparts so that then they can go and do the public facing side, which is getting into schools, working side by side, embedding themselves in schools so that they can change outcomes for kids. Because there's a number of very precise leadership behaviors that when deployed and implemented every single day, do have a strong association with better outcomes for kids. And sometimes we get into this kind of nebulous world where just be a better instructional leader, that doesn't help you. What they need are precise and implementable actions that they can use in their buildings every single day. But again, are highly associated with better student outcomes. So that's, that's what we're developing is a, a rigorous and evidence-based model for school leadership that we know is going to change outcomes for kids. That's our, that's our Center of Excellence. It's early days for us, we're a, a year from implementation. But what we're doing in the meantime, in addition to the conceptual framework and designing that is, we actually have two pilots going on right now in school districts. So we're reality testing some of what our, our theory of action is, and we're getting some empirical validation. We will also learn what doesn't work. I think that's also important is that, that we learn from that. But ultimately our, our goal is to have a leadership-driven framework that integrates the leadership behaviors that a principal needs to be, principal and others, teacher leaders, need to be implementing every single day. What are the evidence-based practices that teachers need to deploy at the classroom level to change outcomes for individual students and also for class, whole classes? And then having clear vectors of accountability so that all in the system know that they're aligned around closing the achievement gap, that they're hyper-focused. So you'll hear from Prairie Lakes, one of those concrete instantiations of evidence-based practices is explicit instruction. So that's the intersection across the system so that we're not operating in isolation. So we're looking at it from a macro perspective, like what are the important leadership behaviors that are going to lead with higher guarantees of success at the building level? And then what are those classroom practices? So you're kind of going from top down and bottom up. And we think that there's a really strong nexus there that will lead to better outcomes for kids. So ultimately that's the, that's the genesis and the why behind our Center of Leadership.
Have you spent time with Simon Sinek then?
Yeah, 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 read his book and his literature. And you know, there's some really interesting research about that. If you ask teachers how important it is to know the rationale for change, and, and we've done surveys on teachers, 92% say it's either extremely important or very important that they know what the rationale for change is before they implement, whether that's an instructional strategy or support for behavior or any of those things. And if you include how moderate importance, it actually goes up to 99%. And it's indicative of, if teachers and others don't know why they're doing something, they have much lower propensity to actually implement that thing. So yeah, Simon Sinek is, again, he's done some really, really good work in that realm, the change of behavior. Yeah. Any other questions on that?
You had mentioned your administrative team is staying good to great.
Yeah. That was our, that was our book study initially. And then there's two additional pieces that Jim Collins wrote, they're monographs. So they're basically additional chapters. There's one for the social sectors, which basically takes a lot of his work, because a lot of it's business oriented. And sometimes people have difficulty trans, like transitioning that into the social sector. So he wrote that, that's also a powerful driver. So that's a next step. Many also has one specifically on actualizing some of the other pieces in the original work.
Good, thank you.
Questions? Okay, on the next page, you can just see what our, our financials are. If there's any questions or if you want to share anything, I imagine.
Yeah, I'll just mention on the fund balance, again, we have some committed dollars as well for infrastructure, building, maintenance and things like that. We do a facilities committee that goes through all of our proposed type of maintenance on our buildings or what have you to kind of prioritize those program or those projects. So we have that $3 million committed in those funds for those kind of purposes. So we have that $3 million committed in those funds for those kind of purposes. We had the same, I guess, challenges with budgeting for this next year, as you've heard through all of the other AEA's presentations as far as trying to project what will be billable dollars to project. And so we think we've come up with a very conservative number to build into our budget, not knowing exactly how this next year will be. And again, this is a learning year for this next year. And then we'll have more information and data to project on for future years. So that's what you'll see in our revenues. And as far as our expenditures go to, Shane did mention that we have, we were trying to recruit some additional special ed staff. So that's built into this budget as well. Hopefully we'll be able to be successful on those positions.
I don't know if I have any, anything else to add. Just appreciate the opportunity to, to share what our current reality is and what our next steps are and maybe what some of our challenges are moving forward, but also some of our successes and what we're excited about.
Questions for Jennifer? How was your, how are your duties going as far as trying to manage? Two different entities.
Yeah, it can be challenging at times. Yes, I, I won't, I won't deny that. But it's going all right. Yeah. It's, I've shared both with Central Rivers and Mississippi Bend. My primary office is in Bettendorf, so I spend most of my time there. But again, I do a lot of zooming with the staff over at Central Rivers. And like I said earlier, having good support staff or staff members in my departments at both agencies really helps be successful in sharing this position. So I have to.
Well, there are some efficiencies from the standpoint is that you just have to learn about the new, the new laws once and the new rules once.
Exactly. Yes, yes, it is the same items for both agencies, just times two for the most part, you know, so reporting and such.
Questions for Mississippi Bend? Are your contract negotiations settled for next year?
We're settled. 2.6 total package. We are fortunate that we had a 0% insurance increase, so there's always the management. But the benefit there is obviously the pie goes on the wages instead of carving that up for insurance.
Director's benefits stayed pretty much the same. You can just replicate that. We'll take a motion.
I would move approval. Second.
Then move by Cass, second by Brooke to approve the budget request for Mississippi Bend. Further discussion? Very none. Who's in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Follow the same sign. Congratulations.
Thank you. Question, Cassandra, and as we transition here.
Yes.
I mean, obviously this, as we were hearing the presentations and, or maybe directors know, I'm not sure which. But obviously they're making projections. It's all kind of a new process and everything else. How are you and your department working with them when unexpected revenue shortfalls or expenditures come into play and they fall outside of the parameters that were set? I mean, I'm sure you have some back and forth, but are there some timeline milestones that we should be aware of in regards to that? Or when they have to come back and, and let us know those kinds of things?
Sure, that's a great question, actually. And so as far as the next time they'll come before you as a board. So with this proposed FY26, they will actually bring you a reestimated FY26 budget next spring, such as they've done at each of the presentations today, you'll see the FY25 reestimated budgets.
Yeah.
So that would be the time between then and now. We're here for any technical assistance that they may want us to provide. My team actually meets regularly three times a year with the AEA business managers as a group. And at that time, they and we both will bring items for discussion, ways for us to collaborate and connect. We've already, as a collaborative moment, spent some time on the AEA budget report and request template to see what additional items, even from a logistical standpoint, hey, can you put it in Google Docs next year instead of a Word doc? You know, even simple things like that, that we've been very open to those changes too. So we're really looking forward to those collaborative moments. I'll highlight that we also meet with our, we hold a finance roundtable three times a year, which includes many of the outer associations like IASBO, ISP, ISEA, SFS. That also includes AEA representation as well as superintendents and, and school business officials. And it's important there where we collaborate. Some of the things that we talk about, that we've talked about regularly at each of the meetings for the past year and a half has been the implementation of House File 2612. What do they need? What technical assistance can we provide? Making sure that the FAQs and other documents that we have on our House File 2612 implementation page are up to date. One of the things that we recently talked about was about what contract is going to be used for those services for that 90% dollars across the state? And how can we help support the AEA is getting those, what we're here determining those automatic payments? So that when the school districts get that money 10 times per year, that it's automatically going to AEA's. And so I think further conversation around what that automatic process looks like is definitely a place we can provide technical support. Director, is there anything else you would like to add to that?
And that's great context, thank you, around the direct partnership between the department and the, the lead financial official in the AEA. I think the other broader piece of context is that we've been meeting weekly with all chiefs, the Department of Education leadership teams and myself, Dr. Elder, Dr. Klein, Dr. Feinhardt, General Counsel Mays, Tina Whalert, Division Administrator Whalert, to continue, continue the conversation about questions around implementation. In addition to those SBO specific meetings, Dr. Feinhardt meets regularly with all AEA special education leaders. Division Administrator Whalert meets regularly with all AEA education service leaders. So there are many established and near constant channels of communication. Okay, yeah, thank you. I just, as I was thinking about it, I'm like, you know, we, you do your best to make these assumptions and projections, but we all know things change and, and whether or not you're able to find the staff, you know, to prove all those things. So thank you. Yep.
I had a question. I had a question on that too, because I mean, I think we keep, we keep on hearing that they're hiring special education specialists. So if they're unable to fill those, then the department help kind of, I mean, because it seems like they're all in need of that. So I don't know how easy it is. They said it was very easy to fill those, but if all AEA's are trying to hire those, whether they're going to be able to fill all of them or not, the department be able to help kind of with if they are, if there's a gap there or anything like that?
I think having a strong special education teacher and professional services pipeline is something that the entire state of Iowa, all school districts also grapple with as well as the entire nation. It's, it's identified as a critical strategy area, I believe, in almost every state. So the, the conversation around investing in educator recruitment and educator preparation and training and educator retention is critically important. Obviously, the teacher and par-registered apprenticeship program, which produces a high proportion of special education teachers comparatively to the, to the broader pipeline is a critical part of that conversation. You heard earlier about the heartland potential investment in a pipeline center of excellence in all special education support professional pipeline areas. So it is a continuous conversation across the entire state and across the entire nation. Okay. Would you add anything to that, Angela Lisa?
I think the other piece that I would add is we're in conversations about, between the department and the AEA special education leaders around how we implement things effectively, but also efficiently. So how we're making good choices about what we're doing to use our time wisely. So for instance, when we're completing evaluations and documenting those things, we're not duplicating efforts, repeating ourselves in reports, like how do we streamline those efforts? So we're just making the most of the time in the staff we have available.
Is there, I'm just thinking about the recruitment and retention and I'm, is there any connection that could be made to workforce? I'm just wondering if there's a, an emphasis that could be placed on. I know we have the para educator, but is there a CTE or the, you know, something, something more robust we could put around special education to incentivize teachers in training to.
Core-based learning programs.
Consider the special education credential.
I think we, we do have a number of CTE programs specific to the education pipeline, but I think certainly continuing to target those efforts on special education is great feedback.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's more than one shortage area.
Uh huh, yeah.
Well, let's move along. Welcome, Dan.
Hey, John, thanks.
You guys can do whatever.
So this part of the state was fine. I mean, I got to Des Moines Tuesday nights and it's, you know, a little thunderstorm and rainy, but back home was a different story. So Julie Klein is on Zoom. She's our business manager. Because we got slammed with snow and even this morning, I-29 was still blocked with car crashes. So they had opened it and then that didn't last very long and it was closed again. Fingers crossed that by the time I get there this afternoon, it's all melted and gone away. But that's why Julie's not here in person, because it, it was just not feasible for her to get out and come down and join us. I'm Dan Cox, Chief Administrator. It's my seventh year at Northwest AEA.
Thank you, Chief Cox. We'll begin the budget summary for Northwest AEA. The stakeholders reported as served include over 45,000 teachers and almost, excuse me, 45,000 students. A lot of teachers. And almost 3,000 teachers, including 35 districts and 32 non-public schools.
Northwest AEA plans to implement a center of excellence for instruction for learners with significant cognitive disabilities beginning July 1, 2026. They have reported no variance in special education FTE. Some shared and centralized services of note include staff that they are sharing, like ELL coordinators, instructional tech consultants and professional learning coordinator.
There was one reported change of owned and leased land or buildings from the FY25 budget report and that included the location at 2020 Highway 3 bypass in Cherokee, Iowa. Positive looking toward the future quote we pulled from this budget report and request was we expect to launch a center of excellence at Northwest AEA, no later than July 1, 2026. The focus will be instruction for learners with significant cognitive disabilities. Moving to the backs of the summary page, the AEA budget meets the statutorily required 30% reduction in administrative expenditures by July 1, 2026, and that amount planned to be reduced is 30.5%. The AEA budget does not project a negative balance and they are projecting a $4.4 million positive balance. And finally, the director's recommendation is to approve the budget as statutorily compliant. Chief Cox.
All right, thank you. On the cover page, I wanted to draw your attention to the graphic at the bottom. So, you know, we all experienced 2612 differently. And at Northwest AEA, we always have a theme for our year. So our opening year theme was, this is a mission possible. This is Northwest AEA 2.0. So I just want to start with that as the framework around how we have tackled the 2425 school year. This is presentation number eight, so I'm going to be a little more concise. I'm going to jump right to page seven and point out something that is unique to Northwest among the nine AEA's. We have a program that sends students down to the Johnson Space Center in Texas. It's a partnership with NASA that we've had for 25 years. We got lucky. We had an employee a quarter of a century ago who had a fascination with space, who was able to get a partnership with the Johnson Space Center. And we've been sending kids for 25 years and it's just an amazing opportunity for young people to get a real hands-on science experience at a place like that center. And so we're really proud of that. And I skip ahead to page 13. You'll notice that we are projecting to lose 24.5 staff by this, by July 1 of 2025. None in special education. So we do have a number of openings and certainly appreciate the conversation because we're having that same conversation of how do we find specifically speech language pathologists, because we've been hit hard with that. And they are really rare to locate, but our intent is that we will have replaced all of our special ed openings and stay at 187.5 staff in that arena. It's the Ed Services and Media on page 15 where we'll see the biggest decline. Educational Services, sadly, we are going to have to lose 17 of our highly valued staff. Wrote about that there. We have three that will be in a generalist position covering primarily math, literacy, student engagement and mentoring. Those are the four big things on the gen ed side. We'll have two people in addition to two in special ed who take care of behavior, another huge area. And then we are hoping to have one still in the regional planning partnership Perkins coordination role. On media, we will lose 5.5 staff. We're not sure yet because there are still many superintendents who are saying until SSA is decided, I can't give you a final answer. So we have a longstanding partnership with your next presentation, Prairie Lakes. Between the two of us, we're still sorting out what type of staffing can we have to continue our shared media center that we have? And all that goes within that. I will note at the bottom of page 15, we've had a science kit, the FOSS Science Kit service for probably 20 years. That will be discontinued at the end of this year due to a decrease in demand. So it's no longer cost-effective for us to do that and we can't operate it at a loss. So that will come to an end. Page 16, you'll note that we have reduced 34.74% FTE. And there are seven major positions that will no longer exist by the time we get to July 1. And those roles, especially the first three have been divided up and added to the existing duties of the Chief Administrator, our Executive Director of HR Engagements and our Region Directors. I want to skip ahead to 19 and talk about centralized services. So as I mentioned, for 20 years, we've had a really strong partnership. And this goes back to the days of Area Education Agency 3, 4, 5 and 12. Four small AEA's who said, came together and did a shared opportunity here. It would be amazing for all of our students rather than trying to do our own thing. So hats off to them for being so forward-thinking so many years ago. We ran, excuse me, we ran multi-site locations for a number of years. Last year, we moved everything in the physical library to Sioux City. And, excuse me, that was, yeah, last year. And we also sent creative services over to Pocahontas. So everything that's creative service for the two AEA's Prairie Lakes has. And then we operate the, the physical library and that has worked well. The science kits are with us also. And it's just been a strong partnership and we really appreciate that opportunity to work so closely with Prairie Lakes on it. We are also in the same quadrant for tech. And so it's been a nice longstanding partnership. And then we also have shared opportunities across other AEA's. And because many of our hearing booths are on the border, there are parents. So this may not qualify as a centralized service, but it's just a reality that if you live close to a hearing booth that's not in our agency, you're just going to drive. Like in Sibley, you're going to drive dispenser for a hearing test. You're not going to drive all the way to Sioux Center because it wouldn't make any sense and then vice versa. So that's a, another positive in our corner of the state. Our center of excellence, as was mentioned, is instruction for learners with significant cognitive disabilities, specifically looking, and again, this is, you know, 16 months down the road. But we want to be the ones to really help the other eight AEA's work on enhancing coaching capacity, especially in, especially the design instruction for students with significant cognitive disabilities, providing fidelity of implementation of resources for instructional practices for those students with significant disabilities and enhancing coaching capacity to close achievement gaps specifically for students on alternative assessment. I'm going to jump to page 24 and then I will have Julie kind of talk through some of the financials. So on the opportunities and challenges section, we have a really big opportunity with our non-publics. We're the second, we have the second most non-publics in the state of Iowa, so just under 6,000 students and growing. And they have been really pleased with AEA services and the ability. they have been really pleased with AEA services and the ability to access them without having to go through their local public school. So the opportunity is, uh, for them potentially in 25, 26, uh, to continue doing that with us. And, you know, they, they love our Ed serve, they love the media. And so we're still, um, hopeful that that will come through. Those service plans we have not done, uh, until there is, uh, a little bit more, uh, definition around how that will work. And then, uh, they're ready to go with that. Two of the challenges that I wanted to highlight, timing, because there is no specific time in 2612 where our schools have to commit. And so the ones that are saying, we, we love the AEA, but we can't commit until SSA is set, puts us in more of a bind because we have to obviously follow the March 1st process. And then April 30th is coming quick, uh, as far as staffing decisions. Uh, and so that is a challenge that we're all navigating, all nine of us. And one that specifically, uh, we have run into, uh, exhibits A, B, and C is the, uh, sprouting up of mini AEA's. So we had six rural districts that said, uh, and I'm paraphrasing, but it, it looks like things might be iffy for the AEA. So if we just band together, we can start to pick the people that we want right now. And they posted and they were successful. Uh, the staff members that we thought would still be with us, shared across all 35 districts, uh, went with the job security of this group six. So that's a challenge that we're going to have to continue to navigate is how to, um, balance their ability to do what they want with their dollars because that is, uh, their choice versus our intent to try to serve as many kids as we can.
Dan, just a follow-up question on that.
Yeah.
All right. When I read through your narrative, I appreciated your insights, Eric, and is this to your area or seeing this in other areas too?
No. So, uh, back in Northern Iowa, there's another group that has been assembling and talking about how to do that. Um, I've heard about a, another group of, uh, schools in a different part of the state as well. So I, I think this is going to become more common. Uh, and I haven't heard the update on where that, that I would call the AEA 2 group, because that was the section of the state. I don't know where they're at as far as, uh, solidifying their plans. Uh, but I just know that this wasn't unique to us. It was something that was sprouting up, uh, in different pockets of Iowa.
Thank you for.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thanks for the question. Julie, do you want to walk through the numbers?
Yes, I can do that. I'd start on page 22 and just looking, um, at the total revenues. I know the other SBOs spoke to this as well. Um, we did try to budget reasonably and realistically for our revenues. And with all of the changes this year, um, it was a challenge for us. We used a 0% SSA, um, for budgeting those revenues and we did not have any, um, we didn't budget anything from the state for education services or media. We did have commitments from our schools for education services. At the time, we budgeted a 500,000. Um, we hope to get significantly more, but that will be, um, you know, for the future. And looking at, so, but we did have a $7.5 million decrease in revenues from fiscal year 24. Um, similarly, we had to decrease, um, our expenses by the same amount in order to balance our budget. So we did that as well. If you noticed then on the following page, um, we do have a positive fund balance of 4.4 million. And as the other SBOs mentioned, you know, we need this fund balance, especially, um, during those late summer months when we don't receive, uh, funds from the state and, uh, still need to pay, um, our payroll and our other expenses. Um, that's when the funds become tight for us and we have some challenges there. Um, but you know, we've tried to take a realistic and conservative approach to the budget and, um, you know, just anticipate moving forward and maintaining a positive fund balance going forward. Are there any questions?
I'd like to have a, just a comment. Seems like you have a through your agreement for your staff renewal.
Yeah. So we're in our third year of our negotiated settlement. It'll be either 2% or SSA, whichever is higher. So contracts are on hold until we figure out which of those two it's going to be.
Is that inclusive of insurance too, or?
No. Uh, so our, our first, uh, I don't know why I'm smiling because it was absolutely awful news. Our first renewal was 19.92%. After we, uh, inhaled again, like whoa, uh, we have, we have had lots of discussions, uh, with that provider. Uh, we got a quote from a, another one. And then we actually got a third one as well, which is highly unusual because, uh, our costs are high enough that most companies have said, we're not even going to give you a bid. Uh, so we're entertaining about six different versions because of course that first company then came back and said, oh wait, maybe we could do it for this number. And then if you carve out spouses, maybe it'd be this number. And so, uh, today, I don't know if I'll join while I'm driving home or just let the insurance advisory, uh, continue to meet on this without me, but they're trying to wrestle with what makes the most sense. And do you leave the provider you've had for an unknown, uh, at a lesser rate? Or do you just, you know, eat more of the cost? So it's, it's been quite the nightmare. Yeah.
Can be that. Just to note for other board members that while you're in a recruiting and trying to attract people to your schools, your benefits are huge.
Oh, absolutely.
Even outside school districts, the benefits for every, every business and organization.
Other questions?
Questions or comments for Northwest? Did I hear that you might be leaving, Dan?
I am departing on June 30th. That is true.
Retirement or a new opportunity?
Uh, pursuing new opportunities.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
It wasn't because of the insurance increase.
No, it wasn't. Yeah, it's, it's a bittersweet. I'm a lifelong island and. Yeah.
Okay. Right. Entertaining motion?
I would approve.
And I would second. Thank you, Cass.
Cass, I can buy Cindy to approve a budget request from Northwest AEA. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. It's carried. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Keep digging out, Julie.
Great travels.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Certainly not least. Dan, number two.
A snowmobile drive or maybe a flight.
I was here last night. Yeah. So Michelle is not. So yes.
Like I said, Dan, number two, Dan Mart, Prairie Lakes AEA. This is my second year as chief at that AEA. Um, Michelle Dowd is, lives in Fort Dodge, which we had a little weather during, on the, along that Highway 20 strip today. Your districts are closed. So Michelle chose not to brave the ice and zoom in with us today.
Good choice.
Smart girl.
Thank you for allowing me to do that. I appreciate it.
You bet.
We'll begin with the AEA's budget summary. The stakeholders reported as served include over 28,000 students, over 2,500 teachers and administrators, 32 districts, and 13 non-public schools.
Prairie Lakes plans to begin a center of excellence for explicit instruction practices for learners with disabilities beginning January 1, 2026. The budget report includes a decrease of 24.35 special education FTE. Shared and centralized services of note includes creative services, excuse me, regionalized technology services, and staff sharing of instructional technology consultant and a mathematics consultant.
There was one change in the owned or leased land and buildings from that fiscal year 25 report, and that included a location at 1403 North Elm Street in Jefferson, Iowa. The positive quote pulled from the report included Prairie Lakes remains in a strong financial position to navigate FY 26 effectively. And moving to the back page, the AEA budget meets the statutorily required 30% reduction in administrative expenditures by July 1, 2026 at 33.4%. Next, the AEA budget does not project a negative balance and reflects a positive $6.9 million balance. And finally, the director's recommending an approval of the budget as statutorily compliant. Chief Mark?
Thank you. So one thing I'll highlight from Dr. Yelich's presentation, four of the districts in Prairie Lakes along our southern border there will be coming to Heartland next year for their special education services. So that's reflected, I think on page one, that we'll be serving 32 districts instead of 36 next year. Um, part of that is not a bad thing as far as staffing because as you saw, the number of staff that Prairie Lakes lost during the, during the transition was quite significant. So that is actually will help both of us out with Dr. Yelich, um, having to, um, terminate some employees because of overstaffing. We're understaffed, so that part will balance out. But with that, I'm still short, so I would love that opportunity to work with the department to get more special ed staff. If I have any requests from my district, the number one request I have is can you share a special ed teacher with us? Well, in order to do that, I'd have to steal from somebody to hire them to give to you. I mean, it's just, it is very, very unique in the more rural we get and Prairie Lakes being extremely rural, as you can see on the map, Fort Dodge being our largest community. Rural has even a, a harder situation filling positions. Our districts are struggling into special education and English language services. So those are the two positions I get requested from our superintendents. Can you help us with these two positions? And if I could help you, I'm in the same boat. I'm short, just like you are. So we're all in that together, which I'll talk about a little bit. Um, any questions about the, that part of the change with districts? Again, some of them will continue, uh, their services, especially in the area of technology with us and to have special ed with Heartland. So it does give the districts a choice. Uh, it is ironic. I did serve on the committee that merged those two AEA's and I remember asking one district in particular, how come you weren't going to Heartland? Because you're at the very southern tip. So it was discussed when that merger happened a long time ago, even that. So, um, Dr. Klein highlighted that we will be closing the Jefferson office then. Again, since we will not be serving Green County, it is obvious then that we should close that office. So there's one that will come off of ours. Dr. Cox highlighted, um, a few things that, um, sharing between the two has gone on for a, a, a fairly long time. And like he said, last year, we were, combined the media, physical media resources, Sioux City. This year's our first year with creative services being in, in Pocahontas and that has gone very well. We have a van that runs three times a week to Sioux City that takes the orders back and forth, and then they distribute from there. And then same thing with the media resources comes our way and then we distribute. So that has worked very well with us. Uh, we continue to, um, talk through other, what else can we do to help create efficiencies? And not only that, but then we look at what are some things that we could get potentially from another AEA that we don't have, um, so that our, all students have that same access. Capital assets, you see that we own three, three buildings. The rest of them are leased positions. Staffing change, that's a big one for us. We're down quite a few staff, um, because from the change when, when House File 2612, um, came into play. Some of our people, I was amazed how quickly our private industry gobbled up our people, our OTs, our BTs, how many people went into the medical field and got grabbed out of that hearing. I couldn't believe how quickly they were snatched up. So that, from there, that was a good chunk of that. So we again are looking, uh, on the special ed side, even though we lost a lot, it was an opportunity for us to reflect on efficiency. Were we doing some of those nice things, but not necessarily required things? So we had to do really, uh, gut check on, on what we're doing. And yes, it was great and our districts love that. But when we're down to a certain number, we really have to be efficient with our time and our services. And then also what does code require us to do? So we had to do a big deep, or dive into that to make sure we were following that along. Um, as was pointed out on the sheet, we did meet the 30% requirement there. Any questions on that and staffing? Michelle, do you want to add anything on staffing?
Um, I would just say some of our staff. Well, first thing I think I would point out is that, uh, 24.35% FTE reduction, um, that isn't because we are reducing staff. That is because staff are choosing to, um, either resign or retire. And the demographics of our staff is, um, is aging. And so some of these folks who are leaving us, it, it would be happening regardless of what our, our landscape is that we're living in and working in currently. So, um, just want to point out that wasn't reductions that we were making. Those are just simply resignations and retirements, um, naturally occurring. We are still trying to recruit, um, have several positions opened and our regional administrators are working really hard and, and our staff as well as to, um, try to help us find people and get good quality people to hire. It's just, as we all know, it's difficult. Um, everyone's looking and there's just only so many people to go around, but, um, we continue to, um, work hard to backfill some of those positions that we have lost.
On page 16 highlights centralized services. I've talked a, a little bit about a couple of them. Dan, before me highlighted some, I think as a, the chief, what I appreciate is the cooperation among my neighborhood, my neighboring chiefs, and even those that aren't even as close of, hey, I, I do have a consultant that can help here. This, the sharing opportunities going between the AEA's and among the AEA's has been extremely helpful for, for our agency. Like Michelle talked about, you know, the challenges and I'm, for our agency being as rural as we are, our districts are struggling, we struggle. I mean, we, we, uh, we mirror exactly where they're struggling as well in that area of special education. Uh, another area that seems to be, um, uh, developing even more since I have been there is the area of behaviors, student behavior. In fact, this year I've accompanied two different districts and different site visits to therapeutic classrooms, both here in Heartland to look at what can we be doing? How can we help you? Um, what, what specifically are you looking for as far as a behavior program for kiddos? And with any districts, not trying to direct, create something separate. Um, again, some great opportunity, great conversations, always ball is done, but how do we pay for it? And that's where they're stuck is how do we, the startup costs for starting a behavior program are significant. Um, there's opportunities like a therapeutic grant, but that isn't always but enough. And concern about special ed deficit, if they start a program up and then, and again, that in case of property taxes. So just that vicious cycle of how do we do what we need to do without really gouging our taxpayers? Um, some of the strengths, I would say that since I have been there, what I've seen come out, it's just the creativity between districts and the AEA superintendent say, hey, Dan, I know you want to steal my person. They're really good, but can we maybe share the person instead and sort of you, you know? So it's those kinds of conversations. How can we partner with quality people instead of either one of us stealing? Because it did happen that a lot of our good quality ed service people are now working in districts. The districts were smart. I would have done the same thing as superintendent. That's a good one. I'm taking her. You know, I want it for myself or I'll share with my neighbor just to make sure that we don't lose her or him. So we did lose some of our ed serve in media, especially our, uh, literacy consultants, uh, became school improvement folks for our, our local districts and rightfully so. But that's a little bit short in that regard. We do offer teacher librarian services, taken advantage of, I think, at least eight of our districts, um, that are short in there. Technology is a big one for Prairie Lakes. Um, our individual's been there a long time. He has great relationships with our districts. Uh, this last year, you know, the districts, the superintendent, John, you'll remember this, that technology person panicking August 1st when 200 laptops show up and they need to have them ready by the 24. technology person panicking August first, when two hundred laptops show up and they need to have them ready by the twenty third and teachers get out and principals get out. Well, he offered the service this year for our tech people to go out and assist districts in getting those set up so they're ready to go. That was a hit. That was something we had thought of before he had thought of. So trying to be creative in that world besides the network support and the laptop repair, computer repair. You know, he's very creative in thinking of how can we help our districts? And the last thing I want to comment is, is I probably feel very blessed with the person that is serving as my regional special ed director out of the Department of Ed. Prior year, she was my regional director for me. Now she works for the department, but we have a great partnership. And because of that partnership and she and I have a strong relationship, we're able to really then take that next step in our center of excellence, which we're looking at as explicit instruction. The reason we're there is she, I and our special ed director sat down and said, what do we need to do in our agency to close that achievement gap? What do we need to do? I had an idea after serving as superintendent for nineteen years, what I had been seeing, but I wanted to hear their view too. What we tend to forget is our special ed kiddos are general at first. So how do we get quality instruction for all kiddos? And then what do we need to take, what do we need to put in place for our special ed kiddo? So we really took that lens. We came up with their at their recommendation of what do we do with high leverage practice work out of this book from the Council of Educational Children? And you know, as they talked to me, like, here are some strategies that we can be working with our special ed teachers on to improve their craft. And we backed up and I said, well, you know, where did we get with this? Well, the concern, and it was mine as well, the number of conditional or provisional licensure in the special ed world is high. A lot of our teachers are being are moved in there to fill the position. They're not fully licensed, so no fault, that's that's reality. But how do we help them? So that's where we decided to go down that route. The four regional administrators, our special ed director and our ed service director, myself, we all sat down. We talked through with Molly, our R S D and what can we do, R S E D, excuse me. And we came up with with using this approach for the high leverage practices with for special ed as let's see what we can do in the classroom. Let's see how we can change some practices and that. And we were just going to do volunteers, a pilot project. We were, I was hoping if we can get twenty participants and that would be a teacher and a coach. So that's that's the other part I liked about this. It's not only just a teacher, but they also have to have a coach with them from their district. I was hoping we could get twenty people. We're at forty nine, forty nine. And we didn't, I mean, we didn't advertise. We just said to a couple of superintendents who we knew had some newbies and people recently moved into the special ed row, would you be interested? And absolutely. It is an hour and fifteen minutes or hour and a half on Wednesday. So it wasn't, I gotta get a sub for this teacher. We really tried to accommodate the school needs. So our pilot program is what we're hoping then to turn into our center of excellence. Shane Williams talked about the leadership part, and this is actually getting into the classroom part. As a former curriculum person, I love this because this isn't just good for special ed. This is good for all. So how can we take that and apply it elsewhere too? With that, Michelle, anything you want to highlight on numbers?
Sure, I can do a brief highlight. Again, you've heard some of the same things coming out of the other folks' presentations as well. I will just highlight our budget again, like everyone else is conservative as far as our revenues and expenditures. From since fiscal year twenty twenty four, our revenues are down six point seven million. That's a twenty four percent fluctuation. And our expenditures are also down to kind of offset that at six point five million, a twenty three percent reduction. Again, those things are kind of balancing themselves out as we find our right size as far as personnel and and funding to be able to support that personnel. We are right now anticipating a deficit ending fund or not an ending fund balance, but just a loss of around seven hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty six. And the bulk of that is really just the media and the ed services. Services, again, not knowing for sure of the commitments that our districts are going to make in wanting media and educational services. We've been really conservative in how much revenue we've built into our budget. But obviously, we still have staff and so those expenditures will need to be assumed and paid and will tap into our fund balance to help offset those costs. So and as far as our fund balance at the, I believe we have it projected right now to end around six point nine million. Like the other A A's, you know, those that fund balances are to help us get through the July and August months when until the funding comes in. Also, you know, as you may or may not know, school districts have a management fund. I think Barb tapped in on that where they can pay for their property or their property and casualty and work comp insurances. And they also have a pebble fund which helps with their facility costs as far as if they need a new roof or a new H vac system. The A A system obviously doesn't have those types of funds built in. So our fund balance would also have to come into play if things like that would occur over the over the next few years. We are looking at our facilities as time goes on. We have four remaining leases that all come due twenty twenty eight. And as those renew, we and Dan and I and and our facility folks are considering not renewing leases. And then assuming as our staff is also kind of downsizing, that we should be able to accommodate everybody in the three, three locations that we own. And those locations are owned. We don't have any debt or anything like that on those buildings. So just, yeah, kind of weighing all of that in the budget picture of trying to cut, cut costs and and put that money back into people and especially the people who are closest to the kids doing the work. So. Do you have any questions or?
I'll just comment on one of those own facilities is well aged though, right, Michelle? It's well aged. So we're going to have to do something with it.
If you watch the Brady Bunch, that that level of decor is is our office in Fort Dodge. We still have the wood grain paneling and no orange shed carpet, but yeah. So we may, we may need to make some changes to that building as we consolidate the other locations and and bring more staff into it. But it's a good, solid building.
One last thing I'll just highlight that I that I didn't prior, we do have a behavior program in conjunction with the Spencer School District. It's been in place for eleven years. Time for it to be reviewed and thankfully that Dr. Fineout has said I can use my R S E D to help as part of that. So another part of the partnership with the department as we look at what is a quality program, you know, I'm sure it was great at that time. Now we need to take a look. Are we still meeting needs? Things have changed. Another example, the partnership that we have going there.
And I know you did ask the others about negotiations and and Dan and I just received our initial proposal from our licensed association and the board now has given a response, but we are not settled yet. So we are still in the process of working on that.
So what were the numbers for the initial proposal and response?
They came in at three point seven four and we have responded back at three point one five, I believe it ended up being. So we'll just wait for their response back to that and hopefully we'll be able to get that finished up soon. We want to get our contracts out as quick as possible to to reassure staff that they do have a position and they're going to receive a contract. So we want to move as quickly as we can to get them comfortable.
April fifteenth, your deadline for contracts?
Thirty eighth. April thirtieth?
Thirty.
Yep.
Questions for Prairie Lakes? No questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Prairie Lakes budget as presented. A second.
Variance cast to approve the Prairie Lakes budget as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Questions carried. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Please, the words are clear for you.
Justice for the shift to our final agenda item. And while we transition, I just want to again note the good and incredibly fast decision by this practice has included passing back all budgets three times in fewer than ten or eleven days. This is obviously done much faster than required by code to ensure that the State Board of Education had sufficient time to review the budgets before the meeting. And I just again want to recognize the mutual hard and good work and partnership between the D E and A E A team. So thank you, team and our A E A colleagues.
When you were given that timeline at the beginning, I was like, oh, yeah, literally turning it around in a day or two and at a Saturday. Somatic changes. Yeah.
Prestif was a Sunday, but Saturday's good.
He's not speaking for all of us.
Well, let's see what's next on our.
Uncontinued.
Yes. Do you need some water? I'm good. I have some. Thank you. I actually feel a lot better than it sounds. I'm on the healing path, so we're good. Do you want me to begin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The School Budget Review Committee met to hold regular hearings on March eleventh, twenty twenty five. The committee proceedings began with committee informational items. First reviewed was the F Y twenty six preliminary cash reserve levy limits. The final levy reserve limits are always presented then again in the fall. Preliminarily, there were one hundred fifty nine districts that are able to levy for cash and one hundred sixty six not able to levy. The levy amount is approximately three hundred forty four million. The committee also reviewed the portion of the one point O state aid funding that will be restricted for tag or gifted and talented purposes, which based on a zero percent S S A or state supplemental aid amount for F Y twenty six would be seventy three dollars. In addition, a local match of twenty four dollars would also be required to fund programs. The committee also received an update on the unspent authorized balance or the U A B per pupil. We went into depth with this from the winter hearing, so I won't say much except to say the general short differences between the deciles for both the U A B and the regular program balances remain the same with not much more than a thousand dollars between the deciles between the fourth and ninth or the U A B per pupil and the third and ninth deciles for the regular program per pupil. And again, that regular program in comparison to the U A B is that U A B subtracting out categorical balances. So just regular program. And then finally, looking at that bottom table, page two of the variance average, you can see that those balances went up during the pandemic and have now started to come kind of spin back down. And you're seeing the average variance between the U A B per pupil and the regular U A B regular amount per pupil to also generally decrease, which shows that those categorical funds now are also being spent down. During the January eighth School Budget Review Committee hearing, the department was requested to hold a conversation with the Finance Roundtable when it next convenes. We prepared a memo for the School Budget Review Committee to highlight, summarize that conversation with the Finance Roundtable. And I think the best way for me to describe to you is to just read that short one and a half page memo. During the January eighth, twenty twenty five School Budget Review Committee hearing, member Lee Tac requested the department discuss the idea of spending authority thresholds with the department's School Finance Advisory Group, the Finance Roundtable. The Finance Roundtable is an invited focus group that meets approximately three times per year to discuss issues related to school finance. Members are invited by the department's Bureau of School Business Operations. And membership includes representatives from the Department of Education, the Department of Management, the Legislative Services Agencies, the State Auditor's Office, the Iowa Association of School Business Officials, the Iowa Association of School Boards, School Administrators of Iowa, Iowa School Finance and Information Services, Iowa State Education Association, and of course, school districts and A A's, including superintendents and school business officials. The department facilitated the discussion then on January twenty second, during the January twenty second meeting of the Finance Roundtable. The department began the discussion with a presentation of the following materials to ensure that all members participating in the conversation are starting from that same foundation. Iowa Code Section two fifty seven thirty, which is the establishment of the School Budget Review Committee. Iowa Code Section two fifty seven thirty one, which is the duties of the School Budget Review Committee. Iowa Administrative Code Rule two eighty nine. This is the duties and operational procedures of the S B R C who have their own rule writing authority. The unspent authorized budget report or known as the U A B report that is published with from the Department of Management, which reflected a statewide spending authority balance of two point one billion dollars. We also shared a historical progression. The last eight years, I remember are part of the S B R C first as its liaison and then now as just an advisor, now that we have a new liaison. And over the course of those eight years, we have worked each year to build something different to provide them with additional context around that spending authority. So from that information, that's now just regularly included in the S B R C materials. We provided some of those materials and examples to the to the Finance Roundtable. So they understood the context that was already surrounded those conversations of U A B. So that includes those per pupil, per pupil decile ranks for U A B, the per pupil decile ranks for regular program as well as individual districts and on a statewide perspective, including some of those, we look at enrollment categories. Enrollment categories by fifty, 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 fifty up to the last twenty five or by actual amounts. So three under three hundred, three hundred to six hundred, six hundred to nine hundred and such, to see if trends exist between those. We also looked at, we shared a sample S B R C recommendations by district of a spending authority and context where we try to provide very specific context around a specific dollar amount being requested. So if there is a hundred dollars being requested of a modified supplemental amount or spending authority, that we show what that is on a per pupil basis. So if there's a hundred dollar request, you have a hundred dollar for a hundred, a hundred students and they have a hundred dollar request. We show that that is a one dollar impact per pupil. We also provide the historical progression of that and historical look at that. So currently, we're look, the look back period is fiscal year seventeen to fiscal year twenty four for those U A B per pupil and regular pupil balances. Just a little bit about the engagement summary of the Finance Roundtable. The members of the Finance Roundtable engage in a robust conversation regarding the spending authority within that local context, including additional factors that may inform spending authority levels and the idea of a statewide threshold, including potential flexibilities and monitoring. The idea of the context is so important that we have to spend an extreme amount of time and necessarily so because there are so many different factors that actually create or position that local context to be really important. And so the Roundtable felt strongly that some of those contexts should be included in this memo. I'll read some of those. The school districts range in enrollment size, enrollment makeup, including tuition in, tuition out, open enrollment and special population served. The enrollment trends, are they increasing in enrollment, decreasing in enrollment or generally static? The geographic size, looking at even transportation costs per pupil can range greatly from under a hundred dollars a student to over fourteen hundred dollars a student, depending on the geographic size and the pupil density within that geography. The basis for economies of scale. Programming choices, grade level served, salary schedules, technology commitments, the local levy types they choose to have, as well as the levels of those local levies. the local levy types they choose to have, as well as the levels of those local levies, and a variety of miscellaneous incomes that are available to each of the districts, and also local coding practices from which fund or funding source they choose to pay for different costs that have flexibilities. And of course, above all and supporting all, the local school board philosophy, governing, spending, and conservation levels. There were also a number of related conversations, and some of those included, is there a minimum amount of information that should be required to be presented to a local school board each meeting to ensure purposeful and transparent fiscal management? How will the long time mindset of soliciting authority whenever it's possible be addressed? How will taxpayer expectations regarding management of local tax rates be affected by establishing a threshold? Two more. How could a threshold be responsive to changes in spending authority levels? And finally, should there be different thresholds for different sizes of districts? Final thoughts. The idea of a threshold is not unwelcome. While there was discussion around a range of 30 to 50%, different calculation factors such as would you include expenditures incurred versus the unspent balance? Would you look at new authority versus the unspent balance? And other methodologies were not discussed, so that number range wouldn't apply to anything. It was really just underdeveloped. Four final thoughts if a threshold is set. The Roundtable encouraged conversation with the following. Do not require an immediate spend down to the level of a threshold. Allow for a period of implementation to allow any local changes to be purposeful. Allow flexibility for local contexts to be considered in extreme situations. And finally, consider proactive monitoring triggers. Other questions about this memo?
So what's next?
That's a great question. So when we presented this information to the SBRC last week, they talked exactly about that too. And so our next steps, we have two planned. One, when we next meet with the Finance Roundtable, yeah, this spring, we're going to preview what the SBRC asked us to present to them at the work session in October, to have kind of a work session with Roundtable to inform those conversations. Then in October, we are going to bring forward some potentials and really some conversations. And then I think also importantly, some what ifs. So if this type of threshold were to be set, what would it look like? How many districts would it impact and how would it impact those to the extreme on each ends? And then other types of considerations in there. So we're excited for the work and we're excited to dig in. This spending authority and context has been a living, breathing creature for all of my time with the SBRC. I know that it's something that districts are really looking to keep that local context as close to the vest as possible. And so being able to help balance both of those needs and conversations, I think is really an important piece and roles that the department can play.
So are you looking at a threshold per pupil or a threshold based on per pupil and other factors or how, I mean?
I think that's a really great question. And I think, I think actually, you know, it's almost which comes first, you know, which piece of this comes first. Actually, looking at how that calculation would actually be conducted, I think is one really important piece. Because how that, how that calculation is completed will actually produce different challenges than with implementation. And so I think we need to look at what are the possible calculations? And then what would be the implementation processes, opportunities, challenges, potential flexibilities, monitoring versus another type of calculation that would have, you know, potentially a different type of impact? And I think, you know, really also identifying one of the purposes of the SBRC really is to be able to look at those extreme, unusual, unforeseen circumstances and to be able to be nimble and to respond to those. And so I think balancing their ability to continue to do that with also balancing, if they wish, you know, some type of like generally recognized either principle or practice. I'll also say that they noted that, you know, there is, they do have role writing authority, so they could, if they set a threshold, actually make, put that into, into rule and code. However, they also discussed, or is this just procedural? That we say, you know, here's the threshold. And if you're below that threshold and you're making a request to the SBRC, you provide us with our normally requested exhibits. However, if you're above that threshold, maybe you provide us with more information. Maybe we dig deeper into why those balances exist. So they talked about potentials like that too, so not setting something hard, which would force a district who has traditionally been conservative to have to, you know, either spend down those additional levels or request negative authority from the SBRC, which is a possible request too, so that they don't have to levy those taxes to get the cash to spend that authority. So there's, there's many possibilities, and I think that's why it'll continue to be a very robust conversations for.
So you get into discussions about uncertainty and budgeting?
We, at the Roundtable, we did. And especially, you know, they also, the districts also, you know, on the other side of the AEAs, they also have this money that they're trying to figure out what is the best way for us to spend it. And so the Ed Media Services, they had 60% of those funds come into their budgets in FY25. Next year, that's going to be 100% of this educational media services dollars. So they're making decisions too on, do I, do I contract back with the AEA to get those services? Or do we form those mini AEAs? Or is it something completely different that we're going to do? Do I need to put that to my teacher salaries to be able to afford them? Because those funds can be used for any general purpose, any general fund purpose. And then also, of course, the 90% of the special education support services funds that they're required to spend with the AEAs, but then that 10% retained, we receive a lot of questions on what can I spend that money on? And so we've continued to try to provide technical assistance and support around that to help give them, you know, we're not telling them how to spend it, but we are trying to identify all of the different flexibilities they have on how to spend it, so that they can make those best choices locally.
Well, uncertainty when you have to certify your budget and you don't know what the SSA is.
That's not a new challenge though.
Yeah, right. Regular challenge.
Well, it's.
Been a regular challenge.
Well, I'm sure you'll provide more information when it becomes available.
Oh, thank you. Great work.
It's exciting work.
I am excited about that. As dumb as that sounds for authority spending from a board perspective, as a member of a local school board, that was just always a point of contention during the budgeting process. So thank you for doing that.
Yes, thank you.
I have a tangent question that we might just put a pin in, but hearing the term mini AEA, is that regulated somewhere or as these mini AEAs are popping up, how is that being managed?
So I'm going to invite Thomas to jump in as well, but I think what was being referred to are voluntary agreements or contracts between school districts, which have always occurred. But, but Thomas, please go ahead and jump in.
I was going to say the same thing, a co-op between districts, operational sharing, sharing of intergovernmental functions under Chapter 208E, so doing what they could ordinarily, using the existing authorities that they have under administrative law and school finance law, but just doing it in fun to serve functions that used to have been served by the AEA.
Okay.
Was this unexpected, unanticipated in some way? I don't know who answers that, but.
I think it's a pattern that has always existed. And with greater district oversight and direction of funds, it is something that that region had have served.
Yeah. Yeah. And there's, as you said, there's nothing that prohibits that because they're, it's their money, the district's money to spend in the best, in the way they see supports their needs most, so.
It was just an interesting term.
I agree.
And this, I mean, this has ranged from contracts and shared services to whole grade sharing agreements.
Yeah.
So the spectrum of that is broad.
Yeah. Thank you.
DE, next?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Two more informational items. So the next was actually regarding the AEA committed and assigned fund balances of which you heard all of that detailed today. So I won't go into those that exist, but I will tell you the inspiration for this informational item. At the January 8th, 2025 SBRC hearing, in the winter regularly, the SBRC hears the special education support services balances of AEAs. If those balances exceed 10%, then they have the conversation about whether or not to revert those balances. During the conversation to review those balances this year, they remarked upon the committed and assigned balances and questioned the purpose for those. And so they asked us to solicit that information from each of the AEAs, which we did. The AEAs were responsive, provided the required information, so that information was simply reported back to the SBRC. The final informational item was just the next steps for the SBRC regarding its rules 289. Still pursuant to the Executive Order 10, so we are operating about a year ahead of schedule on that and under Thomas's guidance and leadership. We then, for the second committee item, the SBRC took action to notice rules 289. Number three, the special education administrative costs. So one of the FAQs we're getting right now is, so if I want to spend that 10% retained special education dollars that I'm getting as new money in FY26, do I have to come to the SBRC for all of it? And so the answer is no. So already in, in code or in rule, we allow for special situations only where they can actually use weighted, so that instructional special education dollar to pay for administrative costs. And there are only two extreme situations. And that's when those special, special education schools, the facilities exist, either run by the department, run by the district or run by a private facility. And so they can continue to make that request to the SBRC and then bill that back for, toward those weighted dollars, which would then potentially affect a special education deficit. However, beginning in FY26, if a district locally wanted to have their own special education administration, they could actually pay for those costs directly from that 10% retained dollars. That is one of the things that we've heard from districts, that they're very excited about having the flexibility to be able to do that. Item number four, and this is a standing annual request. Districts may request additional funds to pay for their at-risk dropout programs. This year, we received requests from 321 districts, just for, or just over $153 million request. I will note that of the other four districts, three of them had such high balances that the statutory calculation, they had maxed out the amount that they could ask, so they weren't eligible to actually request any dollars. And then the fourth actually noted back to us that the local board recognizes that they have sufficient authority to operate their program, and so they purposely were not requesting any dollars. Item number five, GMG actually appeared at the January 8th hearing to request authority, so modified supplemental amount spending authority. That was a one-time session law granted by the legislature for school districts that were serving a population of students that was more than 45% open enrolled into their district. So at the January 8th hearing, their request for that additional MSA and the amount of $290,000 in sum was granted. However, a provision of taking advantage of that additional MSA was that they couldn't raise taxes. Well, after the January hearing, the district had a successful bond issuance pass. And so their taxes will raise. So they came back in March then to resend that request from January. Item six and seven, Des Moines and Logan Magnolia, both submitted information regarding hazard abatement requests specifically to mitigate asbestos that was found in their district's during remodeling activities. Both districts submitted the information timely and completely, and so they were both represented by the department at the year. Number eight, Clear Creek Manor actually opened two new schools, one an elementary school, one preschool program. And so they had the authority to request initial staffing costs. So those are just for costs that are new to the district. So it couldn't be, you know, a third grade teacher that simply moved from this building to this building. It had to be actually new costs. And it also couldn't contain any costs that were paid for special sources, such as special education dollars or teacher salary supplement dollars. And that amount was granted. Clinton Community School District, this one's kind of interesting. So Clinton appeared three, three years ago or so. They had a successful bond issue in 2019, right before the pandemic. And then they went, sent their bids out for quote. And when they got their bids back, it was substantially higher than the amount that they had bonded for due to the rising cost of the pandemic. And so they actually came to the SBRC three years ago and said, hey, we bought it for a new high school. We're really excited about it. And now all of a sudden, we can't do what we meant to do. And so they were not able to ask for the additional authority to spend from the unspent general fund at that time. However, they knew that they were eventually going to come. And so as, as kind of a mediation in there, they came to the SBRC, they informed them what was going on. They informed them of the steps that they were taking to control costs and even cut costs in some cases. And then asked if there was anything from the SBRC perspective that they should do or could do in the interim. And then noted that they plan to be back in a few years to actually make that request. The informational item presented three years ago went very well with the SBRC, it was very well planned, very well informed conversation around the table was good. And then, so this was them coming back at that time to ask for, to use the monies from the general fund. And then what they do is actually transfer that additional amount to a capital projects fund, so that they can actually spend it on that capital project. And I'll just note that when you think about spending authority and context, this is one of those things that would be really outside of that. Their estimated amount that they would need was about $3 million three years ago. And so they knew that they wanted to, then they needed to sit on that additional $3 million in the general fund in order to make the request now. And so that's what they did. So there's a perfect example of why some bigger amount might sit out there, why we might want to look at the nuances of like how we consider committed balances or assigned balances when we're looking at the rest of that calculation. There were two items remaining. So Southeast, Southeast Polk Community School District actually appeared at the January 8th hearing also. They appeared because they late filed some fiscal reports, so they were required to appear to provide a corrective action plan. At the January hearing, their corrective action plan was tabled, and they were directed to return at the March hearing with an updated plan. They did appear with an updated plan that was more robust than the plan that they had submitted in January, and that a plan was approved. Comanche also appeared at the January 8th SBRC hearing. They also were required to submit a corrective action plan, which they did. Theirs, however, was due to experiencing a negative unspent balance, which means that they overspent the authority that they had awarded to them, which is illegal. They were required to update their corrective action plan and return in March with a better corrective action plan that identified not only not being negative for an additional three years, but also was more specific on how they were going to reach those fiscal milestones to actually get to, back to that positive balance. They did so as well and, and increased the robustness of their plan. And their plan was approved, and they were also approved an amount of $323,230 of spending authority. However, it was not due to their second year of negative unspent balance. It was actually due to a calculation error from the first year where they experienced a negative unspent balance. Are there any questions?
That's just a lot of information. Are there any questions? All good stuff, though. Very, very good stuff.
The negative unspent balance one, I mean, is that something that are they going to be more closely monitored or is that something to be concerned about or?
You know, it just depends. So I will say for, for Comanche specifically. So they, this was their second year in a row experiencing, experiencing a negative unspent balance. So when they came in the first year for FY23, they, they presented a corrective action plan and it was approved. And then what happened is they had some leadership turnover. And so that corrective action plan was not implemented with any fidelity. And so the new superintendent came in and he recognized that, and he said, but here's what we're going to do now. And so I, I think that there's, you know, some new, some new conversations there to have. And I do believe that they are committed to making these changes. So we will continue to provide technical support to them throughout this process.
Going back to number nine. So they came and got modified supplemental amount to open a new building.
So it's, it's two things actually. So first, the first part of the request is the authority to transfer from the general fund to a capital projects fund, which you can only do if you have permission from the SBRC. So that was the first part of it. And it has to be in conjunction with a bond issue that was approved by the board. So it can't be just for any capital, any capital. capital project process or a purpose. This specifically is in conjunction with a bond issue. And it really, and what we've seen over the years, it is it's generally something like this. It's generally some unanticipated cost. Had they known about the cost, they would have put it, they would have included in their bond upfront. So I'll give you another example. We had Bettendorf a few years ago. They were doing a renovation of a building. And so their plan was to tear down this part of the building while still holding classes over here, and then to move the classes to this part of the building, the new part, and then renovate this over here. So they never planned to have to have any off-site costs. And they were doing this over, a lot of it over the summer as well. So there's only pieces of the school year that were going to be impacted. What happened, due to no fault of the districts, due to no fault of the district, as we could tell, is that there were just a lot of delays in the construction. And so their plan just didn't come to fruition. So they were required to actually rent a space outside of that for a period of about six months in order to have a place to serve those students. And so in that case, that was the discussion that was held too. If they had known that they were going to have to have this additional piece cost, could they have included it in the vote to the voters? And so that was that discussion at that time, and that was approved as well. So it was another example of reason.
You could spend general fund dollars on capital projects anyway?
Some things like computers, bundle technology, small equipment, things like that, yes you can. Yeah, but big capital purchases and big capital items, we would not see that as appropriate.
If, I mean, you said they went out to bid. I mean, that was years ago, though, and having costs gone up since then. So what if it's more expensive now, and what do they have to do?
Yeah, well, so they identified about $8 million upfront that they were going to be able to cut. And then what happened was they were able to have some more savings, but then a lot of those savings and cost-cutting measures were ate up by additional increased costs. And so it just turned out through all of the, I guess, moving the chess pieces, that it still ended up being about the $3 million.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you done today now?
I called it day. Thank you so much.
Finally stopped talking in secret.
I have 15 on the agenda, which is the Hawkeye Community College accreditation.
Computer going here. Hello?
Hello.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you for your patience.
Sure.
I'm going to kick us off. If I remember right, it's the spacebar, right, to advance the slides on this one?
Through down maybe.
Okay. We'll just experiment real quick. I'm ready to go. So hello again. My name is Robyn Lilienthal, Administrative Consultant in the Bureau of Community Colleges. One of my areas of responsibility is assisting with the state accreditation process for our 15 community colleges. I'm here today to present the accreditation report for Hawkeye Community College, who serves 10 counties in Northeast Iowa. You receive the report as part of your board materials. Today, I'll give you a presentation highlighting the details of the report. And then our guests, Dr. Todd Holcomb, who's college president, and Dr. Lynn Legron, who's Provost and Vice President of Academic Affairs, will share some of the college's key priorities and initiatives for you. So thanks, both of you, for being here. There we go. As you know, one of the roles of the State Board is to review accreditation reports and vote on continuing accreditation for the community colleges. In the coming months, you'll be receiving three reports: Hawkeye Today, Kirkwood Community College at the May meeting, and Eastern Iowa Community Colleges this summer. Most of you are familiar with the structure of our accreditation process, but as a reminder, there are two major components: the assurance component and continuous improvement component. Since all of our visits this year, our interim visits, our reports will focus on the assurance component, which includes a review of the college's most recent Higher Learning Commission report, as well as a deep dive into the eight state standards. The department team visited Hawkeye on November 13th and 14th of last fall for onsite interviews after conducting a desk review that included three external reviewers. Overall, Hawkeye submitted a thorough desk review materials, and the department team had an excellent visit with faculty, staff, and students. A few themes emerged. The college maintains a strong focus on student support, resulting in higher graduation and retention rates. Collaboration between credit, non-credit, and student support services is a hallmark of Hawkeye's approach to student success. The college takes safety and security seriously with responsive security staff and required safety training sessions. The long tenure of faculty and staff indicate a general sense of pride and commitment to the college. And Hawkeye Community College leadership has focused on upgrading facilities to improve student learning and access to current technology. A little sensitive here. State accreditation strives to complement the accreditation triad, including the college's standing with the Higher Learning Commission. Hawkeye maintains HLC accreditation with no issues, concerns, or findings. The department team analyzed the college's most recent mid-scholar review conducted in June of 2021. HLC identified strengths related to the effective assessment of student learning, leadership, and strategic planning. Hawkeye will undergo HLC reaffirmation of accreditation during the 2026-2027 cycle. Standard one is a review of faculty qualifications. Hawkeye has received a finding for this standard. During each accreditation visit, we review a random selection of 20 to 30 faculty files for compliance related to faculty qualifications and teaching load. The team identified two faculty who were determined to be unqualified, and a third faculty member missing transcript documentation used to verify qualifications. As a result of this finding, the department team will review additional faculty files to ensure teaching qualifications and documentation are adequate and consistent. The department also recommends that the college improve its documentation process to ensure credentials for qualifying faculty in the disciplines cited.
Rob, this was a file from a previous finding. When was that previous finding?
This was this current accreditation cycle.
I read this in the college's previous accreditation report. It was recommended the college take some time to review longtime faculty hires to make sure.
Yes. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. So that would have been the five years prior to this past
Okay, so five years ago.
Yes.
Has that improved since last time?
So we certainly saw improvements, but we did continue to find a couple, just two faculty that were seen as unqualified, and one faculty member that didn't have all the documentation. So therefore, that's why we'll work with the college to review that again to make sure that those are ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Standard two is related to faculty code restrictions on faculty teaching load. Hawkeye has received a finding for this standard. One faculty member was identified as exceeding the state code maximum teaching load of 22 credit hours per semester. As noted in the faculty qualification section, the department will review load assignments for the additional faculty identified. The department recommends that the college improve its processes related to faculty teaching assignments to ensure they maintain compliance with state code Standard number three relates to special needs and protected classes. No accreditation compliance issues were noted in this area. Hawkeye staff and faculty take a great deal of pride in serving all students. The department team identified a number of strengths in this area, including evidence of numerous college-wide efforts to create a welcoming environment for all students, and to provide accommodations for students with special needs, a commitment to the success of all students, and a college care team whose purpose is to resolve faculty-referred student issues related to basic needs such as transportation and food and housing insecurity. To build upon its strengths, the department team recommends reviewing the complaint and grievance processes, reviewing materials to ensure the continuous notice is present and prominent, and adding missing information to the annual notice on the website, including identifying the specific programs which have additional admissions Standard four pertains to expectations related to career and technical education programs. No accreditation compliance issues were noted in this area. Hawkeye exhibited several strengths in this area, including: the program review process incorporates assessment of student learning; faculty members develop strategies to improve programs and address challenges, which includes a reflection for improvement component; the college has intentionally incorporated career and technical student organizations into programs; and collaboration between high schools and the college on CTE programming is a priority. The department team recommends a few ways to build upon CTE program quality, including formalizing data analysis related to the student's return on investment, and analyzing disaggregated student outcome data to close achievement gaps, tying the program review process to budgeting and strategic planning. Standard five is focused on strategic planning. No accreditation compliance issues were noted in this area. Hawkeye Community College exhibits many strengths in its planning processes. Highlights include: the strategic plan was informed by feedback from multiple stakeholder groups; the plan focuses on institutional effectiveness that includes awards, enrollment, and retention, and growth in high school enrollment; key performance indicators are tracked in five areas, which are updated and assessed annually; and the college's budget planning process also aligns with strategic planning goals and mission. The department team identified no recommendations in this area. Standard six expects colleges to maintain physical plant and facilities master's plans. No accreditation compliance issues were noted in this area. The department team identified a strong commitment to improving the college's infrastructure through new or renovated facilities that are attractive and educational, exceptional and accessible library space, and regional community engagement as evidenced by a 75% passage rate on the college's 2023 bond referendum. The department team recommends incorporating a regular timeline for the board to approve the college's master facilities plan to maintain compliance with Iowa Administrative Code. Standard seven refers to the quality faculty plan, which meets the code expectation for highly effective faculty hiring and professional development processes. No accreditation compliance issues were noted in this area. Hawkeye Community College exhibits strength in the standard, including the faculty development and QFP committees are combined into one committee. Hawkeye has established a comprehensive onboarding and mentoring program for new faculty, and the college differentiates professional development requirements for full-time and adjunct faculty. The department team recommends maintaining QFP committee memberships that include all of the required elements. The department team was particularly impressed with Hawkeye Community College's relationship with its adjunct faculty. This has been identified as a promising practice profile, which is a new addition to the state accreditation reports. These profiles are programs, processes, or practices identified through the accreditation review process that other community colleges are encouraged to consider replicating. Key highlights include: establishing an adjunct faculty onboarding and orientation process; developing a canvas shell to organize and track adjunct faculty training and professional development; offering optional adjunct faculty in-service sessions; conducting a new adjunct academy; and hiring an adjunct faculty liaison position. Finally, standard eight is a review of the college's senior year-plus program. No accreditation compliance issues were noted in this area. Hawkeye maintains an effective SYP program with strengths including creating a challenger center, which offers hands-on and simulated STEM and space experiences for middle and high school students; using dual-enroll software, which allows staff to discuss district-declined registrations to ensure allowable access is not being restricted; requiring and annually providing professional development for all concurrent enrollment faculty. To enhance its SYP strengths, the department recommends collecting disaggregated concurrent enrollment data for each school district and disseminating it to district stakeholders, so they can identify opportunities to improve access for all students; adding statements regarding background checks and exclusion of faculty under suspension or revocation of licensure to contracts and faculty handbooks; and adding detailed information to the student handbook and website related to the student's financial responsibilities regarding textbooks, fees, materials, and supplies. This concludes the summary of Hawkeye Community College's interim state accreditation report. The department review team recommends continued accreditation of Hawkeye Community College through the next state comprehensive accreditation evaluation, which is scheduled for academic year 2029-2030. Before moving to your questions and board action, I will turn things over to our Hawkeye colleagues, who will share more about the exciting things happening on campus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Todd Holcomb, President of Hawkeye Community College. I came to Hawkeye July 1st, 2019. And at that point in time, we started our strategic planning process where we were able to update our mission and vision for the college. Our mission is empowering students, strengthening businesses, and enriching communities where we live. The vision is improving the quality of life in the communities that we live in. It's, this spring semester is a great day and time to be a Hawkeye Community College connection. And the fact that perhaps in my first semester ever, my five-year career at Hawkeye, we're up in concurrent enrollment, we're up in credit enrollment, we're up in non-credit enrollment, we're up in adult education enrollment, and we're up in apprenticeships. So we have a lot of successful things going on at Hawkeye Community College. We're really excited about our enrollment because we're now back to pre-pandemic numbers. So that's very, very exciting. And then one of the things that, as you heard, we've been emphasizing is the retention of students. So our retention rate for 2025, spring to spring, is 70, about 75%, and then 85% for fall to spring retention. So really, really good numbers for us. And we're moving the needle, where I think we moved the needle with retention. Our concurrent enrollment, again, like I said, is up from that standpoint. So overall, and why is that important? It's not only important for our students in the high schools, but it's also important for Hawkeye Community College, because about 25% of those students who start with us in concurrent enrollment continue with us. So it's very, very important for us to see that number grow, because then those students continue with us, because they have such a great experience with our faculty members.
Good afternoon. I'm Lynn Legron, and I'm the Provost at Hawkeye, and I've been there since August of 2020. So I arrived at a time when everything was normal. But in the middle of that, we were attempting to upgrade our science and health science building. And so one of the things we did was revise and revamp that building. We've expanded our simulations opportunities for students. It's probably the largest in the state. We have about 10,000 square feet. We have a full apartment building where students can come in from EMS, nursing, respiratory, and act as if they're going into someone's apartment to help them and get them out to get the services they need. We have a full maternity space where there are, how many mannequins do we have?
Uh, over 12.
Yeah, so we have lifestyle mannequins that we can impart any kind of illness on them and have our students try to figure out what to do next. So we have infants, newborns, children, adults, all ages ranges of, you know, men, women, et cetera. So it's been exciting to be able to offer that for our students. That houses all of our health sciences, from respiratory to nursing to dental. We have a fully functioning dental clinic that we invite the public to come in. And so that's also been very successful for us, and we're pleased about that. We are thinking about moving forward with other renovations. Within that, we're moving into our Butler Hall. We have a regional transportation center that we have upgraded for trucking. And that's to fill a need in our community for, you know, truck driving training. We also do that where we work with our business and community ed partners, which credit and non-credit do work together.
So Butler Hall is our main CTE area, auto mechanics, diesel mechanics, auto body, welding, HVAC, those areas. That building has not been renovated in approximately 50 years. So we're going to do a 20,000-square-foot addition to Butler Hall. Then we're going to renovate the entire interior of that building. The 75% bond approval rating, the vast majority of that is going towards the renovation addition of this building. It's going to be a three-year, four-phase process. It will not be as easy as the Grundy Hall project she just talked about because we have to continue using that building. So we're going to be moving around. Next Tuesday, we have the kickoff meeting for the renovation addition. So in three years' time, when the project is complete, our students will have a brand-new CTE area for them to use. So we're very, very excited about that and what it's going to do for our college and the students' experience there.
And we have one last thing that we're super excited about, and Dr. Lilenthal referenced it. We are bringing a Challenger Center to Iowa. We will be the only one in the state of Iowa. There are 48 of them across the nation. They were founded by the families of the Challenger astronauts, who passed away in 1986. And they are learning centers for basically middle-school students to come in and get hands-on experiences, taking the role as astronauts or in mission control, et cetera. It's basically a two-hour experience that they go through. And then what we hope to do is be able to also bring in a sphere of science, which is from the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Association, a six-foot-wide dome, it looks like. You've heard about the sphere that they have in Las Vegas. We will have a miniature one on campus where you can replicate and have 800, 600 to 800 different images. So you could have climate, you could have bird migration, you could have weather, you know, weather patterns, water flow, et cetera. Again, another opportunity for students to spend a day with us, either going through the Challenger experience and staying on to go through the sphere of science, or taking one or the other. But we also will offer opportunities for high school students to be a part of it, to offer opportunities to teachers in the area, to be teacher-in-residence. They can spend a semester with us, working on different scientific projects. It's a great way of making STEM come to life for students in Iowa, not just for the Cedar Valley, but for the entire state. We fully hope that we'll have students coming up from Des Moines, Davenport, from Duke, all over the state. Because we're working the way in the state by all, so we're very excited about that.
And with that, we'll take any questions that you might have.
How much was your bond issued?
35 million.
And you had 75% approval?
Yeah, I was ecstatic because we, in 2015, the former president, President Allen, was able to pass a bond issued, about 25 million, but 73%. So I thought if we got over 70%, we would be, so 75% was very ecstatic for us.
Do you take a second or a minute to introduce those who came with you today?
Oh, it's the two of us.
That's your next presentation.
Well, they heard, they heard about the great things happening at Hawkeye, and they just wanted to join us.
The Challenger Center, has that been under, on the planning for a while? And was it kind of delayed? Because I feel like I've heard about it, but then nothing. And now you're talking about it again, so that's exciting. Or was it always at Hawkeye? Or was it? Because I thought it was like decor or something, I remember hearing. So fill me in.
No, so, yes, it's been on the radar or on our plates for about two years now.
Okay.
And it's taken us about a full year to fulfill all the obligations of the application process. We also, in that time, visited two Challenger Centers nationwide. So we went to Michigan, to one that's in the Port Huron area at a community college, very similar to Hawkeye. And then we went to Pottstown, Pennsylvania, to another center to see how those were set up as a part of our fact-finding and to decide if it made sense for us. But at every step of the way, the enthusiasm has remained up here. Some of the work is kind of, you know, kind of switched that down a bit. But we are now back on track. And having two major construction projects at the same time will be a bit daunting. But we'll be able, we've been working to see. We have some of the people that are in Bramer Building that we're going to put this in. We're not going to build it from scratch. We're going to renovate one of our current existing buildings. We'll have to move our HVAC out of there in the middle of trying to get ready for the Butler remodel. So those logistics were in play, and we had to make sure that we had everything worked out.
Interesting. Does that then, it's under a programming aspect? Or is it a separate entity under the Hawkeye umbrella? I'm just curious.
It'll be a separate entity under our umbrella. Yeah. So we will manage it. We will hire for it, all the staff, faculty, et cetera. We will use all of the Challenger software. So that's a part of what you agree to when you decide you're going to do a center. You follow their software, you use their, they give us all the technical support for it. They give us a design plan, but they will fit it in the space that you have. But they have specifications for each room that you have to put up. So you have a mission control that's mandatory. You have a space station that's mandatory. But you can adapt it to the space you have. You can make it larger, but you must meet with the parameters that they give you.
They also give us curriculum to work with the middle school so that we work with the middle school science faculty members on getting them prepared to bring their students. So there's a whole array of curriculum that we work with them on to get them ready. So it's really a collaboration between A-12 Education and Hawkeye Community College to increase STEM education. You know, that's, and that's really what we're hoping to do in our area in particular. You know, we want to encourage young people to pursue science, technology, engineering, math, the whole area. And we thought that this was a great opportunity for us to do that and provide something unique for them.
Yeah, as a Gen Xer, I'm just thinking about the movie Space Camp. Lynn, my question is, is Hawkeye's dental clinic the only active clinic offered by a community college where they're seeing patients?
Uh, no, I believe DMAC has one and Kirkwood, too, I think.
Okay, so one of three.
Yeah, one of three.
We increased the number of operatories from 20 to 25 because dental hygiene, in particular, we have over a year-long waitlist for dental hygiene. Dental assisting is a little different, but dental hygiene is, so we've increased our number, and we still have a waitlist for that. But all the technology is amazing. Some of the dentists have come through to tour it, and they've said, well, you have better technology and your operatories than what I do.
Yeah, I believe that.
Well, I've had the opportunity to spend some time on campus at Hawkeye, and particularly with Lynn. And, you know, I can speak personally about how hard they work to take care of not only their faculty and staff, but how much they care for their students. So thank you for all you do.
And I know that we didn't get clearance for handouts, but I'll leave them if you want to take them. There are pictures in there of Challenger Centers, so you'll have a sense of what we're talking about.
It's hard to understand the Challenger Center until you actually see it in action. So that's why we took two trips to visit community colleges. And the Challenger Center has kind of actually made a connection with community colleges and middle-school education. So that's kind of the niche that they're finding that really works for them from that standpoint.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? If you have any, obtain a motion.
I would so move that we approve the continued accreditation of Hawkeye Community College through the state comprehensive evaluation scheduled for academic year 29-30.
I'll second that.
And move by Cass and second by Brooke to the accreditation as presented. Any further comments or discussion?
Really excited to come up and visit once you guys have that stuff.
We can't wait.
Love to have you.
Yes.
I think my kids will love it, so.
None? No others? Are we ready to vote? All right. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion's carried. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
I went to Las Vegas for Thanksgiving, and we had the hotel rooms, like way up by our hotel, you can see the Las Vegas area. And so my mom was like, this is crazy, you know, it's like, looking at it. So we like brought chairs out into the hall. We were like sitting out there.
Thank you. It was so cool.
Oh, it was amazing. And they had, I mean, they have like just places to walk over.
I'm sorry?
No, we didn't. We just sat outside, just looked. It was just like.
We won't let you in unless you buy a ticket.
It's like $150 to go in there. So I was like, yeah, so, but yeah, just looking at it. It just seems like, it was amazing.
Well, now, we have.
That was very enlightening conversation. My name is Dr. Stephanie Teekip. I'm a program consultant with the Educator Quality Team. We have representatives from Faith Baptist Bible College today, including Dr. Ken Rathbun, the academic dean, Dr. Renee Munguns, who serves as the Master of Education Program Director, and Dr. Mark Stupka as leadership of the education unit. One of my responsibilities in the state approval process, let's see, sorry, in the state approval process for substantial changes in educator preparation programs. Today, I'll be sharing key elements of Faith Baptist's application and review to offer a program in educational administration preparation. The online program leads to fulfillment of endorsement number 189, PK-12 principal and PK-12 special education supervisor. In the full report, all information is provided for your review. Faith Baptist, located in Ankeny, Iowa, currently offers a traditional teacher preparation program. Proposed change includes the addition of an online master's program with two tracks. The first track, Educational Administration, leads to fulfillment of the endorsement just mentioned. The second track, Instructional Leadership, is designed to prepare teachers to serve as mentors, lead teachers, and curriculum specialists. After receiving Faith Baptist's proposal, our team engaged in a review to verify and validate compliance with educator preparation standards. The results of the review includes the following assurance components. Faith Baptist is in compliance with the Higher Learning Commission, as well as Chapter 79. And curriculum exhibits are approved by the Educator Quality Team and the Iowa Board of Educational Examiners. Today, I'll be sharing key highlights of the Governance, Faculty Assessment, Clinical and Knowledge Skills and Disposition Standard. In the Governance Standard, the proposed program seamlessly integrates into the existing framework with structured oversight provided by the Teacher Education Department and Teacher Education Committee to ensure alignment with institutional and regulatory standards. Managed by the Director of Online Education, the program's online format ensures accessibility while maintaining rigor through comprehensive incorporation and mapping to the National Educational Leadership Preparation, commonly referred to as NLP standards. In the Faculty Standard, qualifications and responsibilities are clearly defined by processes outlined in the Faculty Handbook, ensuring transparency and adherence to institutional standards. Adjunct faculty with terminal degrees and administrative experience are complemented by robust professional development opportunities, fostering continuous growth and instructional quality. With the Assessment Standard, program assessments are aligned with the National Interstate Teacher Assessment and Support Consortium, or INTAS standards, as well as NLP standards, ensuring they reflect best practices in administrator preparation and leadership. Faith Baptist has incorporated a balanced approach with multiple measures for assessment, offering formative feedback for ongoing improvement and a summative e-portfolio to showcase cumulative achievements. In the Clinical Standard, policies detailed in the Clinical Practice Handbook guide candidates through over 400 hours of structured clinical experiences with varying grade levels and populations, ensuring comprehensive, hands-on training for real-world readiness. Within the Knowledge Skills and Disposition Standard, Faith Baptist Curriculum MAP integrates INTAS, Iowa Standards for School Leaders, and NLP standards with evaluator approval content and a focus on cultivating professional disposition, dispositions essential for effective educational leadership. The review team recommends approval based on evidence for Faith Baptist's proposal to add an administrator preparation program until the next site visit scheduled for 2027-28 for that academic year. And with that, we are happy to take any questions that you might have for us.
Did you say this was going to be online?
Yes.
Online, then, I'm assuming you send people out as far as to observe their practice? Or how do you, how do you monitor that?
Yes. All the courses will be online, which I think is fit for a graduate level because we anticipate most of the students are already going to be working in a school, seeking to move up to other positions or another level of knowledge. And then the expectation would be that for like the clinical experience and even the assignments in the classes, they would use the school where they are presently working as a resource for the additional clinical experience that'll be required in the courses and to meet the standards.
So they'll be working within their own school or school.
Right. And if for some reason we would take on students that are not currently employed in a school, then we would clearly explain to them that they're going to need to make a connection with a school where they can obtain their clinical experience.
Could you give me an example of what a clinical experience would be like?
What, the types of things they'll be doing? Right, sure. So basically, I think there were maybe eight standards for the principal licensure. And I kind of divided them up, two standards per 100 hours. And so they will do different tasks. As a part of the school, for example, they need to understand how testing data should inform curriculum reviews. And so they will be required to look at test data, do some disaggregation of data, write a report where they make suggestions for how curriculum needs to be changed, improved, altered, to better, to produce better test results. So it's like really practical tasks. They'll, you know, be involved in taking a look at school budgeting, all different aspects of school leadership.
And the rules for administrator preparation programs, they are also aligned to the NLP standards as well as INTAS. So things like building capacity. So things like building capacity, the professional development for your teachers, budgeting, all of the behind-the-scenes type work that administration needs to do. So it's structured around those NLP standards. I'm sorry, I think you're going to say something.
I was just going to say, on the practical side, there'd basically be job shadowing existing administrators and learning from their expertise to go along.
So what prompted you to want to add these to your list of offerings? Was it the need you see out there for these professionals? Was it inquiries you were receiving from either your graduates or others in your sphere or...?
All of that, yes.
Our graduates, you know, we want to provide them opportunity to further their education, and they'd like to look to us to provide that.
So we believe we could potentially draw from two types of constituents. Undergrad, students that got their undergrad educational degrees at faith, but then also individuals who got their undergraduate degrees elsewhere and may particularly be working in like Christian schools. Or it doesn't have to be, but that would feel like faith would be a good fit for them for their graduate degree. So we would hope to draw from both of those groups of people.
Do most of your grads stay in Iowa or they go everywhere? So potentially those...
They go everywhere, even other countries sometimes.
You could be teaching them online. Would they... But to the Iowa standards, right? So they could come here and work. So potential way to get them back to Iowa if they're not here.
Yes.
Correct. We definitely want to make sure that we're providing that Iowa component for those who do already work in Iowa so that they can have that opportunity for the licensure.
So how do you ensure quality control?
In the program itself?
In the experiences, what the students... If you have students all over, wherever...
And online.
How do you know that they're getting a quality education in the things that they're supposed to be doing?
Well, similar to student teaching, there would be like, probably mostly me in the beginning, there'll be oversight of those clinical experiences. And not only will the student need to check in, but we will be working with the administrator at the school, whom the person that they are shadowing, to make sure that they are having the types of experiences that they need to for compliance to the standards.
Yes. And I think you mentioned standards. And so I think the key foundational aspect is to have the clear standards and then the assessment of those standards. And we're still working on whether they will be preparing some sort of electronic portfolio to give us evidence of meeting all of the standards. And so, again, through standards and then the assessment of those standards faithfully, we would assure the quality of the program.
And another component that I'll add to this is annually, we send out the novice administrator survey for graduates that are still in Iowa. And we also send the survey to the supervisor of the novice administrator annually for the first two years so that the program and the state can get some, can get some back as well.
And the clinical experience is pretty, it's pretty scripted. There are specific assignments that they need to do to meet every standard. So we don't just say, well, you know, for this first 100 hours, you need to have experience in student, in school leadership. So go shadow somebody. There are tasks, there are projects they have to do as a part of that, and then submit those.
And how many hours is this program?
Well, the clinical experience for the principal licensure is a required 400 hours to meet with the state.
Yes, and 30 credit hours.
For the program.
Chances are, they won't learn everything they need to know. That's true of any program. To get on a job, it's...
Well, it's a good thing Iowa has a very good mentoring program.
Yes.
For new administrators.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move with the word "full approval" to Faith Baptist Bible College to offer the Administrator Prep Program until the next site visit scheduled for 27-28 fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Brian and second by Cindy to approve preparation program as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Carried. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For adjourned.
We didn't expect that.